Oh, that's yours.
Okay, we're on the air. I'll call the plenary planning board meeting to order for December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Just want to point out for everyone who is here that this room has two exits. They're on the right-hand side of the audience. They're at the front of the room and the back of the room. We have to evacuate for any reason. We ask you to proceed through the exit closest to you. Move outside, move over the building, and don't come back in. Our fire officials have instructed us to do so. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise. We'll pledge allegiance to the American flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Al's not going to be here tonight, so I will appoint Roger to vote for him. I don't think you've been appointed to vote for anyone in a while, so we have the honors tonight. And we have a full board. We have nine voting members. That's more than a quorum, and we can proceed with business. First part of our meeting is administrative board work, where we get our business done. And then we have seven plans to consider tonight for public hearing and also an amendment to the zoning. So I'd like to ask, how many people are here for the zoning amendment? The one, two, three, four, okay. I was going to say if it was a majority, that we'd do that first, but we'll take everything as a... And everything is in order on the date that they're... by how they're submitted. So first come, first served. That's how it works. Okay, administrative board work. We have no minutes to approve tonight. And regional impact determinations, I don't think there are any. I didn't see any, so we're all set there. And discussions with town staff. Anything, John?
Nope, nothing this evening.
Everything's under control?
So far, so good.
Good to hear. Kelly or Ben?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
You got... okay, Kelly?
What an item for you, Mr. Chair. An extension request for the Patori site plan, map thirteen, lot ninety-nine. Request to extend to February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
February?
Fourteenth.
February fourteenth, okay. I've just barely begun looking at twenty-four, so excuse me.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue the Patori site plan, map thirteen, lot ninety-nine, to February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion by Jake.
Extend, grant the extension request.
What did I just say?
Continue.
Yeah, extend. Grant an extension request for map thirteen, lot ninety-nine.
I know what you meant, Jake, so that's...
We do it enough, right?
Not my fault there. So Jake's made the motion. I have a second. Second by Roger. Any discussion or anything to add at all, Eric?
No, given the holidays and other staffing things, we'll get everything done. Make sure it's completely finished up by the... They're not working out there anymore because they're closed down for the winter.
Yes.
We'll make sure we get stuff in for the February meeting.
Okay. So February fourteenth. Any further discussion by the board? Sign now all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, she has affirmative, and the motion carries. And Patori Brothers has an extension request extended to February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. You're welcome. Anything else, Kelly?
Uh, no, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anything for the board?
It's on the agenda.
I just have one thing. Jeff has sent in a request to be considered as an alternate to the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. And Jeff has had two terms as an alternate. And I guess right now, what the planning board does is make a recommendation to the town council for appointment. That's how Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission works. It follows RSA thirty-six, so for those who like to follow the statute, that's what governs the regional planning commissions and how they are appointed. So I just need a motion to make a recommendation to the town council for Jeff Penta for an alternate to the Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Jake, second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Sign now all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, and you'll abstain. Let the record show, Jeff and Ted abstains also. Ted will have to be voting on it, so... Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, anything else?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you also.
I was just voted in, I can't.
Okay, we're going to get to our old business, which is we have seven plans to go through here. So sit back and relax, folks. We'll eventually get there. So first plan to consider is a public hearing on an application for formal review of a site plan to construct a fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-two square-foot warehouse and storage facility and associated site improvements, eighty-eight A Harvey Road, Plainview Drive, map, tax map fourteen, lot seventeen, Zone Industrial Two, Patriot Holdings LLC is the applicant, and VAB Properties LLC is the owner. And this has been continued from October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. And I believe they have made another request for a continuance, Kelly.
Yes, Mr. Chair. The applicant's requested to continue to January tenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay. If the board, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to continue the Plainview site plan to January tenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
By Jake, second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Sign now all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, and chair votes affirmative. And the only official notice will be right now, and that is the public hearing on an application for a formal review of a site plan to construct a fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-two square-foot warehouse and storage facility and associated site improvements at eighty-eight A Harvey Road, Plainview Drive, tax map fourteen, lot seventeen, Zone Industrial Two, Patriots Holding LLC applicant, and VAB Properties LLC the owner. Is continued to January tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. And this is your only official public notice. Okay, moving along. Public hearing on an application for a formal review of a subdivision plan to subdivide tax map ten, lot forty-one into two lots, Pillsbury Road, Michael's Way, and Woodmont Avenue. Tax map ten, lot forty-one, Zone Commercial One, and PUD Woodmont Commons Plan Unit Development. Pillsbury Realty Development LLC is the owner, and Nickerson Design LLC is the applicant. And this has been continued from December sixth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there are no outstanding checklist items. Staff would recommend the application be accepted as complete.
Okay, I'll take a motion on completeness.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Second, Mr. Chair.
A motion by Jake, second by Lynn for completeness. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, chair votes affirmative, and the application has been accepted as complete. This starts one, the public hearing on the plan, and also the sixty-five day timeframe in which this board has to render a decision. So gentlemen, just to clarify yourselves, please, for our records.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Robert DuVal. I'm an engineer with TF Moran and here on behalf of the Nickerson Design. And with me to my right is Chris Nickerson from Nickerson Design, both of us working on this proposed medical office building at Woodmont. I have some updated color plans I'd like to hand out.
Certainly.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chris. As Bob had mentioned, for the record, my name is Chris Nickerson, here as applicant for a project, which is a thirty thousand square-foot medical office building at the intersection, we're in the Woodmont Commons Development, at the intersection of Main Street and Woodmont Ave. We've been in front of the board a couple of times now here. We were in front of them for a conceptual discussion a few months ago. We've been through the design review process, been through conservation, heritage commission, and I think that the plans that Bob had handed out and the work that we've done to date have fully incorporated any comments the board has had for us in the past. Specifically, without getting too mired in the details, some of the things that the board was looking for, at least aesthetics-wise, were some arch windows on the west side of the building, another arch window on the north facade of the building, little more detail to our cornice. And then on the site plan, through the design review process, we had eliminated some parking on the northwest corner of the building here, just aesthetics-wise, to give the building a little bit more street presence. Beyond that, just to sort of walk things back, you know, I'd been in front of this board about two years ago for our first building, which is at Fifty Michael's Way in the Woodmont Commons Development. That site for us has been an absolute, just grand slam success clinically. And aesthetics-wise, look and feel of the site-wise, presentation-wise, the plan that we have tonight is very, very similar to the program that we have over at Fifty Michael's Way. So at Fifty, we'll have different players here at the corner of Woodmont and Main Street. But just to sort of give an example or paint the picture, at Fifty Michael's Way, we have primary care with walk-in services for DMC patients, full-blown imaging center with a three Tesla MRI that's one of only a handful in the state that exists right now, lab services, ophthalmology, orthopedics, PT, derm, OB-GYN, GI, essentially any subspecialty service that folks would want. And in our market right now in Southern New Hampshire, there's just a huge need for higher end and more of the medical services that we provide. And we'd like to continue to do that for the community.
Jake? Yes.
One of the things that I... we've noticed and folks might be familiar with is that in about July of two thousand and twenty-two, we had a fire at our flagship facility, which is at Six Shinino Road in Derry. And one of the key takeaways from that was that folks really didn't fully appreciate or realize what they had in the community for medical services until it was gone. And I think what we've seen at Fifty Michael's Way is that folks are just starting to appreciate how good it can be, how convenient the services can be, how high-end they can be. And really, what we're taking is leading-edge care to, you know, what sometimes could be considered a tertiary market to Boston, but it's Boston-level care in London Derry, New Hampshire. You know, the other thing that I would sort of offer here is that just from a site development standpoint and sort of having the vision, the Woodmont Commons Development for us, be it the aesthetics, the walkability, the tenant makes, having shopping, having restaurants nearby, has just hugely, hugely been successful. So certainly kudos to the board for having the vision, you know, twelve years ago to put this plan in place. The other thing that we're seeing on our end, and you know, it's a huge benefit to the town, is the economic implication of these plans. So our tax bill on the building at Fifty Michael's Way was just over a hundred eighty-three thousand dollars a year. That's real economic development to the town every year in addition to services that we're providing. So, you know, beyond that, we're coming with a pretty simple ask tonight. We'd like to ask for a conditional approval. Happy to answer any questions for the board and happy to continue to bring these services to the community. And that's about it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. So we have the two applications in front of us, the subdivision application and the site plan application. I think it makes sense to talk about both.
We can do it together. We have to have separate motions on it, just to...
Mr. Chairman, should you accept the site plan as complete? You've only accepted the subdivision as complete thus far.
Thank you, John. That's a good, very good, very good point. I hadn't considered that at this point, but the completeness of the site plan.
We're on the subdivision, aren't we, Mr. Chair?
If you're going to talk about both, you'll need to...
We're going to talk about both of them together. We'll talk about both of them together, and then we'll take the motion separately. Regarding the site plan, there are no outstanding checklist items. Staff would recommend the board accept the application as complete.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application as complete per staff's recommendation memorandum dated December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
A motion by Jake, second by Lynn, and this is for the completeness of the site plan. We're going to be discussing the site plan and subdivision together. The motions for each of them will be done separately. Any discussion by the board? Sign now all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Abstentions, she has affirmative, and the motion carries. The plan has... the site plan has been accepted as complete. We'll proceed from where we left off here.
Thank you. I'll talk first about the subdivision because the subdivision is really all about the site plan. As you can see on the screen, the proposed subdivision is... property line is blue, the blue outline around the proposed site plan. It represents two-point-one-three acres of a condominium lot that will be subdivided out of the parent lot, which is lot ten forty-one, which is the main west side of Woodmont Commons Lot. Is a hundred forty-three-point-two acres remaining in that lot. And it essentially stretches from Pillsbury in the north to Marketplace in the south and ninety-three in the east to Michael's Way on the west. This lot is in the, almost the extreme southeast corner of Woodmont Commons Lot, one forty. Is it there... the road at the base of the plan is Woodmont Ave. That's the north-south road that's east of the main developed area right now.
Main Street.
Right, it's east of, well, it's up Main Street, east of Michael's Way by approximately five hundred feet. And you'll remember that the Baldwin that just opened recently is a little bit farther up Woodmont Ave from this. In fact, you can see a little bit of a detention pond in the blue area at the extreme left side of the plan. And just on the other side of that detention pond is the Baldwin. So this is just south of the Baldwin. And then if you continue south, there's a little access road that I'll explain the purpose of in a minute on the right-hand side of the plan. And just south of that is the property line to the, essentially the market basket property to the south. So it's the southeast corner of the property, two-point-one-three acre cutout of the one hundred forty-three acre lot. There's really not a lot more to say about that. This is, of course, just one in a series of subdivisions that have happened over the last few years on the west side out of one forty, most recently Wood Partners. And before that, Dairy Medical One. And then before that, of course, all the other developments on the property. So I'm going to... unless there are specific questions related to the subdivision, I'd like to move on to the site plan.
Board, do you have any questions on the subdivision?
Okay, so the site plan you see in front of you consists of a roughly thirty thousand square-foot two-story building. That's the area that's in sort of a burgundy color. And it's located right up against the street with some green space between the front facade and Woodmont Ave. And then there's two entrances to the site. There's a entrance right at the top of Main Street, the little street that you can see the stub of between the two tan buildings in the lower left is Main Street, and that would lead you right up into the site. And Woodmont Ave, we talked about north-south at the base of the site. And then on the right-hand side is an access drive because it's still a fairly good-sized chunk of land just east of this property, between this property and I ninety-three. So that chunk of land is reserved for subsequent development. There's no active user proposed at this point. But we did want to take this opportunity in providing this site plan to provide paved access to the back for that future user and also utility extensions to the back. And so for that purpose, we have this proposed driveway essentially along this, just outside the south property line of the Dairy Medical Facility. And between that and the property line of the parcel itself, the whole parcel itself. So that is for future development. But there's a second driveway off of that that you can see in the southeast corner of the parking lot, which accesses that driveway. And then, of course, the main drive that we just talked about right at the end of Main Street. As far as parking goes, there are a hundred and forty-one spaces provided, including four bike stalls and two racks. And those two racks are located either side of the back entrance facing the east, facing the future development parcel. A hundred seventeen would be required, a hundred forty-one provided. But of course, this is shared parking throughout the Woodmont facility. So the spaces in the front would also be available to first come, first served as essentially all other existing parking spaces out there. The setbacks on the lot are ten-foot front, ten-foot side, five-foot rear. So we've met all of those setbacks. The building height is allowed is fifty feet. So as a two-story building, it's significantly less than that. Open space for the parcel is actually grouped together by block. This is in block WC two, and it's only the second development there. So there's, in fact, a lot more open space than developed space at this point. So that's not a consideration. Let me go quickly through the utilities for the facility itself. Can we zoom in at the front of the building and a little more to the left? Okay, thank you. So as you can see in the plan in front of you, there's a water line proposed. It's basically coming out from an existing stub right at the stop bar of the northern driveway. And right next to that is a proposed gas line, also from an existing stub that terminates in the driveway. There's an existing sewer stub, or sewer sleeve, I should say, that crosses Woodmont Ave that you can't see in this picture. But it's basically in the center of Main Street, heading straight across to Woodmont Ave. And actually, you can see it. It's the line that's interrupted by the text that comes out of the sewer manhole and heads due east onto the site. And what's being proposed for the site is a small pump station that just handles this site itself. And the reason for that is that that last sewer manhole is just a little bit too high to accept gravity sewer from this. And plus, the existing sleeve across the street enables us to pump into that sewer manhole without having to tear up Woodmont Ave, which was just built, just completed for the Baldwin. So it just makes sense to put in a small pump station in the lower-left corner of the site. There's also a future gas extension on the left-hand side of the driveway, all the way to the back of the property. There's a future water extension there as well. And gas and electric are also available to that parcel in the back. So the facilities that we're providing are basically a dry sewer for that parcel in the back that would have its own pump station. And so we've provided a three-inch dry force main that enters into that same sleeve that we're entering. So that provides future sewer for the back. There's a water line extension in the access road on the right-hand side. That extends all the way to the back. And gas will also extend all the way to the back for full utilities back there. So you can see there's a little bit of forward thinking here to make sure that we don't land lock a parcel in the back without adequate access and utilities. And then lastly, the drainage for this site was already accounted for in the detention pond, a little triangular-shaped detention pond that's just to the north of this property. And so this site is collected. It generally slopes from Woodmont Ave towards the rear and from the south side towards the north side. So it sort of slopes, the whole site is tilted, if you will, towards that triangle pond. And the drainage is collected on-site in a series of deep-sump catch basins and provided an outlet into that pond. That pond, as I said, is designed to handle that and additional property beyond, so that we're only using a fraction of the capacity of that pond. And the pre versus post, considering the detention in that pond, is a ten CFS reduction through the detention in that pond for this site. So we're meeting pre versus post. This is accounted for in the original AOT permit for the site. And drainage is fully treated, detained, and discharged into the previously built facilities for this property. Well, I think I've covered all the main features of the site plan, and I'll be happy to answer any questions about that. I can also, I guess one thing I didn't cover is traffic. But again, traffic is looked at as a whole for Woodmonts. And there was an allocation for blocks WC one, where most of the development has been, and WC two, which includes Baldwin in this site. And we're still substantially under, by hundreds of trips, the allocation that was set up for WC two, which would allow another, well, almost another seven or eight Dairy Medical-sized buildings or hundreds of residential units.
It's all done in a grouping. And then I know in the master plan, there's a very thorough study that was done. So once it reaches a level, then we've got to look at the whole thing, how it impacts north, south, east, west in towns.
Exactly right, Mr. Chairman.
Now, one thing I didn't do was read in the public record the site plan. So I'll do that, make sure I have everything in place here. This also includes a public hearing on an application for a formal review of a site plan. We were discussing both the subdivision and the site plan to construct a thirty thousand square-foot two-story medical building, Pillsbury Road, Michael's Way, and Woodmont Avenue, tax map ten, lot forty-one, Zone Commercial One, and PUD Woodmont Commons Plan Unit Development, Pillsbury Realty Development LLC being the owner, and Nickerson Design LLC the applicant. And this was also continued from December sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. So those are being taken together. You've made the presentation and everything. We'll go to staff, we'll go to the board, and then we'll go to the public for public input on both the subdivision and the site plan for this. Bob, would you want to go through your waiver requests?
Yes, I can do that now if you'd like. There are four waiver requests, it would be four. They're primarily formalities rather than substantive waivers from...
This is with the subdivision?
For subdivision. And one is for two-foot contours to be shown on all plans. And there is on this property, but on other parts of the parent lot that were under construction at the time, at the last time of survey for the lot, there were certain areas under construction, and those are shown as basically as blank areas without two-foot contours. But all plans, including the site plan and the subdivision plan, other than those particular areas that were under construction, and I think it was Baldwin and parts of Woodmont Ave at the time, are shown without updated contours. So that's the first waiver. The second waiver is that town regulations require USDA Soil Conservation Service soil survey information for the site, for all sites. And because this required an AOT permit, they have a more, I guess, more accurate soil survey called the site-specific soil survey. And I know you've all heard this before. At Woodmont, we're just using the more accurate site-specific soil survey in lieu of what's required in town regulations, the Soil Conservation Service soil survey. So that's another waiver. The third waiver is relating to plan scales. And again, because of the size of the parent lot, we are, have been using scales of one inch equals three... lot, we are, have been using scales of 1 inch equals 300 for the master overall sheet, which is in your subdivision package as Sheet 1. And also, 1 inch equals 150 feet for the individual subdivision sheets, the smaller scale sheets that make up the entire parcel. So those are also in your subdivision package. And lastly, we're asking for a waiver from Section Roman 6.28 to not show information on existing water systems, sewer systems, drainage systems, and utilities on the subdivision plan because of the small scale. However, all of the information is shown on site plans, both previously approved site plans and the current site plan, shows all of that information, you know, within the disturbed area of the site plan. And all of these have been requested previously on prior applications.
If I can, Bob, just to try to keep things kind of in understanding, staff does support the waiver, all four of the waiver requests, that being the plan scale, because again, the plans are illegible at the scales as presented. Regarding the existing water, again, staff does support granting the waiver as the requisite information is shown on the larger-scale site plans. Regarding the site, excuse me, the his soils, staff does recommend granting the waiver because the applicant has submitted the required NRCS custom soil resource report, as Bob says it's in more detail. And lastly was the two-foot contour intervals. Staff supports granting the waiver since the sufficient topography has been provided on the subject parcel. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, John.
And then we can go through the waivers for the site plan.
You want to go through the site plan waivers?
Actually, the waivers on the site plan were the same.
Similar.
Yeah, I mean, there's parallel regulations. We're also asking for waivers on the site plans for those same scale soil information.
That's right.
Okay, John?
I'll go through the design review comments, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Bear with me, because I'm a little misscombobulated this evening. First four design review items are, as they related to the waivers. Item number five, the applicant should provide copies of existing and relevant proposed deeds or other legal documents. Item six, it should provide the owner's signature on a plan set. Item seven, we're requesting that they address items related to the subdivision plan, that being the lot configuration defined by meets and bounds. And that's it for the subdivision. I can go through the site plan comments. Again, design review items. Item number one, the applicant should add a note to the site plan indicating that all monies have been set in accordance with the regulations. Items two, three are related to the waivers. Item four, we're asking that the applicant address the following items on the site plan. The proposed, the applicant has proposed a five-foot wide sidewalk with no separation between the sidewalk and the road along Woodmont Ave and the proposed access road. These dimensions do not appear to meet the street-type, frontage-type requirements in Section 2.33 Transportation Network of the Woodmont PUD Master Plan. The applicant has noted that the proposed east side of Woodmont Ave is designed to match the surrounding streets that were previously approved as part of the Woodmont Commons Planned Unit Development Block 2 amended site plan, and bringing that to the board's attention. Item five, we're requesting that they address the items related to the drainage and grading plans, being adding spot grades to the area to ensure that the wheelchair access is appropriate. We're also asking that they revise the structure ID of CB9B. We're requesting that they revise the minimum cover for particular catch basins on, within the plan set. Item five, we're requesting that they address items related to the utilities plan, those being related to the sewer and gas details within the plan set. Item six, we're requesting that they address items related to the utility plan and the sewer profiles, the related work regarding the limits of the work, required work, and ensuring no conflicts with the proposed lighting or the landscaping within the plan set. Item seven, we're asking that they address the following items related to the detail sheets, the related driveway section, the roof, foundation, drain, excuse me, roof and foundation drain details. And item number eight, we're requesting that they address items related to the roadway profile and cross-sections for the access drive that Bob mentioned, located to the south. We're requesting that they provide the section to the scale in accordance with the regulations and identify the proper thickness of the road in accordance with the plan set details. Item nine are items related to the drainage report, those being providing riprap calculations, revising the drainage design to produce a closed-circuit system designed to convey the appropriate design storm with no more than full-flow pipe conditions. Requesting that they provide a minimum of 12 inches of freeboard in the 50-year storm in association with the detention pond. Regarding the short traffic analysis, we're requesting, while they have provided the site distance measurements and the short traffic letter, per the regulation, the comparison to the Town of London Dairy standards, in this case, Woodmont Commons PUD site distance requirement should also be included. The applicant has noted that the southern site driveway's proximity to Marketplace Drive intersection is not a concern due to the low volume and speeds of vehicles using the driveway. While speeds and volumes may be low, the awkward left and immediate right maneuver that is required to go to and from the driveway, to and from Marketplace Drive should, could lead to minor issues in the short term. So we're requesting that they recommend that they take a look at this driveway alignment and possibly align it with the brewery driveway. So again, it's, if you look at the plan, it's the most southerly driveway, or excuse me, the southerly access road where they come out, and it's a quick, it's a quick left or quick right, and maybe problematic. We're raising the flag. Item C, the applicant has noted that only 10% of the generated traffic will utilize the southern driveway, given the layout of the parking area for the office building. 75% of the parking is to the south of the building. And again, the proximity of the southern entrance to Marketplace Drive, it is anticipated that a larger percentage of the traffic will utilize this entrance. This should, this would seem essentially true for employees, regular patrons, and entering traffic that can take their first right off Michael's Way onto Marketplace Drive. We recommend the applicant consider, again, the percentage of traffic that utilizes this driveway. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, John. Anything to add, Kelly?
Few items, Mr. Chair. So the applicant did go through the DRC process. And as the applicant indicated, the Heritage Commission recommended extending the main canopy above the patient entrance and adding curved window caps, which the applicant did address. The Conservation Commission had some comments relative to snow storage areas and their proximity to the parking, and ensuring that the snow storage areas don't negatively impact landscaping, which the applicant did adjust the plan accordingly. Lastly, the applicant provided a PUD conformance memo to show their compliance with the PUD standards. That memo is in their packet in your information. It reviews the block type analysis, lot type analysis, building type analysis, use analysis, and the site plan analysis, again, as it relates to the PUD specifically. And it is compliant.
It confirms, it conforms to it. Anything to add at all, Ben? We'll go through the board now. Ian, you want to start? Or you can start the other end if you want.
Good evening. Where's the trash pad for the trash trucks to come and pick it up?
The dumpster is the little white square in the upper-left corner. So the truck would come straight in and then circle aside and lead by the other driveway.
Just 'cause I want to mention that DMC1, I can call it, on Michael's Way. This is, this is DMC2, is that way? What you're calling these one?
Yes, we should have explained that, yes. Dairy Medical Center 1, Dairy Medical Center 2. It's a placekeeper name, obviously. Won't have that name when it's opened.
Might want to schedule them off-hours because I got stuck behind the trash truck at DMC1. And the way it's configured now, they have to cross the exit with their truck to get the trash. And DMC1 in the back on the southeast corner of their, of the building. It's not the whole lot because the lot extends farther to the south. But consider that because it was a while, because there's two bays and they have to, you know, bring things down and pull it back and then bring it forward and pull it back. And it was into the lane of traffic on, I'm not sure of the name of the road behind DMC1, but it extended, the back of the truck extended there. And I just, I just want to mention that.
We appreciate that feedback, and that's something we can look into.
Yeah, just so, so if there's, is it, as far as, there's not going to be any type of ambulance coming to this building, correct?
Well, there could be.
So I can kind of put a little bit more color to that. So the facilities that we're talking about are not a licensed facility in the state of New Hampshire. So from a building in your classification, it's the same as an office building.
Okay.
Technically speaking. That being said, people walk in the door all the time, things can happen, no different than this building for that matter. If something happened to me, I'm hoping they call the ambulance.
I was just curious because it's called a medical building.
But no inpatient care or anything of that nature is planned here.
Okay. And the last time you came through, I had some complaints that the visuals, the architectural renderings even again, they show it all on a flat plane and not the actual slope that might be around the buildings. I see this again on, for example, A4 on your, labeled under the architectural drawings you have here. Where's that from?
Yeah, yes, so just to put it in...
Because we just see a flat building on a flat piece of property. And last time, the same view was apparent for building number one. And it was actually five steps in, up into the building.
Yeah, so this, if we looked at our, and Bob, if you want to pull the grading plan, this building is actually level to both Woodmont, level again, within reason, both to...
It's like two feet difference?
And our site driveway or our patient pickup, I should say. So there's no steps planned between Woodmont Ave and the, I guess I would call it, main entrance or...
The main entrance on the street.
Correct.
Okay.
Is it in this or the site plan?
Yeah, the site plan said it's actually in another floor. I don't know what they're, site plan. And that's Sheet 4, I think it is. All right, so the site plan is shown here. You can see the grading is relatively flat across the site. I think we're at maybe 4% on the 5% max on the parking lot. But around the building itself, it's much flatter, more like 2% or 3%. And so as it pitches from lower right, which is high, to upper left, which is low, you're going from a 4% grade, average grade, across the parking lot, and then you're hitting this 2%, 2% to 3% grade going off the site. But because of the evenness of the grading, it looks flat. You know, the whole thing is essentially on a plane. So it will look relatively flat, even though there is a pitch across it.
Okay, so in the front of the building, for the entire width, it's maybe a two-foot drop from one side of it?
Not even, half as far at best. So there's no stairs, for all intents and purposes, from a practical standpoint, the site is flat.
Yeah, you're approximately at the Woodmont Ave grade with the finished floor, a little bit above it. But the sidewalk is almost dead level from Woodmont Ave all the way around the building and back out to Woodmont Ave.
Okay, thank you.
It's a great site for a medical building because of that.
You very much.
From a distance, it all looks level. Once you get up there, that's a little bit of an undulation to it.
Anything else, Ian?
No, I'm all set, thanks.
Johnny?
I don't have any questions.
I have a few. So you pointed at one cement pad for a...
Trash truck.
What's on the upper right, looking at?
The other one, so we got trash to the north in motorcycle parking, which is a PUD requirement to the south. The idea being a kickstand on a bike, if it's on concrete, it's going to last long.
So while you're standing there, please, if you wouldn't mind, so the stub road to your right, yes, that one, there's no on-street parking for that particular road, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
And then as I look at it from the Woodmont Ave, which is to the west, right? So there's, on the, on the new building side of Woodmont Ave where the red car is, there's parking?
Yep.
On-street parking along that entire site, basically, on that side.
Yes.
On the other side, the parking stops where the road juts up to the east, right?
Yep, precisely.
So just, just like half of it.
Correct.
And then, and then the other side bumps into the road, basically. And so from then on, which basically is to the south, if I was going to your right, traveling to your right, there's no more on-street parking on Woodmont.
No, there is. Actually, all along Woodmont Ave, all the way to Pillsbury, there is on-street parking that sort of alternates from one side to the other.
To the, to the south, that's correct. There's, there's no more...
Oh, to the south, I'm sorry.
There's no more on-street.
I was thinking to the north when you were asking that question.
So can I stand up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, certainly.
You won't, you won't know that I'm standing up here, that's okay. So this road juts out, so there can't be any on-street parking here, right?
That is great.
And then continuing on, because now this one, this property juts east, seventy way, there can't be any on-street parking there either.
Right, and that's a dead end now, that it stops at the property line, just beyond the property line.
So there's no development past here and Woodmont Commons?
Well, right, Woodmont property stops there.
Woodmont Commons continues, but...
Right.
Got it, okay, thank you. I'm all set, appreciate it.
Jeff?
I have no questions, Mr. Chair.
So my only question is on the striping of the road at Woodmont Ave. We need some crosswalks in a few spots in my mind, and I don't know who is responsible for doing that or making sure that they happen. But like at the end of Main Street, going over to the building, and then somewhere along from that common parking lot over to the building as well, I would think we would want two marked crosswalks. The crosswalk locations were part of the master plan, and we showed one at the, at the south end of the site. And, and I believe at Main Street also, there is provisions for crosswalks, a crosswalk. Correct me if I'm wrong, Joe.
I think you're right. So again, Lynn, I think what, on this particular plan doesn't show all the master roadway layouts. So we have to go back to that plan, and I don't, I don't have that plan this afternoon.
So in your opinion, though, we have a mechanism to make sure that that happens?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, good.
It's supposed to be a walking community, so...
Yeah, I just didn't see anything there, and I want to make sure that we have them.
Yeah, I just didn't see anything there and I want to make sure that we have them.
So there's, there's two, actually, one essentially at, at the north and the south ends of the site.
Okay, great.
Yep, I'm all set.
Okay.
Good on the site subdivision. John, can you help me out with, there was two design review items that stuck out. I believe it was number four. And there's one of the last ones you talked about, about that road that is all the way to the south. Can you just walk me through those again? Five-foot sidewalk with no separation between the sidewalk and the road along Woodmont?
Correct.
Yeah.
Again, they don't appear to, to meet the, the street-type, frontage-type requirements from the, the master, from the Woodmont PUD master plan.
But it is, if I'm understanding, understanding that right, it is what has happened around the development?
So again, so the response was, yeah, so the applicant, TF Marion has noted that the, the proposed east side of Woodmont Ave is designed to match the surrounding streets that were previously approved as part of the, the master plan, the PUD for that block number two.
Okay.
As it was amended.
Okay.
So again, just raising the flag. Because when, when the big yellow machines come and the CO is going, is issued, people are going to say, well, what's, how come we're walking so close to the street? It is similar to DMC One, though, where the sidewalk is.
Which is along the front, and I think Main Street, there's nothing between Main Street and the road, correct?
No, between Wood, between Michael's, Michael's Way and, so the sidewalk is right up against.
That's what I'm saying, they're all right up against the roadway.
Correct.
I can add a little bit to that, too. As you go down Woodmont Ave towards Pillsbury Ave, you'll notice that wherever there is parking, the sidewalk is tight up against the parking.
Yeah.
And then when there's no parking, the sidewalk moves away and there's a grass strip. And essentially, that's what's happening in this piece of Woodmont Ave, too.
And so you're good with that comment, then?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Making you aware of it.
Yep. And then the last one was, just walk me through that roadway again. There was concern with the alignment of the intersection?
It's more or less, yeah, just the alignment of this.
Okay.
So they're going to come out, take a left, and then they're going to take an immediate right.
Yep.
Okay. Again, it's one of those, whereas Bob says this is the property line.
Yeah.
This is actually owned by Market Basket.
Yep.
Well, it's part of the PUD.
Yep.
So, kind of a. That's why we want offsets of driveways, two hundred feet and all that.
I'm good, I don't have any issues with the plan.
And just to elaborate, though, too, again, where they're saying seventy-five percent of the traffic coming there is going to utilize that.
Is going to turn right or turn left?
So again, even, even if they're coming from 102. Come from 102, come up Michael's Way.
Yep.
Hang a right at the, at the far end.
Hang a right or bang a right, which one?
Hang a right. Depends where you grew up.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm good, Mr. Chair, I don't have any.
Okay, yeah, just a reminder to the board, we're doing both the subdivision and the site plan together. And again, if I could just add a little bit to that. Yes. Response, we responded to all those comments. And the reason we didn't change anything with that is because there's a berm, a tall berm that exists now along that property line. And although we necessarily have to remove part of the berm where we just run out of property, where we could, we left it to provide screening to the, and it's the back of the marketplace. Okay, so we provide some visual screening.
Is that Market Basket or the Park and Ride? I think that's a lot line with the Park and Ride, correct?
It's Park and Ride, I think.
I thought it was stable, stayed on property, isn't it?
Yeah.
I don't have any problems with it, I'm good.
Okay, Ted?
I guess my only questions would be certainly on the lot line of that roadway. I don't know if you're able to make some sort of agreement with the state on that property as that lot line is with the state and with the parking lot, not Park and Ride, if you're able to make some sort of agreement to try and straighten out that road.
I feel like there's a huge grade change right there.
You know, so I mean, it just.
There is.
There's a massive grade change.
Flow of the roadways, if you're able to make some sort of agreement because of certainly where that lot line lands, it's with the, the state. And it's certainly not land that's being used by them, but some sort of easement with that roadway. And I know potentially there may be at some point a connection into that Park and, Park and Ride at some point, but.
Yeah, I know there was an easement talked about there and these, and that dead end does head into that.
Yes.
Into that property.
Years ago, when, when, when Woodmont was being discussed originally and we were discussing traffic, again, there was the potential, again, we had discussed that tying into the Park and Ride area. But again, it's where it's state property, it was going to take an act of Congress to, for that to occur. I don't know whether, I don't know where Woodmont is at right now.
I mean, even still, I mean, you have some, some room, that triangle piece of property between where that roadway goes and where, where that road, you know, is supposed to be coming to, you have some room to be able to move that road further south.
We could, I mean, we certainly can revisit this with, with staff and, you know, if they feel strongly that it should be moved, then we can accommodate it to, to the greatest extent possible.
I mean, if it were to be moved south to that property line, how far would that be? You know? How many feet?
Not very much.
Is that like another twenty, thirty feet, forty feet?
That we could move it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's all based on the elevation through there, too.
Yeah, it does, it does drop off back there.
Looks like eight and a half, nine feet of elevation.
Yeah, I don't think it has to move. And it's kind of a dead end, so it's not going anywhere.
Well, no, I'm saying this right here, yes, it'll go to a dead end, but if you're trying to access this flow of property right here, as John had said, having a quick left and right to get onto that road would be an issue. And especially, you know, if you need to get in there for flow of traffic even into their property, that could, that could create some issues. So, just trying to smooth out traffic.
Well, again, we could, you know, have further conversation with staff about it. Again, this is a twenty-five mile an hour roadway network, there's two stop signs, well, three stop signs counting the, the access driveway. So there just won't be high-speed traffic and, you know, dangerous conflicts there. It's, it's almost like within a parking lot, type of maneuvering that happens.
Like leaving the end of an island at Market Basket, it's.
But I mean, it's, it's, the vehicle's at very slow speed, there'd probably be bikes in there, there'd be people walking in there. So.
Yep.
And, and no dealing with the, with the state. It probably could be done, but it just takes a very long time.
I think it's good.
Well, that was my only one comment.
You all set, Ted?
That's what I said, yeah.
Oh, okay. Jason?
I have no questions, thank you.
Roger?
Just a good comment that if you build out fast enough, maybe it'll open up the south bus station. And that'll be an exit right there. So good luck in this.
It's just used as a.
It's a parking lot now.
Parking right now because buses just don't operate out of there. I don't know what the future plans that the state has, so.
If you have enough business, it'll, it'll work.
Right, they like to conduct everything out of Exit Five or Exit Two, that's, that's it.
Bruce?
I like the building. I like the property. I hate that road that we've been talking about. Having spent most of my life driving fire trucks, that's a nightmare to try to take a left and then an immediate right with anything that has a long wheelbase. But, so that, that roadway just services the property behind yours?
Correct. It's a driveway to that property behind.
So why not make it just green space and have somebody else's?
It's an opening right there.
Have someone else deal with the problem.
That's how you get on that property.
Well, I think the, the simplest answer is that they're also looking for, now that this property's being developed, they want to provide access to that back property so that they can bring prospective tenants to look at it and see that it does have a presence on Woodmont Ave and, and looks like a good developable property with utilities.
Can you put a right turn only sign there?
That eliminates the left problem. I think what we're missing is that's essentially a dead end.
Right now it is. Just upon the fact that it's a prospective property and they're putting the roadway there, there's a reason. I mean, I'm not against it, I'm not going to, I'm not going to hold the project up for it, I just think it's, it adds another logistical driving thing in that property. But again, that whole property is designed around tight streets and.
Yeah.
Walking abilities.
It's the compactness of, of the whole thing, so.
I just.
For our fire equipment, I'm sure it's a nightmare.
My firefighter hat is hard to take off when I look at stuff like that.
What do you, can I, can I ask, what do you do, Bruce, on the, on the, how do you handle those roundabouts? Just drive through the middle of them?
Yep.
Because there's no way you can make those radiuses.
Nope, we drive over the, the concrete, the center concrete, it's actually designed to.
The papers are there for trucks and.
Right, right.
Large, long vehicles.
And if you've ever seen the tower truck drive through there, it's, it's quite an interesting experience to be both in the truck and outside of it. You know, again, I don't, it'd be nice if it could line up with another street so it's easier, but you don't have much room there with the lot line either, so.
Just a little, a little too, too tight.
Is there any consideration to using that driveway to kind of bifurcate your parking lot a little bit? So you move it away from, from this area here? If you shift this over here, and then you could have, I don't know, parking up against here and a little bit of green space in between. Like I said, I'm not going to vote no against it, I just, I'm not crazy about it.
Well, the simplest thing to do would be to just soften that curve, shift the roadway the twenty feet or so we can to the right and soften the radius on that corner to make sure that it's easily traversable by, by fire apparatus. And, and we'd be happy to do that as a condition of approval with staff. It really doesn't affect any of the others, I plan out of this.
That being said, just to sort of play devil's advocate, you know, part of the considerations of the overall PUD is aesthetics-driven. And if we were to sort of pursue that based, at least from, you know, just sort of looking at the plans right now, aesthetically, you're probably looking at retaining walls, minimization of screening, other sort of adverse consequences. So, you know, not, not every plan is perfect for certain, but I think that working inside of the design constraints that we have, and quite honestly, if it was any other a butter than the state, I think that we could sort of draw out the conversation more. But to John's point, you know, doing much more than that would require an act of Congress and, and full disclosure, we, you know, like to get going right here and, and like to get some tax revenue generated for, for the town. So we think, you know, you have a plan that Kelly's been through, John's been through, your third-party engineer's been through, and, you know, in the simplest terms, we're, we're asking for an approval on it.
Is that a sidewalk along that roadway?
That's correct.
Yes, on the south side.
Art? I'd like to say safety comes first, though. If it, if we're hearing that a fire truck may not be able to easily traverse that S-curve there, why not address it now?
What's the curb height going to be there?
Curb height? Six-inch curb. But we could make a mountable corner there, too. I, I think there are simple solutions to it, I.
I think, I think if you potentially kind of expand that sidewalk a little bit, make it a little bit wider at the end, and that would essentially give us a.
The buffer you need.
Well, because.
Give me what you got at the rotary.
Yeah, essentially what's going to happen, we're going to drive over your grass. We'll get the fire truck in there, but.
If they need to get there, they're going to go through it and everything.
If you kind of drop the curb height a little bit there as you approach that corner and you widen that sidewalk area a little bit, it's essentially a, a wheel track, if you will.
I, I see what you're saying and I think it makes sense. So what you're saying essentially is make a mountable apron in that corner.
Just widen this, widen this up a little bit here.
Yeah.
And then just kind of taper your curb so that if, if a large truck has to make that corner, they're going to be able to take a little bit of that sidewalk area if necessary. Again, it's all just forward thinking, but.
Or you just use papers in there between the, like the roadway and the sidewalk.
I mean, I would be comfortable with leaving it to staff to kind of.
Well, we'll ask them to do, Bruce is again, run the, the Londonderry Fire Truck template on that and see what we can do.
I'm happy with that.
Yeah, because we can add that as a condition that they work with staff on, right.
Problem right here.
Yeah, just something that'll give you a little bit of a buffer to get that corner.
Yeah, no, I understand where you're coming from and I think it's easily accomplished.
Perfect, I'm happy, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Are there any butters or anyone of the public with questions, comments, concerns in regards to the subdivision plan and the site plan? I don't, oh, Ray, you've made it.
I'm not on the butters.
But you're, I can, have an interest.
Ray President, Three Gary Drive. This looks like a nice project, but I do have a couple of questions. First off, the property is flat, but it is not level. There's a large parking lot and it pitches to the north. All the stormwater from that is going to run basically, correct me if I'm wrong, basically into the retention pond to the north of the project. To me, that is a concern because stormwater runoff is a problem to be dealt with. Once it goes into the retention pond, it's going to build up and it's got to go somewhere. You know, you could say it's going to saturate into the ground, but not very rapidly. There is an outlet towards ninety-three, but I don't think it's going to be shipped in that direction. Most of the water in that retention pond, I believe now, is pumped across the site, across Michael Way to the retention ponds to the west of Michael's Way. I'm wondering if that is, what is going to continue? From all the stormwater running off this parking lot and the building, could we get an answer to that?
The reason why.
John, our engineer can.
The reason why the stormwater is pumped to the west, Ray, is because, again, because of its turbidity. So if you go to the, the large ponds with the frac tanks along Pillsbury Road.
Yeah.
So that's why, again, because there was so much area that was opened up, out there and it was not stabilized, so the turbidity in that stormwater was, was high.
So the answer is that it's going to continue?
No, it is not, that's not, you know, let me get to the answer.
Okay.
So because of, again, the, the site, there was so much open on the site and the turbidity of the water was so high, that's what they were doing to treat that stormwater. Ultimately, when everything is, is done, the sites are loomed and seeded, grass growing, impervious areas, again, that bypass, that pumping of the stormwater will not occur. So on, as Bob indicated, on this site, they have deep sumps on the, in the catch basins. So that's a form of dealing with the sediment and the oils and, and that drip off the cars.
And the stormwater that goes into those catch basins, where does that go?
Into the, into the detention pond that you're referring to. And then that, like you say, that discharge from that flows to the east towards ninety-three.
Correct, in the permanent condition. In the permanent condition, it flows to a wetland complex in ninety-three. In the temporary condition, as long as there's construction going at Baldwin and on this site, it will continue to be treated as a construction pond and pumped to the large ponds. And pumped to the large ponds on the, on the west side of the site.
That's, that's what's happening now.
That's what's happening now, and that will continue until these sites are, uh, completed with construction.
Right.
Then the pumping will stop and they'll go in their, uh, permanent outlet structure, which already is in place, to the north towards ninety-three.
To the east.
Sorry, yeah, to the east.
To the east towards ninety-three, across, underneath ninety-three and into the pond over there.
Correct. Understand, Ray?
Oh, I understand. I understand. I, I, I still have concern of it because of the concern with stormwater runoff. Understand ninety percent, or eighty percent of water contamination comes from stormwater runoff, whether it's coming off. Soil that is bare, or whether it's coming off a parking lot or whatever, it is of concern. And, and the, uh, I, as far as, there was discussion about the fire trucks coming into the site. Am I seeing upward, uh, I think you said motorcycles, parking? That's an inlet into the site, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. But as far as fire trucks coming to the site, I would think they would be coming off Pillsbury. Onto Woodmont Ave for access to the site. And, uh, that concern about that kind of S turn there is of concern and probably should be addressed. Because there should be too, um, good access to the site. I would think most of the traffic. I don't know. Would be coming off Pillsbury because Woodmont Ave is such a nice wide road. Rather than coming off ninety-three, a lot of the traffic will come in that direction. I'm just wondering what percentage, maybe half and half. So, uh. It, it looks like it's a, a need for the town, uh, it's proceeding. Those are only, uh, my concerns. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thanks, Ray. Anyone else? Kevin.
Thank you, Art, members of the board, Kevin Smith, consultant with the Woodmont Commons Project. I guess just to give you an update, cause there's been a lot of discussion on the DOT owned land with a park and ride is. John, you were correct in that early on in the Woodmont Commons planning and discussions after it was approved. There, there was talks about it at some point. Marketplace Drive connecting into the exit four park and ride, um, for. Accessibility for both the residents there and, and employees of Woodmont Commons. Covid kind of killed those plans, uh, because if you recall, when Covid hit, that. Park and Ride was then turned into a site for all of the Covid testing and shots. And it essentially never reopened. Uh, and Art, as you noted, they're primarily now using, the buses are utilizing exit five and exit two. For most of their services. Uh, I did speak with DOT as recently as six months ago to talk about what their plans are, uh, for that site. They have no plans right now for getting rid of it. But if at some point it did become surplus property, there's about a two-year planning process. Before that would be disposed of, and there's no guarantee that it would go to Woodmont Commons. As it has to be put out on the market and there's, you know, a, a fair, uh, competitive bidding process for it. So, the short answer is it, it may once again turn into a park and ride at some point. It may not, and it may go to surplus property, um, but we just don't know, uh, what the future is for that. In the meantime, we're trying to plan forward and, and have forward thinking on this particular site and the site behind it. As Bob noted, it's a very marketable site because of its proximity, uh, to be able to be seen from the highway. And so, um, I just wanted to offer that as, as some additional information on that DOT owned land.
Thank you. Definitely good, uh, good info. Anyone else? I do not see any. We'll bring it back to the board for. Further discussion. We have, uh, waivers to do on both the subdivision and the site plans and then the individual plans themselves. So, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll take waivers for the subdivision first, and then I'll take waivers for the.
Mister. Site plan second. Mister Chair, I'd like to mo-, uh, make a motion to grant waivers one through four of the subdivision plan to subdivide map ten lot forty-one into two lots. Pillsbury Road, Michael's Way and Woodmont Avenue, map ten lot forty-one, zone C one and PUD. Wood, Woodmont Commons Plan Unit Development, Pillsbury Realty Development LLC and Nickerson Designs. As noted in the staff recommendation memorandum dated December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And that these waivers may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
Second, Mr. Chair. Motion on the, uh, four waivers, second by Lynn. Any further discussion by the board? Sign on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions and chair votes affirmative, and the waivers have been granted for the site plan. Why don't we finish the, uh. Subdivision plan, pardon me, I'm looking at the site plan thing here. Why don't we finish up the subdivision plan, and then we'll go to the, uh, we'll keep them equally separate.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make, to make a motion to grant conditional approval of the subdivision plan to subdivide map ten lot forty-one and. Into two lots, Pillsbury Road, Michael's Way and Woodmont Avenue, map ten lot forty-one. Zone C one and PUD, Woodmont Commons Plan Unit Development and Pillsbury Realty Development LLC owner and Nickerson Designs LLC. In accordance with plans prepared by Hayner Swanson dated May second, two thousand twenty-three. Last revised October second, two thousand twenty-three, with the precedent conditions to be filled within two years of approval and prior to plan signature in general and subsequent condition of approval. To be fulfilled as noted in the staff recommendation memorandum dated December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
I have a motion by Jake, uh, second by Bruce, uh, for granting conditional approval. Any further discussion by the board? Sign on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, chair votes affirmative, and the subdivision plan is conditionally approved. Okay, next, we'll go to the waivers for the site plan. All right.
Mister Chair, I'd like to ma-, make a motion to grant waivers one through four of the site plan to construct a thirty thousand square foot two-story medical office building. Pillsbury Road, Michael's Way and Woodmont Avenue, map ten lot forty-one, zone C one and PUD, Woodmont Commons Plan Unit Development. And Pillsbury Realty Development LLC and Nickerson Designs LLC applicant, as noted in the staff recommendation memorandum dated December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, and that these waivers may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
Second by Jake, Mister Chair. Second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Sign on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions and chair votes affirmative, and, uh, the waivers have been, uh, well, waivers have been granted for the site plan.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make motion to grant conditional approval of the site plan to construct a thirty thousand square foot two-story medical office building. Pillsbury Road, Michael's Way and Woodmont Avenue, map ten lot forty-one, zone C one and PUD, Woodmont Commons Plan Unit Development. Pillsbury Realty Development LLC and Nickerson Designs LLC. In accordance with the plans prepared by Allen Major and Associates dated May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, last revised October twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. With the precedent conditions to be fulfilled within a hundred and twenty days of approval and prior to plan signature in general and subsequent conditions of approval. To be fulfilled as noted in the staff recommendation memorandum dated December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
And do you want to add the, uh, condition that we had, uh, talked about in regards to the, uh, the roadway and, and the turning, uh, turning radius?
Yeah. To, to work with staff to address design review item number ten A. Excuse me, uh, ten B.
Ten B, okay. Mister Chair, I think I heard, uh, there was a typo in, in the reading of that, too. It sounded like Allen and Major plans we referred to. Did I hear that right?
Ah, yeah.
Should be TF Moran.
How could we forget you?
I apologize. I've been called worse. I'll second that, Mister Chair. Okay, motion for conditional approval by Jake, second by Lynn. Uh, any discussion by the board? Sign on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, chair votes affirmative, and, uh, the site plan has been, uh, conditionally approved. Thank you very much, members of the board.
Okay, you're.
Thank you, Senator, appreciate this.
You're welcome. I, I know the.
Work with your project.
The Dairy Medical Building, people just tell me how nice it is and everything and, uh.
Come by, come by anytime.
Yeah, it's a showcase, you know?
Do you have snacks?
Mister Chair. I refuse myself for the upcoming.
Okay. Don't be that, don't be that. Don't be that. Okay. Next we have is a public hearing on an application for formal review of a subdivision and lot consolidation plan for seventy-one Perkins Road. Tax map fifteen, lot fifty-one. Zone mixed use commercial, one seventy-one Rockingham Road, tax map fifteen, lot fifty-nine, zone, uh. MUC, uh, one seventy-nine Rockingham Road, tax map fifteen, lot sixty, zone MUC. And, uh, that's, uh, mixed use. One seventy-five Rockingham Road, tax map fifteen, lot sixty dash two, zone MUC. And one ninety-one Rockingham Road, tax map fifteen, lot sixty-four, zone MUC. Gene Gagnon is the owner and the applicant, and this is continued from December sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
Mister Chair, there are two outstanding checklist items on this, which the applicant has requested waivers for. If the board decides to accept the application as complete, these items should be waived for acceptance only. They refer to providing stormwater management report and providing a traffic impact analysis.
So, uh, I just want to note that Johnny Verani has stepped down from, uh, from this. So that, should, should preface this whole thing. But, uh, basically, if, uh, they were, the waivers were granted, it would be for acceptance purposes only.
Correct.
Mister Chair. I'll make a motion to waive the checklist items noted above for acceptance only. And that they would become a. They would become a condition of approval, although they're waived for acceptance only.
Yeah, I mean, yes, they would be a condition for approval, or we, we, once we get into the plan itself, we could, we could waive them, but. It all, all depends on, on, on what happens. So basically, the, uh, if we accept it, uh, for a conditional, I mean, for acceptance purposes only, the plan is complete, and then we can discuss the plan.
I do have a motion.
I'll second the motion, Mister Chair. Okay, there's a motion to accept the two waivers for, uh, acceptance purposes only, seconded by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Sign on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions and chair votes affirmative. So those two waivers have been accepted for acceptance purposes only, uh, which, uh, at this time makes the plan complete. I'll take a motion for completeness.
I make, I'd like to make a, uh, motion to accept, uh, the application as complete.
I'll second that, Mister Chair. Okay.
Mister Chair, could I just chime in for a second? So, um.
Yes.
We actually, you can waive them in their, its entirety. You don't, we don't need to waive them for acceptance only.
So if I can ex- explain it to you, so a subdivision, again, so with this particular site, because again, they're gonna, each, each of these sites.
There's gonna be a site plan with this also.
Exactly.
Correct.
So these would have to be addressed on the site plan?
Correct. So it's just.
For each lot.
Okay.
Yeah, so, again, what, so, and people will say, well, why, why do we make it so, if this was coming in for a residential site? Plan or a residential subdivision, we wouldn't support the waiver request. Follow me?
Yes.
So every time that somebody else comes in for a site plan, that they're gonna address the, the drainage. You follow me?
So in this instance, we, we support.
So you support the waiver on it?
Completely.
Okay.
Okay, the same thing for the traffic.
Yeah, cause it's gonna, it's gonna get addressed later down the road, so that's fine.
So the board understand?
Sorry.
Everybody get that?
Okay. Okay, uh, what I'll do, uh, is we'll, uh, accept those, uh.
So, do we?
Yeah, we'll, we'll waive them in their, their entirety.
Yeah, make a motion to.
Amend your motion to accept.
I would amend my motion to waive them in their entirety.
Okay, we have amendment to the just passed motion on those two waivers to accept them in their entirety, motion by Jake.
I'll resecond that motion.
Seconded by, by Lynn. Any discussion, board?
So it's similarly to what we've done up in Pettingill, where large lots are subdivided.
Yeah.
We waive the conditions of those particular items that they're asking for.
When they ask for them, Bruce.
In order, in order to get to the actual lot where the, those items will be addressed individually per lot.
You got it.
Correct.
Bingo. Just a little talk back to make sure we got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, it's, it's always worthwhile, believe me. So, uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All, all those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, chair votes affirmative, and the, uh, there's one vote less, cause Johnny Verani had to step down, so this is eight zero zero, eight, yeah, eight zero zero. So, uh, this makes it, uh, complete, so, uh. A motion for, uh, completeness.
I believe we just did that.
Mister Chairman, this.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
It's gonna be similar to.
Catching up here slowly.
For, uh, DMC two, where this subdivision has a site plan associated with it. So I think you might want to accept the site plan portion as well, and that way.
Yes.
Jason can give the presentation for both the, if you can do that, Jason, you think you could it?
I might be able to handle that.
Okay.
Easy, we, we, we just did it on the previous, uh, too.
But this is Jason, though.
So, uh. Really good ways to save time also.
You got all the faith in the world, Jason.
Okay, so, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll go to the, uh, the site plan for, uh, you know, uh. The waivers and also for the, uh, the completeness.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application as complete per staff's recommendation memorandum dated December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, this is for the.
This is for the site plan, sir.
Site plan. For the site plan.
Yes.
I'll second that, Mister Chair. Okay, Jase, I mean, uh, Jake's made the, uh, motion, Lynn has seconded. This is for the minute taker that, uh, listens to get everything right. Any discussion by the board? Sign on all those in favor, signify by saying aye, this is for completeness, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, chair votes affirmative, and the, uh, site plan has been accepted as complete. So we'll, we'll be discussing both the subdivision and the site plan together. When it comes to decision-making time, we'll do the motions separately.
Very good.
So.
All right. So I will, uh, start with the subdivision. Jason Lopez.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah. Are there two site plans? One for the condominium, or one for the townhouses and then one for the medical building?
Yes. Separate, separate, uh, applicants.
Correct, they're separate applicants.
Yeah.
But we, but we will, I intend to discuss traffic, though.
Together.
As a whole.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause. Making things more complicated, right, but I mean, yeah. I remember when we had the conceptual, uh, discussion on this, there was considerable discussion about traffic.
All right. So, my name's Jason Lopez, Keach Nordstrom Associates, and, uh, with me tonight is, uh, owner and applicant, Gene Gagnon. And, uh, since we're gonna be talking about the site plan, uh, right after, uh, I'll introduce Jason Ford from VHB, and he is the traffic consultant on the project. Uh, and he'll be able to speak this evening on the traffic. To start out on the subdivision, um, so map fifteen, uh, we have five lots. Fifty-one, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty dash two, and sixty-four. They are located, uh, have frontage on Rockingham Road, Vista Ridge Drive and Perkins Road. This is gonna be a lot consolidation and re-subdivision to combine five lots and create four new lots. So this project is just off ninety-three exit five and right across the street from the park and ride. Uh, there's a total of forty-seven acres on both. There's a total of forty-seven acres on both sides of Vista Ridge Drive. The property is zoned MUC, which is mixed-use commercial, and that zone requires projects to have a mixed commercial and residential components. Back in, on October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, we met with the board for conceptual discussion about this project. Based on that discussion, we determined the commercial aspect of the project would be handled by a dedicated three-acre lot at the intersection of Rockingham Road and Vista, right at the lights. And later this evening, you'll hear a site plan from a separate applicant on that property. So that is the lot that we are looking to have dedicated solely for commercial purposes. The rest of the lot, well, I shouldn't say the rest of the lots, the, the two larger lots, the one on East and West that we're gonna be presenting the site plans on, those will be a residential use only. And then Mr. Gagnon will retain a lot over on the corner of Vista Ridge and Perkins, and that will be developed in the future, either residential, commercial, you know, to be determined at a later date. Gene is interested in maintaining ownership of the three lots. He is not interested in doing commercial development. So as you'll hear later tonight, there, there's a. Is a company interested in developing that three-acre lot. I had three waivers that were requested, we just took care of two. There is one additional waiver for this subdivision, and that was for driveways to individual lots. We are creating, currently, there's no approved driveway access points to any of the lots. There is a driveway to the existing water booster station. We were planning on having that as access to.
That's on like the east side, right, over near Perkins?
Yes, yeah, right, right on the corner of Vista and Perkins. There's a booster station, sits off in the woods a little bit. So we're looking at driveway access for the subdivision purposes, being from there. The site plan for the three-acre lot will address that, that's gonna have to come off Vista. And our site plan will address the site access to both the larger residential pieces. So we were requesting a waiver, you know, on this application for showing the driveway construction and site lines and so forth, since they would be handled separately, and I believe staff may have some input on that item. Other than that, I think it's really simple subdivision. If there's more questions or go into more detail on that, I can do that right now.
Okay, this will just be on the subdivisions, just the subdu, okay.
Yeah.
John.
Again, let, give me a minute to. So design review items, the first one is the under, yeah, looking at staff memorandum with planning and economic development, engineering, and STAN Tech comments dated the thirteenth of December. Design review item number one, the applicant has not indicated lot driveways or proposed driveway site distance plans and profiles for the, for the proposed lots to demonstrate compliance. Per section D, two of the regulations is typically required. The applicant should update the project plan set and include a driveway location to serve each lot and provide a driveway site distance plan and profile for each driveway in accordance, in compliance with exhibit D two, including a certification. Applicant has submitted a waiver request for this requirement for the planning board consideration. Department of Engineering does not support that waiver request. If you recall, again, this goes back to, we wanna make sure that they're creating lots that they can have proper site distance. So it's, it is an exercise, totally understand what Jason is saying, but we wanna make sure that we're creating lots that have proper site distance. Item two, the applicant has indicated the sewer discharge permit has been submitted. We recommend the applicant obtain all project permits, indicate the permit approval numbers and notes on sheet one, and provide copies of all permits for the planning department's files. Design review item number three, applicant has provided draft proposed easements. Has not provided, I'm sorry, for, to the town for a review. Item four, recommending that they address the following on the lot consolidation and subdivision plan and topographic plans. There's some missing monumentation, we're requesting that they clarify the configuration shown in the subdivision plan that does not match the configuration for the lot shown in the topographic plan. Item C, we're recommending that the applicant dash the lot lines to be removed or adjusted on the topographic plan consistent with the subdivision plans. We're recommending that they provide additional soil type labels on the plans for those types that extend onto other sheets, especially on sheets seven through ten. And lastly, to verify the DRC comments are, been addressed with the Planning Department, Conservation Commission, Fire Department, and Sewer Division. That's all we have for subdivision.
Okay, thank you, John. Anything to add, Kelly?
I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
You're all set. Okay, just like previously, staff has had input, we'll go through the board, and then we'll do the public for input, so. Bruce, I'll go with you first, give Ann a rest.
Did I hear my name?
Yes, yeah.
Do I start on the other side? I have no.
Ann's really pushing.
You're really, you're completely throwing me off. I have no questions as it relates to this.
Okay, Roger.
It looks good. I have no question.
Okay, Jason.
Seems pretty straightforward.
I have no questions at this time.
Jake.
Am I right for right now, Mr. Chair?
No questions.
Jeff.
No questions.
Tony.
No questions.
Okay.
No questions.
Questions, okay. Are there any butters, or anyone from the public have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this subdivision plan? Yes, sir, cover the microphone, please, and I'll need your name and address.
My name is Don Turner. I live at sixteen Crestview Circle, and I wanna know what provisions are made, gonna be made for the Beaver Dam and the Beaver Pond on the property, and there's also a bobcat living in there. And I think that becomes a state matter, unless I'm mistaken.
Well, we'll, we'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
Jason?
And also.
Oh, yes.
The end of Perkins Road and the Vista Ridge Drive, that property is very, very wet too there. So you might wanna really look at the drainage plans real good.
Yes, I think we're, we're gonna take a careful look at, look at this, so. So, Jason, you're aware of that?
Yeah, so the Beaver Dam, I'm assuming what he's referring to is the Beaver Dam. There's actually, it's a Class AA dam that was approved back when the Vista Ridge Apartments were built. There's an outlet structure in there, doing some research with the Dam Bureau. It has never been inspected or maintained since the time that project was built. And what we did is we introduced that as part of the, you know, maintenance and, and keeping that outlet structure clear of the beaver activity. That's gonna be part of the operation, stormwater operation and maintenance plan, is part of the site plans. So the future association managing that property will need to take care of that and make sure that that's up kept, you know, when they do other drainage inspections of ponds and catch basins.
So what, what exists there for beaver activity will remain there?
Oh, the outlet structure, the dam walls need to be cleared of vegetation, maintained, and that outlet structure needs to be opened up and maintained. So if the beavers have blocked the structure, that will be demolished around that structure in order to keep that outlet structure in operational condition. So I, I don't know the full extent of where the beavers have plugged up, but that outlet structure will be opened up.
Okay, you work with Fish and Game with this?
No, it's actually, it's under a maintenance program with the Dam Bureau. But this is, it's classified as a minimal hazard, and it doesn't even require reporting or inspections to the state.
Okay, now, the bobcat, bobcats are very rare.
Yeah. We, we did work with, we pulled our report for Natural Heritage Bureau. No, no hits came up, and we've gone through the process with, I'll talk about it in the site plan, with Wetlands Bureau, and they did not have us do any communication with Fish and Game.
So you've communicated with the state about this?
Yeah, with the Wetlands Bureau, and, and we did not have to do additional communication with Fish and Game.
Yeah. Now, I think there's some protection on the, on bobcats. I could be mistaken, but they, they are very, very rare, so I would check that out.
There is no hunting season for bobcat, so if it's in there, it's in there.
Yeah.
And I personally, I've seen it, 'cause I go down to that be, that's a very large pond that the beavers got going there. And are you gonna move the beavers? You could tear a Beaver Dam down, and they'll just build it right back again.
They'll be back, you know, it's a.
Now, I don't know if they're gonna be relocated or.
That, that whole pond is actually, this was done back prior to, well, I don't wanna say prior to, in the early days of the wetland permitting and so forth. That whole ponded area is actually the detention pond for the Vista Apartments up at the top of the hill. So they brought all the stormwater down through closed drainage through the roadways, and it outlets through the Vista East Project and runs down a stone swale. And, and they actually built the dam and flooded the wetlands for stormwater detention and treatment. So that's, that was the approval back in the day whenever, I can't remember the date that plan was approved.
Yeah, that goes back a ways.
That was a little while ago. Wouldn't get, wouldn't get away with that today.
You can see the dam from Rockingham Road, the Beaver Dam, and it's quite a sufficient-sized Beaver Dam, and there's a big pond in there now. Like I said, if you just tear that down, the beavers gonna build it up again.
They're, they're very persistent.
Yes.
Cause you found that out, found the dam.
On the north end of town with the Beaver Dam near that pump station at Triangle Mobile. Isn't there a big issue there? What do we do to mitigate that? Is that a Beaver Dam?
So those are dams that, that are associated with it, the, the stream that comes from, basically, that water that discharges from Vista Ridge crosses Rockingham Road, crosses Sims Drive, Enterprise, continues Clark Road, then it meanders back and forth underneath the rail trail, the old railroad. So again, at times, the Beaver Dam, the beaver do plug that up.
Yeah.
So.
You guys go out and clean it up.
We do not, 'cause again, it's not our property, but a property owner has the rights to go out there and get rid of the, the beaver and.
With state approval. If I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
I'm not against this project.
No, I understand.
I don't wanna see the beavers killed, it's my main thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the.
So it would become part of their maintenance program for their stormwater management. Am I understanding that, that would be a maintenance requirement of?
Correct.
And I was on the property last February, just taking pictures of the Beaver Pond, and the bobcat come right up, it scared the hell out of me. Come right up behind me, and I turn around, and, I mean, he took off, but he's in there.
Yeah, I, I haven't seen one since I was a kid, that's many, many, many years ago.
That was a long time ago.
I was shocked to see it in there, to tell you the truth. Cause I could tell something was looking at me, and I turned around, and there he was.
Yeah, it's strange, 'cause you feel all of a sudden that presence there, that someone, something here besides me.
Exactly, well, thank you for your time.
But, but, yes, we'll, 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 we'll find out anyway, I think, as, as planned. The other thing, they, they have a little, like Beaver, they call them Beaver deceivers, they're like a little pipe.
Yeah.
And so the dam doesn't really accumulate, the water still drains out, and it confuses the hell out of the beavers, so eventually they take up camp some other place. But that, that's the only method I've heard of, and I know when we had the, way, way back, the Auburn Road landfill, which was a super fun site, there were four landfills that were part of it, and there were Beaver Dams there that flooded it. And since the town was a party to it, the town was responsible for, had, had, one of the Beaver experts at the state deal with the Beaver Dams, 'cause they had to drain that water. DEs considers, you know, even though water's accumulated, let's say, the last, you know, ten years, before that, there was no water there, but they still look at it as a wetland, so it had to be treated as a wetland. It was a lot, it was rather complicated. But it, it can be dealt with, but I think we need to take a close, closer look at it and do it correctly.
Any other comments from the public?
Yeah, yes, yes, sir.
Dave, well, only two, Crestview Circle. In the previous meeting, they, somebody had mentioned about one of the driveways that were gonna be opposite Crestview Circle. It's a, it's a bus stop, and also it was gonna be right on, right on the curve, and there's a lot of kids there and bus stops, and it would be blind for traffic coming up Crest, Vista.
Maybe next.
Yeah, yeah, wait, wait, yeah, wait, wait, wait for you to hear, this gentleman's talking now, so.
Just real quick, this is, would this be a comment on the.
Site plan, not the subdivision? Yes.
Could I ask you to ask again in like twenty minutes?
Yeah, we're just looking at the subdivision right, right, right now.
So you're a couple steps ahead of us, that's all.
Yeah, we're, we're very methodical in our application of the, of the law here, so we don't wanna make any mistakes. This is just on the subdivision only, but, I mean, it's good to know about wildlife, and it's usually people that are local right there that know a lot about it, so that's what we pay attention to. Anyone else on, on the subdivision? If not, I'll bring the subdivision back for the board for discussion, and is there anything further? Otherwise, we'll, we've done the waivers.
We have one, one waiver, right?
Okay, that's, that's right, there's an additional one here.
John, what impact would it have if we granted that waiver, as opposed to if we did not grant that waiver?
I would not.
What potential?
You're creating a lot that, that again, you're not sure if the site distance can be achieved. That's the issue. Jason, again, and the lot that you're, that you're requesting the waiver to is, 'cause you're gonna have your driveways for the east parcel, the west parcel, and the waiver request that you're asking for is the lot on Perkins?
For the subdivision, it's for all the driveways, for all four lots.
But you're, but you're gonna create it, you're gonna show us the, the driveways.
For the site plan, we're showing for east and west.
Yeah.
And so we have that, and then I'm assuming the other consultant will have his driveway for the commercial three-acre lot.
So the issue is.
Are you asking about the lot that would be on Perkins where the pump station is? Is that what you're asking?
Correct, so again, Jake, hold on a minute, Jake. So again, Jason, you're creating four lots.
Yep.
You got the west lot, you got the east lot, then you got the medical office building, and if that doesn't fly, we may be creating a lot without proper site distance. Then the fourth lot is the, the lot off of Perkins.
Correct.
So all you would have to do is create site distance for two additional lots.
Yeah, so if we.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I, the waiver would have, we'd have to continue here.
Do you follow, Jake?
I think so.
How's the board feel about the, that waiver?
What is the specific waiver again?
So it's to not, it's not, not allowed, it's for site distance for all four lots, so I. So it's to not, it's not, not allowed, it's for site distance for all four lots, so I...
And the waivers, and right now, we have it for two and not for two?
Is that what I'm understanding? Is we have it for Vista East and West, we don't have it for the corner of Rockingham Road and Vista Ridge, and we don't have it for the corner of Perkins Road and Vista Ridge?
Correct.
Understanding that correctly?
Yep.
Yeah, so I, I think, I don't, I wouldn't want to, I don't want the applicant to get boxed into a corner either. All of a sudden, they have, they have a lot that can't meet, can't meet site distance, then they're gonna come back for a waiver for that, if, if it's even possible.
Yeah.
I think that backs the applicant against the law as well.
I think we need to make sure they have the site distance.
Yes, because I think it's...
I mean, you, you, I, I think, in simple terms, you could be saying, you're creating a lot that may have no access.
That has no access.
That has no access.
Yeah.
Maybe. We don't, we don't know.
Yeah, I, I think it's gonna require some, some further, further study, or maybe working with staff.
But do we have to, do we have to do it for all four?
No.
Just two.
So can we just...
Just two.
Just the two.
Just the two. I mean, is it possible to make it a, a condition of approval, and that's a possibility also?
Yeah, so we, so we can...
So if you don't grant the waiver, you're basically, it is a condition of approval.
Yeah, yeah, so we can just make a motion not to grant the waiver.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to deny the waiver from LSR Exhibit D2.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Jake to deny the, the waiver, and second by Lynn. Any further discussion by the board?
So, by not approving the waiver...
It would then just become a condition of approval that they have to get, correct me if I'm wrong, it would just become a condition now that they do have to get site distance for those two lots?
Which essentially could result in the same situation where they have lots that they can't meet.
No, they'll have to show that they can meet the site distance.
Yeah.
And if they can't.
And if they can't, then they'll have to come back.
Yeah.
Because they wouldn't be able to fulfill a condition of approval.
Right. You have a motion, I get a second?
So, all those in favor of Jake's motion signify by saying...
Can I just get one point of clarification, because the wa-, I just want clarification, because it's a denial, full denial of the waiver. I don't need to do the site distance for the subdivision for the two large residential lots? Only the three-acre lot and the Perkins lot?
Yes.
That would be correct.
Yes, yeah.
Because their site plan's gonna show the one and the other two.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, and chair votes affirmative, that waiver is denied. It will become a condition of the subdivision plan. Let's see, we need to go to the plan itself.
I believe we get a, a minute or so.
Yes, yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to conditionally approve the subdivision and lot consolidation plan for seventy-one Perkins Road, map fifteen, lot fifty-one, zoned mixed-use commercial, and one seventy-one Rockingham Road, map fifteen, lot fifty-nine, zoned MUC, and one seventy-nine Rockingham Road, map fifteen, lot sixty, zoned MUC, one seventy-five Rockingham Road, map fifteen, lot sixty-two, zoned MUC, and one ninety-one Rockingham Road, map fifteen, lot sixty-four, zoned MUC. Gene Gagnon, owner and applicant, in accordance with plans prepared by Keach Nordstrom Associates Incorporated, dated August twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, last revised May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, with the precedent conditions to be fulfilled within two years and prior to plan signature, and general and subsequent conditions of approval to be fulfilled as noted in the staff recommendation memorandum dated December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion for conditional approval by Jake, second by Lynn. Any further discussion by the board? Sign now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, chair votes affirmative, and the subdivision plan is conditionally approved, and the vote eight zero zero. Johnny Ferrani has stepped down. And then next we have, and we're gonna go to the site plan. It's a public hearing on an application for a formal review of a site plan for a hundred and thirty townhouses and associated site improvements at seventy-one Perkins Road, tax map fifteen, lot fifty-one, zoned MUC, one seventy-one Rockingham Road, tax map fifteen, lot fifty-nine, zoned MUC, one seventy-nine Rockingham Road, tax map fifteen, lot sixty, zoned MUC, one seventy-five Rockingham Road, tax map fifteen, lot sixty-two, zoned MUC, and one ninety-one Rockingham Road, tax map fifteen, lot sixty-four, zoned MUC. Gene Gagnon is the owner and the applicant, and this has been continued from December sixth, two thousand twenty-three, and...
Mr. Chair, we have approved it for completeness, we're looking at a, I believe, a conditional use permit, correct?
Yes.
You might want to let Jason give his presentation first.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll let Jason do, do his stuff, then staff, then the board, then the public, so...
All right, so, as was mentioned, this is a, this site plan is for two of the lots, the two larger lots, one to the west of Vista Ridge Drive, and the larger lot to the east. It, the one on west will become map fifteen, lot sixty-four, the newly created lot. That is a seventeen-point-eight acre lot on the west side of Vista Ridge Drive, and it will be known as Vista West. That will include sixty-two townhomes. The newly created lot on the east side of Vista Ridge Drive will be known as map fifteen, lot fifty. That is a twenty-three-point-three acre lot, and will be known as Vista East. That will include sixty-eight townhomes. Both the lots are in the MUC. The commercial component will be addressed by that three-acre lot that we just discussed. These lots will not contain any commercial components. The other lot over on Perkins will be either commercial or residential in the future when Mr. Gagnon decides to do something there. Again, on October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, we met with the board at conceptual, and at that time, we were proposing a one hundred and forty-nine unit townhome project. We were asked to reduce the density. So we took a look at the lot layout, and that was part of the reason of, of breaking off that Perkins lot. And also, we upsized the commercial lot. Now, we're proposing a hundred and thirty units. Another big concern during the conceptual portion discussion was traffic. We had a scoping meeting with DOT on December sixth, two thousand twenty-one, and the, the state was interested in looking at four intersections. The town was also present, the town requested us to look at nine intersections in North Londonderry. Mr. Gagnon engaged Jason Plord here with me this evening from VHB to take a look at the traffic concerns, and he can discuss his findings in just a little bit. On October eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, we had a conservation commission meeting. On October twentieth, we went and we had a site walk. And then on November eighth, two thousand twenty-two, we had another conservation commission meeting where they approved with some conditions and recommendations, both the wetlands permit and the conditional use permit for disturbance within the buffer. The wetland impact was on Vista West, and it's out by the cul-de-sac. There is one thousand two hundred and sixty square feet of wetland fill to construct that cul-de-sac. Then on Vista East, where the Vista West road comes out, there, you head over into Vista East, there's two townhome units on the east side of, of the proposed road going through the project. Just behind those two projects is where the buffer impact is. We're looking for three hundred and, ah, sorry, three thousand five hundred and ninety-two square feet of buffer impact. That buffer impact will be a, a temporary basis to create a three-to-one slope, and then regrade, stabilize, and let that go back to nat- natural state. On November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, we met with the Heritage Commission. They asked for additional information on the buildings, lighting, landscaping. Lighting and landscaping was the primary concern. We went back before them on January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, and they approved with some minor comments, the landscaping, building elevations. We had discussions on some stone walls, and also the proposed signage for the entrances of the project. On January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, we did hold a neighborhood meeting. We invited the residents in the condo project. The end, up in the, I guess, the south end of Vista Ridge. So, had a, had a decent showing, there was a lot of positive feedback. The primary discussions of, of concern from, from the buddies in that, that neighborhood was traffic. They did prefer, you know, it seemed, they preferred this development over one that was previously conditionally approved by the board. Vista East was originally conditionally approved for the shop, the shops at Londonderry, I think is what it was called. And quite a, quite a large commercial development, strip mall, restaurant, bank, that was withdrawn. They never fulfilled the conditions. So when the residents saw this project, they preferred this over the other proposal. But they did have questions, as a gentleman stated. If you, you look at the screen, the, there's an access, a, a drive access, the road name. It's on the southerly most part of that, that bend in the roadway. Yeah. So, there's a bus stop in that area, and they're also concerned how we're lining up that intersection. Our secondary access point across from that, there's concern of the traffic in the bus stop and, and people walking out there. So, you know, we've, we've, we feel we've addressed that. We're providing a cross-access road. It's not an offset intersection. It's gonna provide better, you know, visibility, you know, for, for people maneuvering through that area. And we provided the intersection site distance plans, and we're gonna have to reserve some area looking over our green space with no plantings in order to maintain that, that sightline for proper sight distance. So I, I, I've noticed a, a couple faces. I think we may have some more conversation from some of the, the neighbors up there. We'll address those later. We've obtained our wetlands permit, alteration to terrain permit. The project will be served by municipal sewer. This week, we did get the local approval, and I'll be working with Mr. Carey to get the, that application to the state, the state sewer permit. We'll be working with engineering to get the DOT permit submitted. That has not been submitted yet. Town of Londonderry needs to sign and submit that, because we're looking to modify the driveway permit for Vista Ridge Drive and Rockingham Road, and that is the town road, town has ownership of that permit, so the town needs to apply for that. And we'll utilize our traffic study as part of that application. Stormwater will be managed by closed drainage system, and we have multiple ponds throughout the property. And again, we have our AOT permit, and it's also gone through the third-party peer review here at the town for the drainage treatment and, and dealing with the increased flows. The project will be served by Manchester Water Works Municipal Water System. There is a pump house up at the Perkins and Vista Ridge intersection. That pump house serves the apartments, the Vista Ridge apartments. There's water pressure problems in that area. So we had to take a look at whether or not we needed a new pump booster station, or whether or not modifications could be made. Bruce Lewis designed the original booster station and still practicing, well, semi-retired. We got him to work on it. So he went out and he took a look at the station. We're gonna be able to do modifications and upgrades to the pumps, and be able to serve both sides of our projects. So, that, that will be part of the approval. And Manchester Water Works has provided their will-serve letter, they're happy with the, the design. Liberty Utilities has gas in the area, and they will connect both sides to gas. We're gonna work out the details, they want pads in before they determine where gas lines will be placed. We have reviewed the plan with Londonderry Fire Department. We do need to add an additional note to the plans, talking about the sprinkler systems. So as part of that water study, we had adequate pressure for east. The pressure in west was not adequate to serve the buildings or the hydrants. So with the new modifications to the pump station, it will serve the entire project properly. Also, because the road going is a single access point going up into west, we designed that as a twenty-four-foot width. Fire Department wanted that to go to twenty-eight or add sprinklers to the building. So just Vista West will be sprinkled. So all those buildings will have a sprinkler system. And the note that the fire department wants is, prior to the installation of the fire hydrants, they want to approve the sprinkler designs, because they want to have the connection at the building within a hundred feet of the hydrants. And they don't want, they, they just want to make sure that that process is, is followed, so they don't have hydrants installed too far from connections. Once we get approval, buildings would be designed, and the sprinkler system designs would be done at that time. So it, it's gonna be coordination with the fire department at the time of building permits. The roads, internal roads are all gonna be private and maintained by the condo association. Dumpsters, we have three dumpster locations, and we've reviewed those locations with waste management already. There'll be one mailbox unit provided for each side of the development, one for east, one for west. And there will be no community building. It's all just individual townhome units, no community space. We do have the design for a sidewalk to connect the northerlymost access, driveway access into Vista East. There'll be a sidewalk connected from our internal sidewalk down to Rockingham Road. That will allow connectivity from our internal sidewalks down to Rockingham Road. West, there's already a sidewalk on the west side of Vista Ridge Drive. So west's internal sidewalks will connect to Vista Ridge. They'll be, also be able to get down to the intersection and crosswalks at Rockingham Road, the lighted intersection. Then the, we do have a conditional use permit, and we can address that here in a little bit. We do not have any waiver requests for this project. bit. We do not have any waiver requests for this project. So, I can take some questions, or I would like to have Jason get through his traffic presentation in hopes that we can have any conversation. So, if this continues to another meeting, we don't have to have Jason come back again. If we can move right into traffic, I would prefer that.
Traffic is going to be the big part of it. Anyway, some of this, I think, is, you know, I think within engineering can be sorted out.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, before Jason takes it away, again, just, Jason Lopez was correct. Back in two thousand twenty-one, December, we had had a scoping meeting with DOT, again, where this was such a significant development. And again, Vista Ridge is a driveway to, from a town's driveway to a state road so that we have a scoping meeting. Jason was right. They wanted four intersections looked at. We added additional five because when we add those additional five is because we know that the concerned intersections, such as Perkins and Stonehenge. Stonehenge and Route one twenty, or excuse me, Stonehenge and twenty-eight. We had even gone to Stonehenge and Mammoth Road. So, there was additional intersections that we asked that they look at. So, that's all part of the scoping process when we're looking at traffic such as that. I was present. David DeBay is here this evening as well from Stantec. Stantec is our third-party consultant. David was not involved, I don't believe, in the initial. Evan was the engineer that did, had attended that meeting. David is here to support and again, to listen to what Jason is talking about. I'm going to ask Jason to basically go through his process and again, to help educate everyone what happens when we do a traffic study and what that entails. So, Jason, the floor is yours.
Our three Jasons here tonight, right? Good evening. Jason Florida with VHB. I'm the traffic engineering consultant on this development. That's what you've heard this evening from Mr. Trotier and Jason Lopez. That's the process, right, is that it starts off with meeting with the town or the city, depending on what municipality you're in. In this case, it's with town staff. And then it grew into meeting with New Hampshire Department of Transportation officials. The whole idea is that if you're going to have a development that's going to have a driveway directly on the state highway system, like the 2V development across the street, then they would be the applicant to New Hampshire DOT for a driveway permanent application. In this case, similar to the Rhino development off of Jack's Bridge Road, where you're adding traffic to the state highway system, but you don't have a driveway directly on the state highway system, then the municipality is going to be the applicant to New Hampshire DOT. Not for any necessary improvements, but it's just really record-keeping of keeping track of the traffic volumes that are going from the local roadway system onto the state highway system. What happened was in, I want to say about ten years ago, New Hampshire DOT really started getting more involved, encouraging municipalities to come to them. What was happening was that municipalities were approving developments that would add traffic to the state highway system, and the state said, where are these cars coming from? And so, they didn't have the roadway infrastructure to support that additional traffic. So, that's really where this whole thought comes into play, that why is the town the applicant? Town's the applicant to be able to keep track of the traffic volumes going on to the state highway system. And then, at that point, it's a collaborative effort. If any improvements are required, then the town and the state can work together in developing any kind of improvements, whether it's changes to traffic control, maybe shovel on the ground, widening, anything like that. At least you have the agencies talking with each other and on the same page. And so, because the town is going to be the applicant to New Hampshire DOT, a couple of things need to happen. One, the town needs to make sure that you are in support of the project. So, we can't really go to New Hampshire DOT as far as the permitting process until the town is satisfied. If we were going to have a driveway directly on the state highway system, we could go down both paths at the same time. But in this situation, where the applicant from the town is the person that's really in charge of the local roadway system, so that's Mr. Trotier. It's usually the town engineer, the DPW director, the road agent, any of those people are typically the person from the municipality that would be the applicant to New Hampshire DOT. As Mr. Trotier had mentioned, that a scoping meeting was held in December two years ago. The whole idea was that it wasn't necessarily look at all the traffic or look at this major development. It's really, let's make sure we're all together because of the close proximity of this project to the state highway system and making sure that everybody has the chance to be able to vocally provide their input as far as what they want to see as far as the traffic study is concerned. You know, you heard this evening about that the state wanted a certain amount of intersections, the town expanded that, those number of intersections. That's one component. The other component that's discussed during the scoping session is the time periods to be evaluated. The weekday morning, commuting time period, seven to nine typically, weekday evening, four to six, Saturday midday, it could be eleven to one or eleven to two. Those time periods are identified. Another component that's discussed during those, during those scoping meetings is the adjustment factors. For land development projects in New Hampshire, we have to adjust our traffic counts to represent peak month conditions. In other states, they do the thirty highest hour or average month conditions, but for New Hampshire, we do peak month conditions. Another component that was discussed at the scoping meeting was we need to still account for the impact of the pandemic. Traffic volumes still had not rebounded back to pre-pandemic conditions. So, New Hampshire DOT guideline is that we need to find a nearby permanent count station right around the time that we're doing our traffic counts and comparing that to the same month in two thousand nineteen and finding out what that difference is for those three time periods, the weekday morning, the weekday evening, and the Saturday midday. And you come up with different factors. Are traffic volumes, we rebounded yet? No? All right, what's that adjustment that we have to apply? And so, we took the, we did traffic counts in February of two thousand twenty-two, did that comparison to be able to find out what peak month factor we needed to use. So, we took those traffic counts and increased them by nineteen percent. And then, we had to apply the pandemic adjustment factor. So, we had about a five percent additional increase for the morning, an additional two percent during the evening, an additional six percent during the Saturday midday. So, the traffic volumes that we saw out there, we had to have different layers of adjustment, increases to be applied to be able to represent peak month pre-pandemic traffic volume conditions. So, that's without any development at all. That's just to be able to establish the base. And those factors were discussed during the scoping meeting with New Hampshire DOT, town officials, and Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission officials were there as well.
So, I think it's important that Jason brings that to mind because, again, when people say, well, you did that two years ago, back during a pandemic. So, there is those adjustment factors. And we being engineers, we're conservative, so we always bump stuff up.
Yeah, you know, we'd much rather would over-design than under-design. So, it's, you know, whether it's for parking lots or if it's for roadways and intersections, we want to make sure that there's some kind of level of conservatism in there. Being conservative in the traffic engineering world is not, let's hold back. No, we've got to build up those numbers to make it almost like a worst-case scenario. So, those were the factors that came into play that were discussed during the scoping meeting. Other factors that came into play were what do we use for a historical growth rate? So, in New Hampshire, New Hampshire DOT does not accept an annual growth rate of anything less than one percent. Even if traffic volumes before the pandemic were increasing by a quarter of a percent, half a percent, or even if they were decreasing, this is again, before the pandemic, we still need to use that one percent compounded annual growth rate. So, that's what was agreed to during the scoping meeting by DOT officials. The other component in the future traffic volume projections is the site traffic associated with other developments in the area. So, there were three developments that were identified, and those were taken into consideration. Now, at that time, the 2V development was the bank and not the diesel fueling positions. So, that traffic study had been prepared and submitted and reviewed and approved. Subsequent to the DOT scoping meeting and during the preparation of the traffic study and going through review comments with Stantec, we updated the traffic study and the analyses to be able to include the diesel pumps instead of the bank. So, that was all taken into consideration. So, now, where are?
So, there was three?
Yeah, okay.
So, the other two, so you had 2V, what were the other two?
Old bridal apartments. So, there was seventy percent of the two hundred forty apartment units had been constructed, so we had to include the other thirty percent. And then, the other one was the, at Five Enterprise Drive. That was for the Northeast Gold and Turf Supply Warehouse. So, those were the three developments that were identified back then. Now, other developments that you have seen and me present here for other projects, we had to take Vista Ridge, this development into consideration as a background. So, even though, like, for example, the Rhino Warehouse on Jack's Bridge Road came in and got the approvals already, and here we are tonight, that project took this project into consideration in the future traffic volume projections. So, just to make sure that everybody's working hand in hand, you know, we've worked with Kelly and John and Stantec to make sure that we're including everything, and we're not missing out on anything.
Where does your, there's a project abutting you, where does that fall in, the potential medical facility?
So, that one there, and so, what we had done was, we did our traffic study in two phases. The first phase took into consideration the residential units that Jason has already talked about. So, those were the hundred thirty residential units. What was also discussed was potential development on those other two lots. So, the commercial lot up at the southeast corner of the signalized intersection of Vista Ridge and Rockingham Road, and then down at Vista Ridge and Perkins. So, those two components were contemplated, I don't want to say proposed because they were not proposed. They were contemplated for retail space and a restaurant on, at the other signal, and then office space down at Vista Ridge and Perkins. Neither of those two are proposed for development by this project. Those were just for planning purposes, as what was discussed during the scoping meeting, put in something almost like a, you know, for planning purposes, what could happen out there. And so, but we are not seeking approvals for any development on either of those two lots. It's just the two residential components. So, that's, that was a big part, and I'm glad you brought that up because I was going to discuss the difference between the two phases of our site development.
So, you have proposed, obviously, there's a proposed building that's coming after you tonight. You have that proposed as in, what'd you say, a retail establishment and something else?
Yeah, so, we had, in our traffic study, we had put in, for planning purposes, sixteen thousand five hundred square foot retail strip center and a thirty-two thousand eight, thirty-two, three thousand two hundred eighty square foot fast food restaurant with a drive-through window. So, that's what we had used in our future traffic projections for the Phase Two.
Okay. Do we know what the impact or the difference of the impact would be at being a medical facility as opposed to what they have proposed? Is there a difference there? Do we not know the difference?
So, Jason, again, yeah, so there is a difference between drive-by people that are, that are just like a restaurant.
Yeah, like pass-by trips. So, those are the cars that are on the road, right? Yeah, so, you know, right in, right out, left in, left out versus a destination trip, like an office space.
Yeah.
Like, for example, the...
So, would you consider a medical facility a destination trip?
Yes.
As opposed to, what'd you just say, right in, right out?
Yeah, pass-by trip.
So, there is a difference there that would be graded differently.
There's a difference in vehicle characteristics, right? You know, the amount of cars that are coming to and from the site. So, an office development is going to have, whether it's medical office or general office, it's all new trips that are coming to that development because it's a destination trip. For restaurants, for retail space...
The cars were going by anyway.
You got it.
I see what you're saying. Okay.
So, as far as the total trips...
It's a different type of traffic then.
Right. I mean, a total trip comparison, I honestly don't know, but I would say that an office development would typically generate more new trips to an area than retail space.
How about the bank?
So, a bank, great question. So, a bank, it would be considered retail. So, that would be, like, for example, if I'm driving home from work one night and the bank is open, then I'm going to drive by there on my way home and be able to do a right in, right out, or left in, left out. The same thing in the morning, if they're open in the morning. A bank will have both new and pass-by trips. Retail space, and I want to clarify, retail space has both, new and pass-by. It's just not all pass-by.
I understand that.
Okay, so you have a drive-through and a in-building service for the bank?
Correct. So, I believe that the bank that's proposed, so that's not part of our traffic study. That's not what we're presenting this evening.
But I'd like, I'd like to have that discussion now, even though we're not talking about the medical office building because...
Well, I guess, that's what I'm trying to get at, is we know there's a potential user there, but we don't have a study with that potential user.
And I'll cut to the chase, we don't know it.
Yeah.
Plain and simple.
But we've got to include it.
Yeah, I want to put it right on the table now because we're going to have this discussion in fifteen minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, he said ten minutes, about a half hour.
Before I started talking. There's a lot of detail to traffic, there's a lot of data, and it's a very critical process.
I guess what I'm getting at is, I feel like there is a portion of data for this that we might be missing because it's been, we know there's a potential user who's coming next, and the traffic analysis does not include that type of user in it, correct?
And unfortunately, again, the next hearing that we're going to have, they didn't use the same traffic engineer. So, there is some, there's a gap.
So, how do we close that gap?
Yes.
Well, again, just one, so, at the initial, you know, discussions with DOT at that scoping meeting needed to come up, and I just came up with some ideas. There was some ideas for planning, and it was just to meet the needs of what we were discussing at the scoping meeting. So, you know, as I already stated, Gene does not have interest in developing the commercial land. So, it was a wild guess and guessed wrong. But, for our application, you know, what we would like to focus on is the residential, and there is a component in there for commercial. We planned for some, but the other, you know, the other application is going to have to address that change. Just like when we were dealing with the gas station across the street, there was a modification to that application midstream of our design review process. We needed to update our traffic study to accommodate that change in the site plan. So, again, here we go, there's going to be another site plan. I would expect that that site plan would also have to take into account the change. So, that should be addressed independently of this application. Needs to be discussed, agreed completely. But, again, that's not, that was not part of our approval.
You did 2V?
No.
No, no.
No.
Neither one of us did.
Okay. I was going to say, because you said they had to update their, with the change, they had to update their thing.
Well, we had to update our traffic study to be able to include their project change.
Yes. I guess that's what I'm getting at, is you would have to update it to include their project.
Well, I would say it would be the other way around, that they would have to include us.
Yes.
Because we're in first as far as the residential component.
The bottom line is, again, we want one concise report.
Right.
Because, again, as Jason says, the town's going to go to the DOT to update our permit. So, again, we need one concise report. We can put, Jason, we can put...
So, who's, this is, I feel like a little before the horse. Who's the, who's the traffic engineer for the next plan? What's your name?
My name is Sam Poisey with Meridian Land Services for the record. I'm not the same level of traffic engineer as VHB. My traffic analysis for that site was simply comparing their assumed trips versus the IT manuals-generated trips, which gave a reduction from the assumed...
Can I just have you come up to the microphone real quick?
Yes, that's the, that's so, people listening can hear also, Ed, the... that's so uh, people listening uh, can hear also and the individual who does the minutes for this meeting can hear also.
So I, I'll just say again for the record, I see you Jason, um, Sam Foizy with Meridian Land Services representing the next application. Um, while I'm not, we are not a traffic engineering firm. Um, I have reviewed Jason's um, traffic um, report which did have, which did use fast food and retail as the associated use with it. When comparing the medical and the bank use, the trip threshold or the generated trips um, goes down about sixty-nine percent compared to um, the assumed trips for that site. And then the staff report does indicate that the peak hour trips um, has a reduction and that should have been more of the analysis than the overall reduction in the average daily trips. Um, Jason's testimony here today of new trips versus pass-by trips, um, I can't um, a- argue against it given his qualifications, um, I would say trump mine on this issue.
So they need to be addressed and again, in, in all due respect to Sam, is the ITE numbers that he used were incorrect?
So I guess what I'm getting at is can you guys all work together on coming up with a final traffic plan here? Is that fair? Think we've requested this over on Gilcrest where those two developments are coming in?
Might.
Kind of say the same thing if you guys need to work together?
My, my recommendation and I have to look out for my client, Mr. Gagnon. Um, we've completed the traffic analysis for the project that we're presenting before you this evening. And um, you know, I don't like to create extra work for other consultants, but I, I would, I, I would not, I don't want to see our project hung up over coordination. If they want to hire Jason to modify the traffic report, they, they can certainly do that. But um, I, we can go forward with DOT with our project and that DOT permit can be very strict for the residential developments only based on the traffic uh, report presented for, you know, the residential component. Modifications beyond that uh, is another applicant, another party, another interest. It's not, you know, Mr. Gagnon is the landowner, but to volunteer his finances in modifying a traffic report for another applicant. Um, I'm gonna speak against that for his protection.
I, I would, I would agree with Mr. Lopez on that. Um, I, I would feel that the burden would fall on us being the second application in um, to update um, VHB's traffic report and Jason, Jason's traffic report. Um, and likely Jason would be the, it would make sense to use Jason um, to update that report.
Because again, what'll end up happening if, if as Jason Lopez indicates, if we want, if that's how they want to proceed, then Jason Plord uh, completes the, the, uh, his report, his study.
Uh, there were some uh, questions about the queue lengths and stuff like that, Jason, still. So again, we, he would complete his report, we'd submit it to DOT, it'll take him six months to review it. Then we take Mr., take Meridian's report, submit it. So it's, that's how they want to do it. It's fine with me. It just doesn't make any sense, but.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if you could coordinate between them, but it looks like uh, there seems to be a little problem.
Art, to be honest with you, I don't think it's part, I don't think it's the town's responsibility to play the middle guy.
There's, there's nothing in our regs that would-
I think I'm pretty clear on what-
Would support us other than, yeah, yeah, other than begging them to do it this way.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Would this even be a discussion point if we had approved this first project on our last meeting? And then we were presented with the next project this meeting? It seems like we're trying to put two applications together when in reality, they're separated.
They're, they're, they're-
The second applicant's traffic study would take into account the approved applicant's already conditionally approved project.
Yeah.
So outside of that, I don't see why it's either the towns nor the planning boards purview to say coordinate. We just look at the project that's in front of us. This project has this traffic study that we can either agree with or deny or, or disagree with, but we're trying to combine two projects together and I think while in reality, it sounds really good. But logistically, if these were two projects presented on different nights, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Right. I, I think the endpoint's the same thing, you know, we, we, we both get there, so.
We're gonna study traffic.
I, I think we, we, we've heard how, how it's gonna proceed anyway, so. So we'll continue.
All right, so um, I think that we'll talk about is, you know, the development program and um, all the different components and factors that come into play as far as creating a traffic study and developing those traffic volumes. Um, the final component is, as far as creating traffic volumes is estimating site trips. And that's kind of where we, we were before we started talking about the um, the parcel, the commercial parcel near the signal. Um, and so that methodology is also discussed and presented at the scoping meeting um, with Regional Planning Commission, DOT and, and town officials. And so we as traffic engineers are held to a certain standard and methodology to use. And that's based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE, uh, Trip Generation Manual. And for uh, the proposed residential development, uh, we use the multifamily housing, uh, low-rise category. So that means that it's a residential building with two to three stories of residential uses. So uh, for clarification, it's not proposed for this development, but if you ever have a building with underground parking, the underground parking does not count as far as that category. Because it's only the number of residential floors you have. So there's the category of uh, low-rise, so that's two to three stories of residential uses. Then you have the mid-rise, which is four to ten stories. And then you have high-rise, which are greater than ten stories of residential uses. So we use that methodology that was discussed during the scoping meeting um, and provided that within the traffic study. We also estimated for that phase two development of the potential development of the commercial space and, and the potential office component um, over on Vista Ridge and Park, and Perkins. Um, interestingly enough though, that part of the traffic study, if we're just doing it for New Hampshire DOT, it would be one thing, but we're also satisfying the town's requirements for the preparation of traffic studies. The town's requirements get more detailed as far as descriptions and evaluations for uh, different study area intersections. Where I'm going with that is as part of the town's regulations is that we needed to provide site distance measurements at every one of our study area intersections. So there were a total of thirteen intersections that were identified. In addition, we had to look at the site driveways. So in our traffic study, we did provide site distance measurements at a potential location along Vista Ridge Drive for that commercial development. Has it changed uh, with, with the new application that's coming in after us? I have no idea. I haven't seen it. But it was just really more of a, if a driveway could be here, we did provide site distance measurements there. We also did that for the office uh, lot that we were considering over at Vista Ridge and Perkins. So in our traffic study, not only did we provide that in a table format, but we also provided that within the appendix of our traffic study. We took aerial images and we drew on there where the available sight lines are and what the required sight measurements need to be. As far as if it's on a state roadway, we need to hit and meet all of the New Hampshire DOT requirements. If it's on a local roadway, we need to make sure that we're hitting and meeting all of the local requirements. Um, and we also provided it based on the national standard, which was developed by the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, abbreviated as ASHTO. So um, all of that information is within the traffic study. Um, the information within the traffic study was then peer reviewed by uh, the town's peer review consultant, StanTech. Um, they provided comments, we provided uh, some responses and, and we went back and forth. So um, I think that we're in a pretty good position at this point. Um, I think that there was one remaining comment, I think, John, that you had mentioned about the queue lengths. So another change that happened during the preparation of the traffic study was that the signalized intersection of Vista Ridge, Sims Drive and Rockingham Road had within the traffic signal cabinet and in the controller, so it's really a computer that's in the cabinet out there. They have the coordinated traffic signal parameters built into that cabinet to be able to be coordinated with the ramps and then down at Liberty Drive and the, the liquor and wine store driveway. All of those intersections are supposed to be coordinated except the one intersection, the signalized intersection right there at our front dr- front door, uh, Vista Ridge and Rockingham Road was not activated for coordination. The state took that out of coordination because they figured that that was operating better as an isolated intersection and not tied in with the other intersections. During the review process that we're going through with the town, we got a call from um, from New Hampshire DOT Bureau of Traffic and they said, guess what? We activated that coordination, so we had to redo all of our analyses at that intersection. So that part of, it's not in the regular traffic study, it's in some responses that, that we put together. Uh, so we updated those traffic signal um, operations at the signalized intersection. Now, the way that New Hampshire DOT sets up the traffic signal timings is that they go out there, they look at the operations and the demands of the entering cars in each of the different lanes. They look at the phasing and then they make adjustments within the signal timings. So what I'm talking about the signal times, the amount of green time, right? The amount of yellow time, the amount of all red time, that stays the same. It's really adjusting the amount of green time that's provided to the different phases. So they have plans set, but they always go out there and they do their yearly or a three-year maintenance program where they visit all of their traffic signals and make adjustments as needed. Unless the municipality calls up and says, we got a problem at this intersection, this phase isn't long enough or this one's too long. So then they'll just go out there and make some tweaks inside the signal cabinet to make those adjustments. What we did was uh, we took our future traffic volume conditions. So again, this is taking our traffic counts, going to peak month conditions, applying the pandemic adjustments, applying the one percent compounded annual growth rate, adding in these background developments, adding in our site trips. And lo and behold, the traffic signal timings that are set out there aren't gonna be able to accommodate what's needed for that demand in the future. Those over conservative traffic volumes. So we made some adjustments and we had to steal two seconds from this phase and add it to that phase. And that's gonna be part of the regular New Hampshire DOT traffic signal maintenance program. If these traffic volumes are ever realized in the future, again, those layers of conservatism that we added in there, are they gonna be needed or not? We don't know. But when this project goes through with New Hampshire DOT for their review, because they're gonna have to review this traffic study, they're gonna have to review the analyses, they're gonna have to review the timings that we have in here. If they want us to prepare some traffic signal plans that show the adjustment of the two seconds here, the two seconds there, we have no problem doing that. We'll put together those plans. But I think that it's very preliminary right now to be able to say, we need to put those plans together. If DOT says, yeah, we'd do that in the future ourselves. We don't need the plans to tell us that. So would like to be able to go through the town permitting process, work with John so that he's the applicant to New Hampshire DOT. We'll provide him with all the documentation that he needs as part of that New Hampshire DOT driveway permit application. And if DOT comes back and says, we need those plans, we'll put those together. That could be a condition of approval. We have no problem with that at all. But I think that right now, because of all those extra layers of buffer that we have in creating these traffic volumes, we don't know. We don't know. But we're okay with committing to putting together those plans if DOT wants us to.
And again, Jason, I, I misspoke again, yeah, so we're asking again to, to update the traffic signal timing inputs into the central analysis.
Right, and that's exactly what I'm, I'm saying, right, right. Yep, which, which then could relate to the queuing out there, right? If, if, like, like I said, that the existing timing parameters that New Hampshire DOT has in the cabinet with that signal being part of the coordinated system, it would not be able to accommodate the peak month, the pre-pandemic adjustments, the historical growth rate and the background developments. Forget about us adding our site trips into it. But even under our future conditions, without our development, we call that no build. Under the future no build conditions, the current traffic parameters, so the green time, would not be able to accommodate the, the volume, so it would have to be steal two seconds here and add two seconds there. So that's really what it all comes down to. And then that can reduce queuing in different lanes. So to make sure that it's not gonna back up and like, for example, up on Sims Drive, you have the park and ride lot up to the north, that driveway. You don't want that driveway to be blocked. Um, the state certainly doesn't want it to be blocked. And you know, I mean, same with um, you know, the, the potential driveway for the commercial lot um, on the southeast corner of the signalized intersection. It's, it's really making sure that if you need that commitment, we will commit to doing that if DOT wants us to. If they, if they make that uh, and you know, if you want to make that an order of conditions, we certainly can do that.
Because again, what'll end up happening is that queue length will, will shut off the, 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 the medical office building. That the traffic will be backed up so far that people can't get out of the driveway.
Right.
So.
Right, you don't want to have those do not block intersections, you remark these aside anywhere, John.
David, you've heard what Jason has presented. It's pretty much, you know, you're in agreement with, with uh, with his presentation? The methodology and whatnot?
Where do you come to the microphone, uh, David, please?
David DeBey with StanTech and you've seen others from StanTech including Evan Drew, who's been doing a bit more of the work here recently. Uh, and, and in fact, uh, I've been talking with Evan about the project and uh, uh, there's a comment letter that we have dated today that relates to the last uh, bit of work that uh, VHB has done uh, relative to those timings and all of the factors that uh, Jason Plord has been talking about. Uh, I agree with that full list. That's the, indeed, the list that we need to use every time that we're doing a traffic study. Uh, and this one includes a couple of other developments around, which makes it a little bit more complicated. But uh, I do agree in principle and we do have a letter that is our last word on the, on the, on the matter.
Good. Thank you, David.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Jason Plord or David? Hopefully Professor Plord was able to enlighten all.
I was just gonna ask, how did you deliver that without a teleprompter?
I've been doing it for a long time.
So I, I, I do have one question. So do we, do we have an outcome of your work?
Yes.
And uh,
So, okay, so, so here, here's the thing, is that in the traffic engineering world, I, I referenced ITE, Institute of Transportation Engineers. Um, they have a, a guideline or a rule of thumb and it's the same that New Hampshire DOT has. And that is if you're going to generate or increase traffic by one hundred vehicles per hour or more through an intersection, you may have an impact. And that impact could be uh, lengthening the amount of delay that a vehicle has to wait, uh, lengthening the queues. Uh, and, and you may have to do some improvements out there. As part of the residential component that we're proposing this evening, uh, we are less, we are generating less than a hundred vehicles per hour total combined for both the east and west lots. So we're not gonna be sending a hundred vehicles per hour through any intersection.
What is that number?
Uh, so in the morning, we have a total of sixty-three trips. So that's eight, uh, that's fifteen in, forty-eight out.
Through east and west?
That combined. Yep, the, all these numbers I'm gonna give you are combined.
And that's through the signal?
Uh, no, 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 so.
It's total out of the development?
Total.
Whatever direction?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So even if all of these vehicles went through the signal, we're still not hitting a hundred vehicles per hour. Uh, during the weekday evening, we have a total of seventy-eight vehicles per hour, so that's forty-nine in, twenty-nine out. For the Saturday midday, a total of fifty-three trips. So that's twenty-seven in, twenty-six out. So we're not talking about an extreme amount of traffic. However, based on the town's requirements for the traffic study that we had to prepare, we had to do an evaluation, like I said, we had to do like the site distance measurements. We also did a safety evaluation of each intersection. And, and what we did was we took a look at not just the site distances, but the signs that are out there and any kind of safety concerns that jumped out at us. We did identify different locations where there are signs out there at some of these study area intersections that are not in conformance with the manual on uniform traffic control device. at some of these study area intersections that are not in conformance with the manual on uniform traffic control devices. That's a federal highway guideline that municipalities and states use. And that's for pavement markings and for signage. So we identified within the traffic study different signs that we will work with the town in updating to make sure that they are in conformance with state, town, and national guidelines and requirements. Those are very important. Some of them are even increasing the size of signs for intersection ahead signs, things like that. One of the items that was brought up was, was with respect to the driveway across from Crestview that we're proposing. As you can see on the plan, we're on the inside of a curve, and that's usually a tough thing to be able to meet your site distances. If you're on the outside of the curve, like Crestview is now, that's great because you have plenty of sight lines to be able to see. Out there at the driveway today, we need to do some trimming out there and clearing of vegetation in order to be able to see. Definitely need to do that. That's reflective within our traffic study on our, on our aerial images that we put together and also on Jason's plans. That we have identified different areas that we need to make sure that are clear of any kind of signage and vegetation so that people that are exiting out of the driveway can see. Not necessarily, I'm not as concerned about a vehicle that wants to turn right out of that driveway and then head up to Rockingham Road. It's more people turning left, because you have to see in both directions when you're turning left. And especially looking to the right, because that's where the bend really is. And so, but we have identified areas at that intersection that should be cleared, that will be cleared, that would propose to be cleared by us, by this development team. Not by me, I'm not going to go out there with a, you know, with a weed whacker or anything like that, but.
You don't look like that type of guy.
No, I'm not.
Who else can do that?
I mow my lawn, that's about it.
No, you don't.
I gotta push her too, I don't have a seat down. I got a guy to plow my driveway.
One more gives you time to think, you know? So, so John or Jason, do we have a report by intersection of what you found?
Uh, yeah, so.
Maybe we go down to, I'm thinking Stonehenge and Perkins, right? And Perkins and Bartley Hill.
Correct, yeah, some of the signage on.
Because Perkins and Bartley Hill, Bartley Hill, you had to drive right out into the intersection to be able to see up Perkins.
Yeah, so the two intersections that we saw that really needed improvements to the signs and were changing out the signs were Perkins and Bartley Hill Road and Stonehenge and Perkins Road.
Yep.
So those are the two intersections that we identified.
Absolutely, okay, okay. So there is some, there are some plans that we'll be seeing to update or make some changes down there.
More to come.
Yep.
Yeah, and we'd really like to work with town staff to be able to make sure we're giving them what they want. You know, instead of me saying, hey, this is the sign that you should have. Thanks, we want this instead, okay. You know, because there definitely is some preference, you know, for consistency throughout the community, you know, I mean like.
And we follow, I mean, ATCD.
Yeah, but even for like the colors of signs, right? They went from yellow to fluorescent. It's whatever, you know, John wants, we're going to give him. That's really what it comes down to.
Good, thanks.
I would like to add one thing if I could. So there's no shovel in the ground, no shovel in the ground improvements needed. It's all tree clearing and signage and paint, you know, striping.
Let's just say improvements, whatever they may be, right?
Yeah. So.
At this time.
At this time.
At this time. Again, we still need to get, go through the DOT permitting and.
Yeah, because if they have any other improvements, then we have to do them. You know, I mean, you know, this is again, just at the local roadway intersections.
That's how it works.
Yeah. And, you know, where the town is the applicant, then, you know, I think that that definitely should be a condition of approval is making sure that we go through the DOT permitting process. And if they have any comments and, you know, anything that we need to address, we need to address them. It shouldn't be on you guys, it should be on us.
How long does the DOT approval process take?
Six months to two years.
So I'm currently working on some projects and it's a year and a half to two years. And it really all depends if a project is just going to stay within the district office or if Bureau of Traffic and Bureau of Highway Design need to get involved as well. I mean, they, they're short-staffed in every department that they have and they have project after project that they're reviewing. So I would say that a good rule of thumb would be year and a half to two years for get through the New Hampshire DOT permitting process.
For a bigger project though, Jason, because I've, I've had some good luck.
Yeah, I mean, like for, you know, if you're just updating, you're absolutely right. If you're just updating driveway permits because of the volume of traffic and you're not having any impact or anything like that.
But a project this size.
But this, you know, where they've already been involved with the scoping meeting in December of 2021, I think that everybody's going to want to have a bite of the album.
I want to talk about that two-year thing. The two-year thing you just talked about, is that okay? So a year and a half to two years, John, does that, isn't that putting in violation of, don't you have to shovel, put a shovel in the ground within two years of the permit? Of us saying yes?
Yeah, so hold on. So when you give conditional approval, they have 120 days to meet the conditions of the approval. So what ends up happening is that they end up coming back asking for an extension. Why are you asking for an extension?
You know, like we've extended the tour for about two years now. Don't we have a regulation that says you have to put a shovel in the ground within two years of being approved? Otherwise you have to go back and have the whole thing re-approved?
For subdivisions, it's two years to obtain the conditions of approval, to meet the conditions of approval. For site plans, it's 120 days.
And a condition, Tony, would be to obtain your DOT permit?
And if they don't obtain it within 120, then they come back and ask for an extension of us.
Got it, thank you.
There's a lot of extensions that are.
Yeah, thank you.
By no means am I trying to tell you what to do, but you could consider, you know, certificate of occupancy. You know, like if we can start working on the site.
It's, let's not go there, please.
Just throw that out there, you know?
Thank you, Jason, you can sit down.
That's never gone well. That's not gone well.
No, Ted.
For your traffic study for the roadway that comes up to, or driveway, I guess, that comes abutting to or across from Crestview, was there any thought of moving that entryway to another point? Like say between unit 56 and 58, where the sight lines might have been better?
Looking at it, you know, trying to, there's another driveway access in the apartments across the street. You know, going up in the, we're still on the same radial curve until you get, you know, on that straight section.
Between, you know, 40 and 42.
Now, now you've got a bunch of units that are just going to be on the dead end.
Right, I was just trying to find if there might have been a better way to.
And the other, the other thing I was looking at with the different access points, the two units just to the west of that intersection, the grade is actually quite steep right there. So that not only would you still be on the same curve and have the same site distance issues, it's also going to be a steeper access point because of the grade change.
Okay, just wanted to.
I, I looked at a, yeah, I looked at a few different options. And I just don't have the room for a cul-de-sac without going with more wetland impact or buffer impact.
Makes sense, no, just an idea.
I've got one last thing on this.
Yeah, because we're still handling the traffic right now, so.
Was there any talk of a, like a four-way intersection right there? At Crestview? Crestview, Pinnacle, and Vista Ridge?
That, that is a four-way. Or you mean, you mean a stop?
Four-way stop sign right there, yeah. No?
I would not recommend that because again, when Vista Ridge was, was built and the intent of Vista Ridge was to, at one, at one day, one of these days, that raised island that goes across Perkins is going to come, become a reality, in my opinion. So Vista Ridge was, was built again, so you get off of Exit 5 heading south, take the right, dig off Perkins, you're going to end up going to Vista Ridge. That's why Vista Ridge was constructed as it is.
So you would not recommend a four-way stop sign there?
I would not recommend it.
Okay, any other questions on the traffic? Anne?
And you, so you do take consideration, I believe you said so already, I just want to verify, traffic coming down Perkins Road and wanting to go through traffic going down Perkins Road, going through your roadway system and then exiting out onto Rockingham Road.
Yes, so what we did was, we did our traffic counts, so it wasn't just, you know, like, there were different types of traffic counts. There are turning movement counts, so those are done at intersections, so you know if a vehicle's going straight through or making a turn. And we use that information when we're trying to develop our models to be able to evaluate the delays and the queues. We also have another type of count, it's called an automatic traffic recorder count. And what it's, they used to be tubes that would be across the roadway. Now they're, they're doing it with cameras or radars. There's all different devices that they use. And that can get vehicles, like they go just in direction, they don't do turning movements. They just do by direction and you can get speeds as well. So we did both sets of traffic counts as part of the traffic study. And at the Perkins and Vista Ridge Road intersection, drive intersection, we did the turning movement counts in the weekday morning, the weekday evening, and the Saturday midday. So we have all those turning movements at that intersection.
As well as, as well as the number of vehicles?
Yeah, so, and they were split between trucks and automobiles so that at least we could get the type of vehicle that was going through the intersection as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
To answer to your question, yes.
We're not for the 10 minutes, right? You gave me the mic.
Thank you for being so concise with your answer.
I was hoping he'd be gone by the time I got there.
He just stayed out there a little longer. So we'll continue with, anything else to, information on the plan, Jason?
Not on, not on the plan, we do have the conditional use permit.
Yes.
And if, if, if the board has questions on the site plan itself.
Okay.
Aside from traffic.
Yeah, any more input from staff on this?
Again, just design review comments, that's what I have.
Okay, why don't we do that? And we'll go, we'll go through the board.
Applicant has indicated DES sewer discharge, DOT permit and London Dairy Sewer Discharge and Army Corps permits have been submitted. Applicant should obtain all project permits, indicate the permit approval numbers in Note 13 on Sheet 2 and provide copies of the permits to the planning department for their files. Second, Design Review Item Number 2. Calls Development appears to impact the existing slope and drainage easements along Vista Ridge and upon Lot 51. Indicated impacts include changes and alterations of the current drainage outlets and flows in the town's stormwater system associated with Vista Ridge Drive. We're requesting that they discuss the proposed impacts to the existing drainage flow patterns, flowage rights, proposed alterations to the town's existing stormwater outfalls. Item number three, we recommend the applicant update the building renderings to provide proper title blocks. Item four, the updated drainage design on Sheet 24 indicates a Type C catch basin to be placed in the swales, typically not allowed in the town. We're requesting that they discuss that further with the town. Item five, the Manchester Water Works Utility Clearance Letter dated October 20th, '23. Notes, the Vista Ridge pump station requires improvements per the Lewis Engineering Report. We're requesting that they provide additional information and details indicating the improvements necessary for this project. We have some, a number of stormwater related comments, mostly where there is submerged outlets in three or four of the ponds. And also, we're asking that they correct the subcatchment 301 AS on its post-development drainage area plans. We're also recommending that the applicant address the traffic report review comments noted in Stantec's December 13th, 2023 memo. I won't elaborate any further on that. And lastly, to verify the DRC comments of the planning, Planning Department, Conservation Commission, Fire Department, and Sewer Division have been addressed. And lastly, the applicant has not provided draft proposed easement deeds, protective covenants, or other legal documents to the town for review. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, John. Ben, anything?
Mr. Chair.
Kelly?
Just to note, the Conservation Commission has recommended approval of the conditional use permit.
Okay. Okay, we'll go through the board, I'll start with Anne. Anything on this plan?
What are we discussing now?
The whole thing.
Anything but traffic.
Anything, yeah.
Yes.
Jigsaw with me. Nice guy and all, but geez.
That's an all thorough and very good explanation.
Sorry, I geek out on the traffic stuff.
Okay, I have a question about the little kiddies who may live there. Is there, I don't see any areas where they can play. There's a lot of, you know, land, but it's sloping or, you know, wet or whatever. So what are you going to do about that?
Nothing. Yeah, no, no play areas, no areas dedicated to that, no community clubhouse. It's going to be individual townhomes owned by the people that live there. No, no playgrounds or anything like that are proposed.
You say that without remorse.
Ah, they could go play with Beva.
Sounds like you want them to play in 28.
Give them a box of Cheez-Its and go find the Bobcat. I, no.
We have the traffic guy back, please.
Yeah, traffic guy, yeah. Yeah, no, 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 nothing, nothing to be, you know, maintained by the association other than stormwater drainage and the roads and so forth. No parks, nothing like that.
I suppose they can continue pushing the baby carriages on the sidewalk like I've seen before, but I wish there was something there for the kids, I really do. Anyways, that's it.
Tony?
So, congratulations, you have a lot of work ahead of you. The, this is not an easy site to build on, the elevations are all over the place. That said, I'm on, I'm on your elevation pages. I don't see any page numbers, the last three pages I think are left, right, rear, front elevations. I think your, the rear of these buildings, the rear elevation of the buildings are going to be seen in some, some of them will be seen by Vista Ridge property owners and some people driving on the street.
Correct.
Some.
So, some of them. So, you know, obviously in Vista West, everything up at the top of the hill, those, the units are going to be designed as three-story buildings, garage in the, in the lower level. You know, so when you're up in that area, when you're driving down the road, they're all going to look like three-story buildings, residential homes. But the what, the, the units abutting Vista, in Vista East, the units abutting Vista Ridge, the back of those, we're going to drive under on the east side. So when you're driving, it's going to have the appearance of only a two-story structure.
Yeah, I've got it. That, that said, and I'm looking at the rear of one of those, which is your last.
On Sheet A2.
A2, yes, thank you. That building from that elevation needs a bellyboard badly.
What?
A rim, rim board that goes.
Between the floors or something?
Bellyboards in the construction industry, you never heard that?
I've never heard that.
I've been using that for 50 years. Google bellyboard when you get home and you'll see what it looks like. But you need bellyboards on that elevation, you need it on the side elevation to break up those walls. And you also need it on, on the, less so on the others, but on the, on the Page A. A1, under those top windows, under the top windows and on top of the sliders, a bellyboard from left to right there, or right to left, whatever, 10, 12-inch white or whatever you want contrasting. And what it does is it breaks up the height. Just to, just to make it look like it's not the back of a building, right? And the same thing on the, on the, on the side elevations, the same thing. It's very little money to do that. It's an architectural thing that will just dress it up so that people looking at the back of the building aren't looking at the back of the building. You did, you did some nice work with the batten board and the, and whatever of those, almost looks like.
Shingle shakes?
Shingle shakes. Looks nice on the front, but you didn't do anything on the sides of the rear, so I would, I would like to see that. If you want to spend some. If you wanna spend some money, you have six wide that could be dressed up quite nicely with a twelve-inch reveal in the back of it. So that it looks like it's, it's not just this massive thing, right?
Some of them are eight.
It gets into, gets into some money, but, um, it's pretty, pretty good size expanse, especially when you go to eight, there's a couple of them, but, something to consider. The freeze, uh, the bellyboard is really, really easy to do. And, um, I would strongly suggest that somehow breaking up the architecture of the back of the building in addition to that would be nice. The, um, back to the comment about the kids. You already understand that Londonderry school buses do not go on private roads. They certainly will not go in this development because you don't back up a school bus ever. And so my suggestion there would be on, on your two or three.
Three access.
Three accesses. Depending on where the bus is gonna stop, and you can work with the school district, they're very friendly. Needs to be some kind of a, a little lean-to shelter. Again, that's a no-money item that will help the kids. We just give them a place to congregate, um, and not be running out in the middle of the street and keep them out of the rain and the inclement weather or whatever. And, um, other than that, congratulations again. This is not an easy site. I've walked that site many, many, many times. That's a pretty tough terrain. So, uh, congratulations to you for figuring it out and putting something together that's cohesive and, and, and makes sense. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Jeff?
No, I think that's a great point about the bus stops. Other than that, I have nothing else to add.
Hope I'm all set. Jake?
Little bit on, um, traffic. Just kidding.
Jake's gonna be trafficing here.
So I, I, I have to agree with Mr. D on the backside of the buildings, especially facing the Vista Ridge condos. I think we have to do something to break up that roof line. You know, the, to the people who live in Vista Ridge, the back is the front. So I, I, I do think that really should get dressed up a bit. As well as your landscape, I was on it earlier, it's just eighty-six pages of plans here, so I don't wanna go through them. But as well as your landscape plan, um, in that area that goes along Vista Ridge Drive where you've got, you know, the condos up top and you're going around that bend there, I do think you need to landscape that more. Did you look up bellyboard?
Yeah.
Cause Ted hit, Ted did, and it came up with a guy surfing.
Yeah, you, yeah, you better look up bellyboard construction.
I, I think that needs to be landscaped a little bit more. You've got a lot of deciduous trees in your landscape plan right there. It'd be nice to see them evergreen, um, to try and hide that.
The, i- in that area, we've just got our site distance line. We've just gotta keep everything behind them.
Yeah, I understand that. Like, you know, there's some, a lot of deciduous stuff there, crab apples and.
More, more, okay.
Red oaks or whatever it was. I'd like to see that, to more of an evergreen, to really try and buffer these backyards from the people up top. And, you know, from a layout, there is two areas I'm a little concerned about. Kelly, can you go back to what the site plan page was that kinda had the whole overview?
Sheet three.
Yeah.
Takes a minute.
So, it's just right up top of Pinnacle Drive where the dumpster is, that seems like, I don't know, this seems really difficult if something were to happen there. You have any idea how wide that is, John, from like the here to there?
The, the drive aisle is twenty-four feet wide.
Twenty-four feet wide?
Yeah.
Seems like it's, to me, it just seems like there's a bit of a pinch point there and then on the backside of this cul-de-sac here. You know? I don't know if it's a density issue or, or what.
Can you explain on the backside of the cul-de-sac?
If you go to the left there, Kelly? Just that back section of, you know, somebody parks in the wrong spot right here.
Probably wetlands though.
And nobody can get, we can't get the fire department back there and somebody, you know, they parked there.
That's twenty-four foot wide.
Twenty-four foot wide.
Yeah, so that, that entire road and all the drive aisles between.
Yeah.
Units, they're all twenty-four feet wide.
Okay.
And when you get, when you get in between the units, you know, um, I've got like twenty-foot long, I'm sorry, twenty-five-foot long parking spaces. So you've, you've got, you've got enough depth from the garage door to the edge of pavement. People will be able to walk behind, so there's like a five-foot painted walk in that area. Yeah, but those two pinch points are, waste management asked for the dumpster, you know, in that location.
Yeah, I get why the dumpster's there. I'm just concerned about everybody past it, if you've gotta get, uh, I guess I'll defer to Bruce, he's the firefighter, but what's a ladder truck need when it's up and in the sky?
About eighteen plus feet.
So twenty-four is sufficient?
Not getting anything by it after we put our ladder truck up, but.
So.
And that doesn't account for, like you said, illegally parked cars or.
That's what, what the outrigger's eighteen?
Sounds about right. So those are really, in terms of buildings, those are my two areas of concern. I feel like that could be an issue and that could be an issue. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it. I would definitely like to see some updated elevations to do something with the back, back here and an updated landscape plan. I'm good.
Okay, Ted?
Question on, I guess, egress of these buildings. Has there been any discussion about having any egress from the decks and having any stairs off the decks?
There'll be stairs out to the lawn, but, uh, yeah, I, the architecturals don't show it, so. Might be able to have them add that in if, but that would be the plan, would have steps off the deck to the grass lawn.
Isn't, that isn't the plan?
Yeah. Yeah, they're all gonna have limited common area right behind each unit.
Okay, great, good. And I, you know, have a big concern, you know, if there's ever a fire in someone's kitchen, they gotta be able to get out. I mean, yeah, you might be able to say or claim, well, we have basement doors, we, we have garage doors, but you then have to get that direction, you know, fast as easy way out would be those sliding doors. And as well, you know, you can't really have grills on decks. And if someone wanted to grill, there's no way to really get to your grill. And then I had another item and now I can't remember what it was, so I'm all set.
Probably pop back in.
Yep.
Jason?
Uh, I agree on the comments about the back elevation and the, the new term I learned today, bellyboards.
Isn't that bellyband?
Sometimes it's called a bellyband.
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 Bellyband. Bellyboard.
And I learned two terms, so nice. But no, I, 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 I agree breaking up that, that expanse. Like Jake said, the back is the front.
Okay, Roger?
Everything looks pretty good to me with the, what people have spoke about so far, and it looks good.
So, talk to me about sprinkler versus widening the road.
So, yeah, went through a discussion with that on Brian, uh, with Brian. He, he was looking for a, either a road width of twenty-eight feet with no sprinklers or the option of sprinkling the building and keep it at twenty-four feet. Cause he wanted, cause there's only one point of access. So, you know, we looked at the, widen it up to twenty, twenty-eight feet. More, more pavement, more impervious, dealing with the, with the drainage, also dealing with the cuts and the fills. And after solving the water issue with additional pumps, um, increased capacity pumps, we opted on the west side only for the sprinklers. Those will be required because of the road width.
And what sprinkler standard are you using? Is it just a residential?
I don't, it, it's gonna be some sort of residential and, and that's what he was asking about on, um, placement of the hydrants. Because two different systems, one will have a connect on the building, one won't. So, but we don't have the buildings completely designed, we don't have mechanical, there's, there's no design on the fire suppression system. So depending on the construction of the building, how it's built, will then depend on the, what type of system's used. If the system is utilized with the, the building connections, then we need to look at hydrant placement. So we just gotta capture that in a note to be placed on the plans, is what he was looking.
And that comes with a municipal fire alarm system that also goes in conjunction with your sprinkler system. Yeah, I've, I've personally lived in a house just like this, um, in Hudson. I think they're, they're great units, especially for, for starting out, um, or for, you know.
For downsizing.
For downsizing, yeah. What's your price point?
Um, whatever the market will dictate.
Yeah, I saw six hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, I, 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 I don't know what the price points are. I'd have to, you know, see if Gene's gotten that far on it yet. But, you know, we don't even have all the interior of the, the units and stuff designed yet, so.
Yeah. So, you know, as a member of the public, I like it, it's great, great project. You know, this is the type of housing that we need as a firefighter. I hate it because these are what we call row houses and they, uh, many of my board members, fellow board members already pointed out limited access, tight roads, adjoining walls, um, but.
But it's housing in the price point for the young couples starting out or those that wanna downsize? It's, it's a type of home in town that is lacking.
Yeah, and that's why I ask what kind of sprinkler system, because there's a big difference between a sprinkler system that's designed to put out the fire and a sprinkler system that's just designed to allow you to egress your building. So, two different systems, as you indicated, one you tie into with the fire truck and we can pump it and put the fire out, and one is literally just to get you out of the building alive. But, you know, overall, I think that, that's a good project and, um, I don't wanna talk about traffic, so I'm, I'm in my comments there.
I remembered my other question. Seems like there's a bit of limited visitor parking. I noticed fifteen spots on the east side and ten on the west.
Yep.
Is that what you're thinking total or?
Yeah, these units, um, the N units are, are planned to be three-bedroom units. The middle units are two. You have one car, one space for the garage, and two spaces for each unit outside. So you, you can accommodate three vehicles per unit right at the unit. And then we had some overflow.
Okay.
The visitors and such.
I had one more. So for the units on Vista West, will their association fee be different than the units on Vista East? Because if you put a sprinkler system in, that then becomes a problem for the association to maintain and test.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
That will need to be worked out.
Fair enough, just curiosity.
And that may have to be two separate condo associations, I think.
Well, actually, I've, I've seen a bunch of condo developments all over the state that were multi-phased, that have one condo association and they just say, if your, if your condo is number one through fifty, you're assessed X number of dollars and are responsible for this, this, and this. If you're number one through seventy-nine, and, and it seems to work well.
It's supposed to do it.
I've, I've never lived in one, but I've seen a bunch of them that, that do it that way.
Yeah, and that's where attorney gets involved, is with the condo association.
I was gonna say, that's kinda outside of what we're doing, of course.
Yeah. Are there any, butters, or anyone for the public, have any questions, comments, and concerns in regards to this site plan? I know this gentleman, uh.
Thank you for your ten minutes, sir.
I was gonna say, it's a long twenty. I'm confused about the driveway by Crestview Circle. Is that eliminated or, uh, your solution is to clear some trees or shrubs? I disagree that that's sufficient for people coming out of that driveway. People travel at a high rate of speed, it is at a, a bus stop. How many driveways are on Vista Ridge on the straightaway?
There'll be two, one to access Vista West, one further, you know, just off the sheet to the, on the top side, is a second access point to access Vista East. So two access points for Vista East, one access point for Vista West.
Well, I wish you could eliminate the one on Crestview Circle because I think it's a danger to the, to the public and to the residents that will be coming out of that complex. And also, what are you doing about the buffer along Vista Ridge? What plantings are you putting in there? I heard, uh, trees would not be good, but greenery would be better.
Yeah, we have a landscape plan and.
I did just ask them to update their plan to be a bit more dense than it is now and to be more evergreen and deciduous. Deciduous loses its leaves, evergreen does not.
Well, I hope the board can do something about that driveway. Cause I do think it's a danger to the public. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
For that driveway, that's why I was asking about a four-way stop sign there, but it sounds like.
Slow traffic down.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't, I don't understand how it's a danger any more than.
Coming out of Crestview?
The one that's already there. It's actually better, my understanding is it's better if they're lined up because it's easier to see.
All four of them.
Yeah, and that's what you usually want, cause.
Right.
Everyone using it, coming into it.
That's the good part about that being there, but I don't understand why it's, why it's a danger.
And the traffic study takes into account the speed, the posted speed on that road?
Correct, and we, we also, um, as I mentioned earlier about the traffic counts that we did, we also got the speeds of how fast people are actually driving out there. And we use that, um, and whichever was higher, the posted speed limit or the traveled speed, whatever was faster, we use that for our site line measurements.
I would assume it's always traveled.
You know, it, honestly, it depends on the day, um, but, and that's why we do multiple days of, of traffic counts.
I swore I wasn't gonna say anything about traffic, but.
That's a good question, Bruce.
I do think that, I mean, it, it's tough to see right now because obviously that's all wooded, but there is, you know, there's gonna be a significant change in the line of sight there. They have to.
Yeah.
You know, so the, the condition is actually gonna be much better as somebody driving on Crestview Circle, you're gonna be able to see a lot further in front of you with that in than, than you would without it.
Elevation coming down on, right? If you're coming from the left-hand side of the page down, heading towards Perkins, you have elevation there, which.
There is, yeah. And, and that's why, you know, that was a big thing in the beginning stages, Jason and I were working on it as far as what do we actually need out there as far as, you know, he was set on the location because of the different items that he identified on the site, wetlands, curvature, grade differential. So then it was a matter of, okay, what do we need to be able to make this driveway safer, right? I mean, safe is such a subjective term for all of us. We can look at it in different ways, especially you. I mean, you, you have a totally different, uh, extreme than, than maybe the rest of us might. But from a traffic perspective, it's a matter of how fast are people going, can you see? Do you need any other treatments out there to be able to make sure you're gonna accommodate the cars? Whether that's turn lanes or other types of traffic control. And really, it, it comes down to making sure people can see coming out of that driveway.
And can you just quickly discuss what the distance, the site distance is that you need for that particular?
Yeah, so it's, it's all, so the town has a certain requirement that's established, but that's why we took into consideration the ASHO requirements. because the state and the town have set numbers, I forget them off the top of my head. I know Manhattan DOT has four hundred feet of all season safe sites.
Town's three sixty-five.
Three sixty-five. And then, but then Ashto does it based on the speeds, and so that's why we wanted to make sure we got the speed, the actual travel speeds out there as well. So we're kinda looking at it from those different perspectives.
So your driveway location for that particular intersection takes into account both of those factors, the three sixty-five and Ashto?
Correct.
Okay, any further public comment? I don't see any, we'll bring it back to the board for, we have a conditional use permit to discuss and also the plan itself.
All right.
Anybody have anything on the CUP?
And conservation has.
Recommended.
Recommended.
Love it.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to grant approval of the CUP for approximately three thousand five hundred ninety-two square feet of wetland buffer impact for the construction of a hundred thirty townhouses and associated site improvements at seventy-one Perkins Road, one seventy-one Rockingham Road, and one seventy-nine Rockingham Road, as well as one seventy-five Rockingham Road and one ninety-one Rockingham Road. Gene Gagnon, owner and applicant.
A lot of lots there. Okay, motion by Jake.
I'll second that.
Second by Lynn, any further discussion by the board on the conditional use permit? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions and chair votes affirmative on that. So, the conditional use permit has been granted. And let's see, recommendation from staff is a continuance and.
Just a question on how the rest of the board feels about the two areas I brought up with housing. How's everybody else feel with those couple areas that I felt were a little tight?
What are the two areas?
That is your northernmost grouping on the east side, right here, and then this right here.
So, my question Jake would be, did the fire department approve the plan?
Yeah.
And if they did, I'm good with it. Yeah, I mean, they're the ones that have to get the equipment in.
That's why I'm just looking for a consensus of the board.
I would say there's no perfect plan, and I think this is pretty good.
Ideally, you'd want two ways, like in.
Yeah, no, I know. I just see those becoming a problem down the road.
I mean, you have a hammerhead there, which you know someone's gonna park in, sure.
That's a parking spot, isn't it?
That's what everyone thinks.
It's my parking spot.
Which, but that's up to the, but that's up to the development, right? To police that on their own. Do their thing and have somebody run around and put nasty grams on windshield.
I'm just looking, consensus of the board, that's all. I think those are two areas of concern. I think it's a great plan, I think those are two areas that maybe we're trying to get a little too much in.
It's not ideal.
Yeah.
So the division chief of fire prevention is pretty astute in his recommendations.
Yeah.
The fact that it's a twenty-four foot wide roadway, with only one entrance and exit for the west, he's already taken into consideration with the requirement of the sprinkler system.
Okay.
As Mr. D said, there's no perfect plan.
Yep.
From a fire department perspective, we look at, can we get our equipment in? We don't care if anybody can get out after we're in, but can we get in? And the answer to that question is yes.
That's fair. You know, I certainly wanna see some sort of updated elevation and landscape plan of what I had discussed. I think it's very important to the residents of the actual Vista Ridge to make sure that's done right, so.
And if I can just add, from an engineering standpoint, again, I think figuring out what needs to be done with municipal water works, because that's the first I hear that, you know, again, we had, I had caught that condition on municipal water works sign-off, but again, never knew what that was all about. That is of concern, and then traffic is of concern. I've heard, again, you're building elevations.
We talked about traffic.
I'm sorry?
That was a joke. That was a joke.
And again, and I'd like to make sure that Brian is satisfied with whatever the result is.
Yeah.
And he understands it's not just a note.
I think there's enough here that's worth continuing.
Yeah, it's not all there, I think for us to really make a decision on it.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue formal review of a site plan for a hundred thirty townhouses and associated site improvements at seventy-one Perkins Road, map fifteen lot fifty-one, zoned MUC, one seventy-one Rockingham Road, map fifteen lot fifty-nine, zoned MUC, one seventy-nine Rockingham Road, map fifteen lot sixty, zoned MUC, one seventy-five Rockingham Road, map fifteen lot sixty-two, zoned MUC, and one ninety-one Rockingham Road, map fifteen lot sixty-four, zoned MUC, Gene Gagnon, owner and applicant. In accordance with plans prepared by Keach Nordstrom dated August twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, last revised on August twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, with the precedent conditions to be fulfilled within two years prior to plan signature and general and subsequent conditions of approval. If we're continuing that, I don't really need that, do I?
No.
No. So, I'll stop after owner and applicant, and you can strike anything after owner and applicant. Don't need it.
I'll second that motion.
Jake has made a motion to continue, and Lynn has done a second. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor signify by, Kelly, we need a date?
The tenth of January.
January tenth.
January tenth.
Okay, so the plan is continued to January tenth, two thousand twenty-four.
So we got a second, we got a motion?
Yep. So, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Chair votes affirmative, nay from Bruce. Okay. Plan is continued to the tenth of January, two thousand twenty-four.
And we all set with Jason, or would you like him?
Jake wants to see me again, eh?
I think you wanted to give us a quiz.
Gonna give him a special.
See what we really know.
Do you think we're done with traffic discussion at this point?
I'm gonna leave that to our town staff's recommendation before the meeting, if they feel as though we need traffic to come back. Is that appropriate?
Yeah. I'd like to see a summary by intersection of what your findings were. I'd love to see it work.
I agree with that.
Maybe if we have some data.
So you could give it to Kelly, Kelly could get it out to us.
Yeah, not necessarily come back to present it, but at least, you know, we could have it and take a look at it.
Like as far as, you know, the increases in delay at each intersection and all that stuff?
Yep.
It's all, it's all in the traffic study, so it's not gonna be a heavy lift at all.
Yep, okay, good.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome.
You're gonna miss me, Jake.
Yeah, see you next month.
I have to say, it's very thorough. Okay, the next two we'll take together, because one's the conditional use permit that goes with the site plan.
Yeah.
So we have a public hearing on an application for a conditional use permit to allow ten thousand five hundred square feet of wetland impact. Tax map fifteen, lot sixty-two, zoned MUC, Gene Gagnon is the owner and Bill Greiner the applicant. And that's continued from the sixth of December, two thousand twenty-three. And what goes with it also is a public hearing on an application for a formal review of a site plan and conditional use permit to construct a twelve thousand square foot medical building and a three thousand square foot bank and associated site improvements. Tax map fifteen, lot sixty-two, zoned MUC, Gene Gagnon is the owner, Bill Greiner is the applicant, and that has been also continued from December sixth, two thousand twenty-three. We just need to do completeness.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there are five outstanding checklist items. If the board decides to accept the application as complete, these items should be waived for acceptance purposes only. Those checklist items are items related to the utility plans, the water details within the plan set, the gas line details, grading and drainage plans, the detail sheets themselves in storm water management report, as well as copies of permits, applications that have not been submitted to the town.
Okay, we just need to, the. Yes, I'm trying to find stuff here myself, too.
There we go, okay, so.
Okay, I get to the staff memo.
Here we go. So, are we starting?
For acceptance.
Sorry, I'm getting, having two medical things is getting me all mixed up there.
Too much paperwork.
Do we have a recommendation?
On the outstanding checklist items?
On acceptance?
On acceptance? They should be, they should be provided.
Give me one sec.
Oh, yeah, staff recommends that the board vote to accept the application, as it's substantially complete and contains sufficient information to invoke the board's jurisdiction to allow the board to make an informed decision.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to.
If it makes it easier, we recognize that we need to provide those items, especially prior to any approvals.
Is there a subdivision, I can't, is there a subdivision on this, too? That's what's mixing me up.
No.
No, there's not.
No, this is just.
That's getting me all mixed up.
Just a slight play, we've had, we've had the combinations and.
No, there is a med subdivision.
It says med subdivision, right there.
It's a site plan.
That was a different one?
Yeah, see, that's why I'm getting mixed up.
Yeah, the hour's getting later, too, so the mind is not as clear as it was at.
So, either way, can I make a motion to waive the checklist items for acceptance only?
Okay, Jake has made a motion to waive the checklist items specified by staff.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Chair votes affirmative, and they have been waived for acceptance purposes only, and then we can go to completeness. Just, oh, yeah, you get things situated there, Jake, and.
We can start listening to him. Got a lot of checklist items here.
I understand.
Yeah, we just need a motion on completeness. So just a motion to.
We just did that.
We just did that.
Oh, okay, that was all, oh, okay.
So, we've got a handful of waivers here. I'll let you start talking on the waivers, or the chair will let you start talking on the waivers.
Yes.
I thank you.
Just identify yourself for our records, please, just to be official and everything, and proceed.
For the record, Sam Foyes with Meridian Land Services, just to quickly address the checklist items, we did an internal review after our submittal, and we recognize that we need to provide those items. We have since made some updates to the plans, they have not been presented to the town, nor are they on this presentation that's before you. The two waivers that I believe we've requested are a waiver for the utility availability letters, utility availability letters for the purposes of accepting the application, not for approving it. So it seems as that may have been already waived. The other waiver is related to the architectural renderings for the bank building and the bank building only.
I was looking at the wrong thing, so. Pardon me.
Which I can touch more on that further in my presentation, if you would, if, or I can speak more in detail on that now, if you'd like.
Let's go with it now.
All right, so, let me just, I'll skip through some slides just to get to that. So, I mean, we showed this presentation to you before during conceptual sometime, I believe it's June fourteenth meeting. We heard the board's comments related to those, mostly being the one in a pitched roof, inclusion of more brick, similar to the bus stop across the street, essentially, design elements that relate to the other buildings approved in London area. That brings us to essentially the phasing. So the project is phased into two, in two phases. Phase one being the bank, or, sorry, phase one being the medical building and the associated improvements related to the medical building, as well as the utility stubs, water, sewer, and propane to the bank pad site. We are proposing to install the overall drainage basin, as well as the containment berm that would wrap the bank pad and then have the bank pad be stabilized. So essentially, while we are proposing this site to be a bank, we don't have a bank tenant lined up that would drive the architectural design of the building. This is the architectural elevations that was presented to the Heritage Commission. We attended two meetings, the last of which being, I believe it was November sixteenth, where we presented building materials, the siding, the brick, and the shingles of this here. The architect did indicate, while this color scheme isn't perfect of what represents the real-life colors, that's where those samples came into play of what the colors would be. And we've asked the Heritage Commission on their input on whether or not they would support a waiver from the planning board on the condition that the architectural style matched this architectural style, also be equivalent to the samples that were provided to the Heritage Commission. And then when this building is seeking its building permit, we would come back before the planning board for the planning board's input, as well as the Heritage Commission's input on it.
I thank you for that.
So, that is essentially the justification of the waiver. We're not, we're not trying to not provide the elevations to the board. We just don't have a tenant yet for the bank that would gear the specifics in the building design, and we wanna bring that back before you when it's time for that.
Yeah, that's understandable.
So that's essentially my presentation on why we would be requesting a waiver for the architectural elevations of the bank.
Would your intention be to try and match phase two to phase one architecturally?
Yes, and that's how we presented it to the Heritage Commission.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions on the waivers? John, Kelly, Ben, anybody? Waivers?
Staff's recommending approval of the waiver that was just outlined.
Yeah. So, I'm gonna take them separately, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna make a motion to grant the first waiver with regards to renderings for the proposed bank, as this waiver could be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
Okay, motion by Jake, do I have a second?
Second that, Mr. Chair.
Second by Lynn, any discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. And abstentions, chair votes affirmative, and that waiver has been granted.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion to deny the second waiver in regards to the SLPR section four point one eight point B relating to providing utility clearance letters.
Okay, motion by Jake, do I have a second for the denial?
I'd like to discuss it, I'll second him, I'd like a discussion on it.
Okay, second, okay, discussion on Jake's.
So, what does it mean to deny the waiver?
So we'll have to get the clearance letters.
What does it mean for the rest of us here tonight?
Becomes a condition of approval.
Okay.
And we'll have to fulfill it.
But, so, just for the other side of things, if we were to accept the waiver, it would still become a condition of approval, no?
No, you would be waiving it.
We would be waiving it.
Be waiving it.
Okay, yeah, so.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone who's opposed, say nay. Abstentions, and the chair votes affirmative on it, and the second one, the section four point one eight point B is denied, becomes a conditional of approval in the plan.
Mr. Chair, we have a conditional use permit?
Yes. And conservation has recommended the approval of it, so.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to grant approval of the CUP for approximately ten thousand five hundred square feet of wetland impact for the construction of a medical office building and bank, map fifteen lot sixty-two, zoned MUC, Gene Gagnon, owner, and Bill Greiner, applicant.
And I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Jake's made the motion for the conditional approval, Lynn has seconded. Jake's made the motion for the conditional approval, uh, Lynn has seconded. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, and chair votes affirmative, and the conditional use permit has been, uh, been granted. Bless you.
God bless.
There is an additional conditional use permit that was submitted with the application for the drive-through. Would this be the appropriate time for that as well?
Yes.
Want to discuss it at all?
Um, I, I can discuss it briefly, um.
Thirty thousand foot view.
Yes, so, um, banks typically have a, a drive-through facility to take burden off of traffic going indoors. Um, the, there's two drive-through lanes here with a bypass lane that then extends around it. We believe that the location of the drive-through doesn't have a, a visual impact of queuing of vehicles, um, to the, the general public passing, um, along, um, Vista Ridge a- as well as Rockingham, and, uh, essentially, it's in conformance with the requirements of the CUP permit.
Great. Anybody?
Any questions, uh, staff input?
I have a question. The width of roadway between the drive-up and the edge of the road, how wide is that?
The width of the, the roadway between the, the, so you're saying the width of the drive-through lanes?
No, the lane that passes.
I, if I remember correctly, let me, let me just pull it off the plans.
Thinking of Bruce.
I think it was about eleven feet, if.
Well, that's not, that's gonna be a problem. Fire, uh, fire trucks and/or potentially amulets may have a hard time getting around there if they're, they have to go enter and then once that bank is built, go around the bank to get back out. That's gonna be quite a problem.
We can look in, into widening that.
Especially now that you guys got rid of the road that went around the building.
That bypass, that bypass. We can look into widening that bypass lane.
When we get to site plan.
And then running the, running the London area fire truck maneuver through it, just to make sure that it, that it works with vehicle queuing there as well.
So anything question wise on the CUP? Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to grant approval of conditional use permit to allow the drive-through windows as an accessory use to the proposed bank, map fifteen lot sixty dash two, zoned MUC, Gene Gagnon owner and Bill Greiner applicant.
Okay, motion by Jake for.
Second that, Mr. Chair.
Second by Lynn for conditional approval. Any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, everybody saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, chair was affirmative, and, uh, the conditional use permit to allow the drive-through window is, uh, presented. So, uh, we gotta go get some public input too. So, uh, anything to add, uh, what you've already said about the site plan?
Um, I, I could go through my whole presentation, but I recognize that tonight isn't a, an approval night, it's a continuance night, um, and the.
More likely than not.
In the opinion of the, or in respect to the boys' to- board's time, as well as the, um, town residents here. Um, I, I think the only thing that might be worth, um, visiting is if the board has any input on, on site layout, and then probably landscaping. Um, I recognize we don't need to talk about traffic anymore, um, and I'll be having a discussion with, uh, Jason tomorrow. About the traffic study, so, um, generally, the, the site's accessed from Vista Ridge drive-through, a full, um, left-in, uh, right-in, left-out, right-out. Um, patrons of the medical facility, uh, will utilize the drop-off lane when they need, drop-off area when they need to drop off, um, a patient. The site's generally graded at, um, two percent with, with some increased grades there, but it's generally flat to, for the medical, um, use. The utilities are served by the water off of Vista Ridge, um, and then sewer connecting to the sewer manhole that is proposed with the, um, Vista West and Vista East subdivision slash site plan. Um, and then the, it will be served by propane with electric and, um, underground utilities coming off of the pole at the intersection of Vista Ridge and Rockingham. So drainage-wise, there is a, or drainage and grading, um, there is a berm located at the upper side of the property that will divert any water that is sheet-flowing from the, from the uphill, um, lands, and then it will travel along that berm, um, to its ultimate, uh, discharge point to, I believe, the east. Also drainage, there is a berm that wraps around the bank site with a swell in there that, that collects all the runoff from the bank. And when we went before the cons comm, their main issue was any snow going back into the larger wetlands. Um, that's what this berm does, is any snow melt will drain into this whale and then go around. They also made it, um, requested us putting a note on the plans saying that any excess snow will be, um, removed from the site, which we're happy to do so. Um, the remainder of the site is, is collect, either sheet-flow into the stormwater basin, or is it collected via, um, catch basins and, and culvert pipes. Um, we also related to the drainage system of Vista Ridge, there is a drainage manhole that we're proposing to remove and then reinstall one up, uh, gradient of the pipe. Um, that is essentially short, shortening the pipe, and then we are diverting it back to its original discharge point. So we're, we aren't changing its discharge point. We are lengthening the overall run of pipe by about ten feet. We are improving the angle, the, the angle of change within the, um, manhole. It essentially was a forty-five degree angle back, we're going about at ninety degrees, and then we're improving the slope of that. The staff had some comments of whether or not that should be modeled, um, in that, from when we made our original submittal to now, we have modeled it confirming, um, that there is no adverse impact, which we will provide that to staff after this meeting. Um, other than that, I think that kind of summarizes the project up as quick as possible, so we can get out of here as quick as possible. Um, and then I would just like to leave it on the landscaping, as I would imagine that might be where there is more, the majority of the comments from the board.
Yep. So, uh, any further input from staff?
I think Sam's recognized, the plan needs a lot of work, in my opinion. Get ahold of Jason, get ahold of a traffic engineer to look at the traffic, because what was presented is, doesn't reflect what's actually happening out there. Um, that's all I have right now.
Okay, Kelly? You're all set. Okay, we'll go to the board. Ian?
I have a question for you. Why didn't you bring the roadway, internal roadway, around the back of the building and to go straight out? I'm just curious.
Um, we, we couldn't fit it, is, is essentially what it is. So we have to stay, um, and let me, let me grab the plans here of what the actual dimensioning is. I believe we have to stay, and I can be corrected if I need to. There is a impervious area setback from the frontage, and I think it's half the distance of the building setbacks, so that would be, um, thirty feet. And then there is an impervious area setback from the rear, which is half the building setback, which is fifteen feet. So, to fit a drive-access aisle between the building, um, we wouldn't be able to fit it. Um, that's essentially the reason, the reason for that.
Okay, um, do you, uh, where is the dumpster in this?
Um, the dumpster is located in between the bank and the medical building to give, um, equal access to it.
Okay.
So at the end, I guess, I don't know if.
Is that a little square, rectangle on the bottom?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, that's all I have.
Mr. D, you got anything?
I might have one thing.
Maybe.
Great.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to say that I was very critical of your first plan, and as critical as I was, probably a hundred percent critical, I'm a hundred percent in favor of this plan. I think you made some great corrections. I thank you for listening, um, and, and, and paying attention. You have some color issues that I know you're gonna, you're gonna work through.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just looking at it quickly, I think you got a huge drainage problem with the crickets on your overhang, uh, the roof crickets, um, that are probably gonna have to be drained underground. Um, just a, just a thought. Uh, I've been there, done that, and it's way easy to do it on the front end than, than the way I did it, which is.
Digging up the pavement.
Which is way more expensive, so.
Yep.
Something to think about for, for, uh, for you. Um, I, I think you have a huge, um, traffic pattern issue, um, with that, with people being dropped off under that overhang. Um, they come in the driveway, they take a right under the overhang, drop off somebody with a wheelchair, or, or a walker, or, or whatever, and then they have no choice but to, to take a, almost a one eighty left-hand turn to get out, to the majority of your parking. It would be nice if conveniently, they could take a ninety-degree and all of those spots were empty, but we know that's not reality. Um, unfortunately, usually when I find things like that, I can quickly come up with a solution for you, but I have nothing, uh, based on what I'm looking at on this plan. But I, I think the circulation, I think you got a huge circulation problem, um, with, with that. Um, other than that, again, I, I thank you for listening, um, when you, when you were here last time for, for discussion, and I think the design, uh, works very well with the neighborhood, with the town. Um, the little, the mustard colors that I'm looking at would, would not be my first choice, but I'm sure, um, some of the boards will have, have a conversation about that with you.
Yep, I can ask the architect for, to take his samples, to bring them in, and hopefully that will help with some of that concern, 'cause, um, the Heritage Commission had the same opinion of the colors based off of the rendering, and then when they had the samples, they were more, more in favor of it.
That'd be helpful, thank you.
I'm all set, thank you.
Thanks, um, yeah, definitely echoing, um, Tony's comments over here. I do like the design. Also want to echo John from Town Staff's, um, comments. Um, definitely work with Town Staff to really kind of pull this plan together. It does, to me, does raise some red flags, I think. So, uh, we do want to ensure that it is, you're, you're working with Town Staff to get it to a place where they're comfortable with it, so it, so you're proactive, so frankly, that the project's successful.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna echo Tony's comments on, uh, traffic flow through there, and I guess my real concern is, to go to the bank, you have to drive through the parking lot of the medical building. And I think, you know, with people in wheelchairs going out to their, being wheeled out to their cars or things like that, and they have just the retail flow going to the bank, I don't have a better solution, but I just, I see that as being somewhat problematic. And then, how many parking spots do you have?
Um, I believe we have sixty-seven of them, but I'll get the, yes, sixty-seven as we're, and fifty-nine are required.
Okay, it just looks like there's not enough parking, but if you've met the minimum requirements, then I'm fine.
And we purposely overparked it, given that the medical facility asked for more spaces than what the town required.
Oh, okay, great.
Yeah, so it, and it is a one-story building. We used to look at it two stories, right?
Yeah, you think it's more than, yeah.
And so we're looking at, again, that one-dimensional rectangle.
Yep.
That usually has something on top. So I, I, I think you, they're probably okay, 'cause there's not gonna be very many offices in there. Kind of a small building, I think.
Okay, and hopefully the employees' parking would be away from the front door.
At the bus station.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
You need a crosswalk there.
I'm all set.
Okay, Jake?
Elevation-wise, I think the building looks great. I totally agree on the colors. I think they're a little skewed and need to be adjusted, but, you know, you've got a nice brick skirting down at the bottom, you've got a really good-looking roof line. Um, it, it's a good-looking building. Um, I'm definitely concerned about, uh, the bank, um, especially phasing it. I don't see how you can build this medical building, put it into service, and then try and build a bank and bring construction equipment in and out of this lot all day. Um, I, I, I don't, honestly don't know if I could support it with the bank in there because of that. I think, I, I think there is a, oh geez, my computer just got all messed up. Um, there's, there's a little bit of a safety issue there with there being one entrance. You know, people are gonna be flying in and out of the bank, um, once it's built out, never mind construction. So I, I'm certainly concerned about that. Um, circul- uh, circulation around the building, is that something that, um, would they be able to put something back there with a waiver and they're inside of, inside of setbacks, and there would be a waiver we could support?
Is that zoning at that point?
That's variance, okay. Um, I agree with the entrance. I don't know if you can move it, you know, more up Vista Ridge or into Vista Ridge. I don't know if that would help with the twenty feet you might have there, if you could do that. Um, but I, I, I gotta say, I'm definitely concerned about the bank. Um, landscape-wise, I think there's a lot left to be desired. Um, this landscape kind of reminds me of, uh, what we commonly see up at, like, Pettingill Road, your EFIs, your UPSs, your FedExs, where it's like, let's just throw trees in the ground so we meet our, our standards, um, or meet your, whatever you need to meet numbers-wise. So I personally think from an aesthetic standpoint, you're a medical building. Um, you, you guys should work a little bit harder on the landscape there. Um, but, uh, my biggest thing is, I'm, I am worried about there being a bank in this and there only being one entrance. I think it's a little bit of an issue, and I'll stop there.
Okay, Jake, Ted?
So my big concern is, we had looked at this, I mean, if you can go to slide seven on your presentation. We were all a lot more in favor with the road on the back of the building for egress, for fire and ambulance. And now, I don't understand how a fire truck or an ambulance would be able to get in and out of here, uh, safely, without taking out another vehicle. And let alone trying to go around the bank, there's not enough room.
I walk into.
I mean, you gotta have the road behind it. There's no way that, that would happen. Bruce, do you have any opinion on that?
Uh, I mean, the, there are circumstances in which the fire department will sign off on not having full three sixty access, but it usually involves other considerations for traffic flow on the other remaining sides.
Mm-hmm.
And my comment would be is that the bank looks forced into the lot, and therefore it looks like it's creating a, a flow issue on the site. I don't know what that means to you, but there's definitely some congestion as it relates to flow around the, the project.
Well, and especially if it's going to be phased in, there's no way roadway around that area where supposedly the bank would be for even a fire truck or ambulance to get out, because if they're gonna be phasing it in, it dead ends at that dumpster. Let alone, I don't understand how a dump truck, uh, for the trash would go all the way in, drive in, and somehow pick up that trash.
Back out for two hundred.
And then back, back out somehow.
Mm-hmm.
And let alone, this plan, this footprint is a smaller footprint than what we were seeing before. So I don't understand how we can't get that roadway behind it when this footprint is a smaller footprint.
Not a question you'd have to answer tonight, but would there be an ability to take the parking that is along Route twenty-eight, put it where your bank is, be able to move your building up a little bit so you can get circulation behind it?
I could look.
As I said, not an answer for tonight.
Yep.
I mean, I wouldn't feel comfortable approving this because of, logistically, of getting emergency vehicles around a medical building. That's me.
Jason?
Yeah, I agree with the comments. I'd, I'd love to see that, like what you had originally, uh, you know, the drive around the back, uh, with the bank, it just seems like trying to fit ten pounds of stuff into an eight-pound bag. Um, so, I, I, I don't know, I, yeah, I, I don't see how a lot of this stuff works with the way it's laid out right now.
Roger. I, I think everybody who's talking about that is correct, but it also, you have customers coming through here, and you're not making it easy for them to use the facilities. I mean, it's not just a fire truck, it's, you really need that circled.
Mm-hmm.
And that's my only comment.
Bruce?
Did, um, Division Chief Johnson already provide feedback as it relates to this plan?
Yes.
Did he have similar concerns?
No specific comment about that access.
No specific? No specific comment? You could consider this a specific comment.
I could follow up with him to.
Yeah, that's, that would be, I think, the best thing.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be just, just my recommendation, you know, from looking at the the project and how it's evolved. Like, I like the architecture that we're looking at in this building.
It's a beautiful building.
But now I don't like how it's positioned on the lot, so.
Yeah, that's the way I look at it, it's rather awkward.
Mr. D has got one over there.
I have a follow-up. Did I misspeak when I say it said it was a one-story building? You have, is there stuff upstairs?
This is one story.
So the slide that says proposed, two-story building, thirty thousand square foot.
That, that was, in my presentation, it was gonna be, this is what we presented to you in June, but I tried to speed it up since.
That's fine.
Yep.
So I didn't, I did not misspeak, it is a one-story building.
Nope, you're correct.
Thank you.
Ian?
As far as the bank, could you move the drive-through on the bank to the east side of the, east side of the building? And and it looks like there's area that you could extend the park, um, the drive lane to the east.
I think I could, this is the configuration of the bank that the architect gave me to work with. So I could, I can bring that comment back to him and ask if we, is, is there a configuration of the bank where you think it could work with the drive-through on the east?
Then you could fit some parking on that side.
I think that's a, a very constructive point to allow for more access around it.
I think it's fair to say you should bring the architect in so we can beat him up. And to say that the, the concept is very, very nice.
Ted, yes, Ted?
So going off the original plan that was presented to us and what's presented today, footprint-wise of the two buildings is actually about little over six hundred square feet less of a footprint. So if you actually made your medical building bigger, you could still fit what, you know, we were asking for parking and roadway around the building. If you actually just made a bigger medical building, you wouldn't have to have the bank.
In that first concept, that was me coming up with a footprint, not being an architect. And then when the architect gave me the footprint, that that was then what I was working with.
Okay.
So that's why, that's why there's a perception of more room there, because civil engineer, not a, not a architect, and they gave me more realistic building dimensions.
That may be true, but I'm just saying, logistically on the site, it was stated before that it could not be fit. But the size of the building that's being presented today is a smaller building, and that you were able to fit a road behind the building before.
Yeah.
So.
But that was just with the medical.
I know.
It shows it in the setback, regardless, it shows it in the setback, so it was conceptual. It seems to me you can get a one, one-way driveway.
That's what I'm saying, there's gotta be a way to get something in there.
Behind the building, direct into the, into the drive-through.
Is the planning board directing us to seek a ver, I don't know if, I'm gonna say directing, but if we can only get it to fit via variance, is that an option that you would like us to pursue?
It's definitely something to think about.
I'd like you to try it with other banks.
I think it's really important to have a drive, a road back there.
You, you want a flow circulating around, and then customers will appreciate it, you know?
So no parking back there, just a one, just a one-way in.
Yep.
So you basically come in your driveway.
Or one-way out.
Bank traffic isn't going back around there.
And then come out around the bank, and then from, once you get past the bank, then it's two-way.
Is the architect stuck on it being two separate buildings?
Uh, I think that's just, we had, we even have a conversation about that.
I heard somebody say yeah back there.
Uh, yes, come to the microphone, please, so, just your name and address.
Hi, I'm Bob Rohr, eighteen, the Flume Amherst, New Hampshire. I work with Bill Greiner on the development of this. Uh, the two buildings is kind of driven by tenant requirements. So we, we're really pushing for that.
But it definitely needs more, more thought into it. I think it's the, the circulation around it, you could have ease, and this is for your customers, ease of people getting in and getting out. Because if it becomes hard and it becomes jammed, they're not gonna patronize the place.
But it's a beautiful building.
It's a gorgeous building, if you wanna see it up.
I like it a lot, let's do it.
All right.
Okay, so I'm gonna go to the public, any, are there any butters or anyone from the public has questions, comments, and concerns about this site plan? Gianni?
Giovanni Varani, seventy-three Page Road. So I guess the concern you had about not being able to support the project with this being a phase two, didn't we just approve a project like two years ago, a year and a half ago at Lot Coretta, which is very similar to this, on probably a smaller footprint that was, had an existing retail operation going on, and they reconstructed the whole building and put north.
It's got two exits.
Sure, but you're going in and out of a facility that has, I mean, I don't think it's a call of the planning board to say, hey, if that's phase two, I don't, I don't like you re, you know, repurposing the lot to its fullest capacity. Just my two cents. With the size of the lot, he can probably go back and take another look at this lot and redesign the layouts of the buildings. But you are talking about fifteen thousand square feet on three and a half acres or three point two acres. So I mean, you know, you talk about like utilization of the property in the town of Lunandary. That's not a lot of square footage on, on three and a half acres. So, and when we get into things about access or flow or traffic flow and things like that, isn't that why we have staff? Isn't that why we have fire departments and police chiefs and things like that to take a look at a plan and take a look at how the traffic flow goes around the plan? I mean, I don't know why we're redesigning things like that at a planning board level.
I can answer that. I think, I think it absolutely is a, 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 a process. I think it is a, something that, that a land use board can do and should do. I think staff is gonna deal with it also, and and probably the, John already made mention of it before halfway into the presentation, that we probably have some circulation issues, I think is the word he used. But I think it absolutely is a function of a planning board.
Okay, thank you for your input, Tony. And going back to the whole traffic studies, reports, et cetera, and the two different lots, I think that what the previous applicant was looking for was, they are the primary, the board required that there's a commercial component to this lot, or the zoning required that, right? So fortunately, we found a medical user in a bank, which is what I've heard a lot that the north end of town needs, right?
Absolutely.
Um, versus another tra, a gas station or auto body repair shop or what have you. So you have a great use here, okay? So, but, that being said, Mr. Gagnon's been going through the process for over two years to get their traffic study done, you know? And it changes and it changes and it changes and things, and they've been accommodating those changes. But when they do a traffic study, not to talk more about traffic, and by the way, that was the most informing traffic study ever. I ever heard, that's all right. So, so my, my, my point is, is that they predicted the uses for the lot. So, and I think you said it earlier, that, that if you're gonna require more traffic studies, really, I mean, I, I like both of the uses, but it should be on your part to go in and and get that new traffic study. We shouldn't be going back to Mr. Gagnon and say, hey, now you gotta redesign your traffic study one more time, because this, this is proposed use. They may develop the project, they may not develop the project. There may be a lemonade stand there in the future, who knows? But every time the proposed use for that lot gets changed, it should be on the user that's coming in second, right? That, that's all I'm trying to say, is that, you know, his, I think they did a good job with their traffic study, and I'd love to see both of the uses go together for the north, for the sake of the north end of the town. But if it's not exactly what they had projected, those changes really should be coming from the, the medical user coming in second. It's my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else? Don't see any further public comment, we'll bring it back to the.
Just like to add, real quick, is I, I do think it's a great use, everything that's proposed here. I don't think anybody in the board is debating whether this is a good use or not. I think everybody's concern is circulation of the lot.
Public safety.
And, and we did make the correction on the, on the traffic studies, asked if the two would work together, they declined. So we said, okay, we're gonna work with what we have, and the, the first one in is gonna, is gonna dictate what number two has to do. And so I think we are, I think we made that correction.
Choice of the applicants.
And, I mean, basically, all we're saying is, there's a circulation problem here that I, and I think it can be fixed, one person thinks it can be fixed. And I, I think for public safety and, and any, any other way you want to delineate it, that I think it's a good comment from, from a land use board, so.
Okay, uh, what's the board's desire?
Anybody got anything else? Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue formal review of a site plan and conditional use permit to construct a twelve thousand square foot medical building and three thousand square foot bank and associated site improvements. We don't have, I was gonna say, I can get rid of the CUPs, right? So I'd like to make a motion to continue formal review of a site plan to construct a twelve thousand square foot medical building and a three thousand square foot bank and associated site improvements. Map fifteen, Lot sixty-two, Zoned MUC, Gene Gagnon owner, Bill Greiner applicant, in accordance with plans prepared by Meridian Land Services dated July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, last revised November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
And I'll second that, Mr. Chair?
May I, in second, do we have a date for?
As long as the tenth of January is okay with the applicant, then.
That'd be okay with us, and then if we need additional time, we'll request a, a additional continuance.
Okay, so to the tenth of January.
So, yes. Motion by Jake for continuance to the tenth of January, second by Lynn, any further discussion by the board? Sign that all over in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All over the post, say nay. And Chair Ver, votes affirmative. Love to see what, what we do have on the tenth, Kelly, because I think we're gonna have Sylvia come in for housing needs assessment.
So far, it's the three you've continued this evening.
Sylvia might have to wait.
Maybe see if she can do next month, February.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Other business, next we have a public hearing on amendments to the Lunandary zoning ordinance relating to the use table. Flood overlay, overlay district, delete Route twenty-eight and Route one oh two performance overlay districts. And references to Route twenty-eight and one oh two performance overlay districts, the following sections are proposed to be amended. Section four point six point six, performance overlay district, Route one oh two corridor. Section four point six point seven, performance overlay district, Route twenty-eight corridor. Section six point three point ten, Route one oh two, performance overlay district, conditional use permit criteria. Section seven point six point D point seven, signs permitted and prohibited by district. Section six point, seven point six point D point eight, signs permitted and prohibited by district. Section six point three point eleven, Route twenty, performance overlay district, conditional use permit criteria. And this was, I think enacted back in two thousand two because of pressures from the, concern from the community of pressures of growth, big box stores and so forth. But the performance overlay district was intended to be temporary. Anything with government that's temporary becomes permanent, so here we are, twenty years later, finally, finally addressing it. We had one, one attempt at it that I think had complicated things, was to remove the POD, but combine all the commercial areas into, into one. That no failed to gain traction, because we had a meeting with all the landlords, and there were concerns, so the board, board dropped it. But this is just a removal of the POD, and it'll be using the existing zoning that we had before two thousand two. So, Kelly?
Mr. Chair. So as you indicated, we held a work session on the proposed zoning amendments, which are to remove the twenty-eight and one oh two overlay, or performance overlay districts. The consensus from the board at that meeting was to proceed with a public hearing, which brings us to this evening. The two overlay districts were first adopted in two thousand and two. The intent at the time was to assist with keeping the two corridors in line with the then nineteen ninety-seven master plan. That master plan had objectives such as regulating development to ensure it can be supported by plant infrastructure, such as widening I ninety-three, as well as continued increase in new development. As the board is aware, the town has experienced significant growth since two thousand and two and since the nineteen ninety-seven master plan was adopted. And we currently operate under the twenty thirteen master plan, which identifies both the Route twenty-eight and one oh two corridors as retrofit growth sectors, and talks about that particular growth sector being assigned to areas that are already developed. These quarters are now experiencing development and redevelopment interest, which presented an opportunity for staff to evaluate the need for the overlays. And at the direction of the board and council, we proceeded with that analysis, which you'll find detailed, that I, Ben's adding it to your.
Yeah, yeah, do you see us all freaking out right now?
It's there.
Where is it?
You're all calm and cool.
It's there.
It's in the email Dropbox.
Is it in there?
It's in the email.
It's in the email Dropbox.
It's in the stack, too, no?
Yeah, it's in the file, in the folder.
Yeah, I, I made a hard copy of it, because you never know what happens with a computer.
You're so old school.
Yes. Never fails.
Thank you, it's on our computer now.
Oh, I just want the record to show that Johnny has rejoined the board, so we've got nine voting members.
Did you, we answered the record that was, I stepped down for a second.
Yeah.
Yeah, four hours.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're seeking a recommendation to the council for the amendments. Would you like me to continue?
Yes, please.
So with respect to the one oh two overlay district, through the analysis that we conducted, there were fifteen lots identified as undeveloped and underutilized, lying within the C one, C two, and C three zoning districts, and totaling two hundred and thirty-eight acres. Within the twenty-eight overlay, there were eleven undeveloped and underutilized parcels identified, spanning over the Commercial one and Commercial two zones, and totaling about thirty-six acres. So I'll pull up what I just read, just so you can see it. So what I provided is the detailed analysis that shows the uses within the one oh two and twenty-eight overlay districts, and how they operate with the overlay present, and then how they would operate with the overlay removed, meaning it would defer to the underlying zoning. So for example, if it's a Commercial two property with a one oh two overlay. with a 102 overlay, the overlay is removed and it defaults to the underlying C2 zone. I also provided the actual red line.
Say that again.
If it was a 102 property with a.
So if you have a property that's zoned Commercial 2 with the 102 overlay, if the board, if we were to remove that overlay, the zone would be Commercial 2 only. So it would fall to the underlying zoning district that exists today.
I had a question if I could ask. With the warehouse, maybe I'm not understanding this, but in the warehouse, it says up to 250,000.
So by way of a conditional use permit, depending on which zone you are in, you can, the warehouse storage use up to 250,000 square feet is permitted?
Okay, but there isn't a size restriction. Well, but then it says up to 75,000 in retail sales.
Correct, so again, depending on the zone that you're in, that is permitted, a permitted use up to 75,000 square feet.
So one of the things with the POD is it restricted the size. So we're still leaving the size restrictions in?
So the dimensional requirements of the overlay districts relate to landscape buffers and setbacks and building height. So removing the overlays does not change the already defined uses in the use table. It just changes, again, depending on the zone, what uses will remain permitted or not permitted by way of the conditional use process through the overlay districts.
So if you have a 78,000 square foot building in a C2 zone, it's not permitted?
For retail?
Yeah.
Correct, it's, for example, in the C1 zone, the retail sales establishment up to 75,000 square feet is permitted by right. If you want to exceed that, you would likely need a variance, whether the overlay is there or not.
But with the overlay, you weren't going to get a 75,000 square foot building in lot for lot.
It would depend on the parcel, but.
Yeah, parcel size.
With the overlay, it would take into account.
You'd get less, a smaller sized building with the overlay. Take the overlay off, and all things being equal, you probably could get a bigger building in there.
Potentially, yes, depending on the lot.
But if my memory is correct, prior to the POD coming in, the Route 102 came in first, and then it was the Route 28, it was based off of, well, it came in subsequent to the Home Depot going in. And prior to that, it was that you could have any size building. And it was, I always thought it was like the anti-big-box overlay, which restricted down to either 75,000 on Route 102 or 125 on Route 28. And then at some point in time, it must have been, that came into part of the zone. Because I don't remember there being a restriction prior to the overlay, the performance overlay.
I don't believe that restriction was directly related to the overlay districts. I think through time, the uses permitted within the zoning districts changed or things were added.
I don't remember.
Yeah, that would have occurred, I think, irrespective of the POD. I'm trying to remember when it occurred. It would have to predate the POD. But I know Home Depot is, I think, 135,000 square feet. And you look at the size of Hannaford and Market Basket and so forth, so.
I remember it to be a zoning without a size restriction prior to the.
I think there was a size restriction, but I don't, I'd have to go back.
I'd have to go back and look at that specifically.
Because I think it's, I don't know why we're putting a size, just my opinion, but I don't know why we're putting a size restriction on these things.
At the end of the day, isn't the lot size going to dictate? I mean, you can't put a 75,000 square foot building on a two acre lot, right?
But you could combine several lots.
Probably not, but these zoning amendments are to remove the overlay districts, not to change the uses.
Two different things, I guess, is what I'm trying to go.
Jake, you could combine several lots, and then you've got.
Or you could go up.
But I know at the time of the POD, the community had very strong concerns about big box stores, so. But we're here to lift the POD, not to rehash the zoning, which we can do at a future time.
Yeah, I'm here to answer questions, so.
Yes, you answer my questions, thank you.
Will you help on the public? They've been here a long time.
I would love to.
They've been here for a long, long time.
Okay, the board is relinquishing its input to go to the public. What had, okay. Are there anyone would like to comment on the relief of the POD from the Route 102 area and the Route 28 area?
Before you do start, this is probably the longest meeting in my history of meetings, so thank you all very much.
We haven't been around the old days, Jake.
No.
We used to stretch this to 2:00 AM, you know? That's how it was, and that's where we met every single Wednesday night. But welcome, Laura, and just identify yourself for our records, please.
Sure, my name is Laura Gandy. I'm an attorney at the law firm of Divine Millamette and Branch in Manchester, New Hampshire. I'm here tonight representing Tom Estes, who is a property owner within the Route 102 Performance Overlay District. And I do have a handout, if I could just.
Oh, sure.
May I continue? We're here in opposition to the removal of the Performance Overlay District. And the main reason is the reduction in the allowable uses. Currently, for my client, there are 19 uses that he can enjoy, and that's use category, that's not actual uses. So there's 19 use categories that he now enjoys with the Performance Overlay District on his property. The underlying district for his property is an AR1. Then you put the Commercial Overlay over it, and that gives him 19 additional use categories that he now enjoys. That's not the amount of uses, that's just use categories. So for example, currently, right now, he can enjoy a restaurant, but that could be a Burger King, it could be a McDonald's, it could be a 110 Grill. So there's a lot of different uses that he can enjoy in each use category. If you take away the Performance Overlay District, he loses 15 use categories. So he will no longer have the ability to enjoy 15 use categories, which include dwelling, multifamily, mixed-use residential, nursing home, business center development, group childcare center, recreation, commercial, retail sales up to 75,000 square feet, professional offices, repair services, restaurants, school, private service establishment, storage, self-serve, and the two types of warehouses. That's just for the AR1 property. Other properties in this era are also going to suffer the same fate if you remove that Performance Overlay. You do have an Industrial 2 property on the Route 102 Overlay District, Charles George Trucking, I believe it's something different now. That's an Industrial 2 property. They unfortunately is going to suffer the same fate, not as bad as an AR1 district, but they're going to lose 13 use categories, not 13 uses, the ability to avail themselves of 13 different use categories. And I spelled those out for you in my memo. C3 property, again, suffers a similar fate. They no longer will be able to avail themselves of 11 use categories. So that's a big change for these property owners within, this is just the 102 district. I didn't even get into a detailed analysis of the Route 28 district. But so now you're taking property owners' rights away, which brings me to my second point. It very well could be construed as an unconstitutional taking, inverse condemnation, or eminent domain. And as the board is aware, I was the associate planner for the town of Londonderry during 2019, when we did undertake to look at the commercial performance, the Commercial Overlay zones. And during that time, when we had a public hearing, I'm putting on my planner hat for the town, when we had that public hearing, the public came out in full force, basically saying, there was a good showing. And one of the top concerns was, you're taking away my use. You're basically doing an unconstitutional taking, and you're taking away my use. And what Colleen did, we, our approach at that point in time was not what's being put forward today. What we said at that point in time was, we're going to take the overlay districts and we're going to combine them into a commercial performance zone that would still kind of maintain some of the integrity of the area. And we had some performance standards in there. Landscaping, and the public, you know, didn't necessarily like that too. But the main concern that I remember was, you're basically taking away my rights to use the property in a way that I've been able to enjoy and I have enjoyed for 20-plus years. You can't do that. And if you're going to do that, then you need to pay me for that. And I think at that point in time, town staff was like, okay, let's just kind of back off, let's regroup, let's see what's going on. And nothing really became of that. Now I'm going to direct your attention to what happened to my client. He has an AR1 property. Currently, he has Estes Town Country Store, what everybody's familiar with. You, so if he wanted to right now, he could sell that property, and he can market that property as a commercial property with 19 additional commercial uses. So the value to him is substantial. If he wanted to sell 39 acres now, he could do so. You take away that Performance Overlay Zone, only thing he can do is sell that as an AR1 property. So the value, let's say his property right now is worth 39 acres in Londonderry, let's just say $2.5 million. Somebody wants to come in, they want to develop a commercial use on that. That's great. You take away the Performance Overlay District from him now, he has AR1. That value of his property is going to drop significantly. And who's going to make up for that loss for him? Is somebody going to compensate for him for that loss? Again, I'm just putting that out there for the town, that the issue was in 2019, that issue is present again today. Inverse condemnation, an unconstitutional taking, just something for the board to be aware of that could be a potential thing that would come their way. So again, you have a reduction in value of current loss to my client and a future loss to my client, and many other of the property owners there as well. So I'm going to put my planner hat back on. The proposal in front of you today is just eliminating the Performance Overlay. So you're not doing anything else. You're not trying to keep the integrity of the land uses intact, is what you should try to do as planning for the community. You remove that Performance Overlay District. And if you look at the second page of my handout, where I gave that to you, so you take off the Performance Overlay, now you have a mix of incompatible land uses that's disordered, that's disjointed, that provides no cohesive design to the Route 102 corridor, which is a major corridor in Londonderry, one that Londonderry prides itself on. And part of the reason why I believe it was that in 2002, the town put on the Commercial Performance Overlay to have that cohesiveness in design, structure, architecture, landscape. You take that away, you're going to have, if you look at that map, you're going to have an industrial property next to an AR1 property, next to maybe a Commercial 3 property, next to a Commercial 2 property, next to a Commercial 1, next to a multifamily, with no cohesiveness. This is a major thoroughway in the town of Londonderry that this town should pride itself on to make sure that you have some type of performance standards. And that's what the Commercial Overlay District does for the Route 102 corridor and the Route 28. By taking it away and not putting anything else there, I could put a house now on 102. The guy next to me could have the industrial. So it's, I don't think it's giving the right thought by removing it and not putting it with anything there. Back in 2019, that's why we didn't do that. That's why we didn't say, let's take it away and just leave it like that for all these reasons. We took it, the proposal was, we're going to take it away, but then we're going to add a zone to kind of keep that integrity, the compatibility of land uses, all the things as a planner that you want to think about when you're planning for your town. Taking it away right now, you're not doing that. You're leaving a hodgepodge of different uses with no performance standards and nothing for a major thoroughway in town. And I know, again, when I put on my planner hat, when I was helping to plan for the town, we talked about, what's the thoroughway in town? You know, exit 5, that's like the gateway to Londonderry. 102, you get off of exit 93, you exit 4, you come down, you go through, you're going through Hudson. That's a main thoroughway for town. How do you want that to look? Part of the Performance Overlay District was put there so it would look a certain way. You have streetscape requirements, you have landscaping requirements, you have all these things that are there to help with the integrity of design and the planning for the town. And I know it was mentioned, the 2013 master plan. I believe Kelly mentioned, you know, the 2002 master plan. But then we fast-forward to the 2013 master plan. And that master plan, there was no discussion of removing the overlay districts. There was discussion, as Kelly pointed out, of, you know, the retrofit, the growth sector. And throughout it all was the importance of keeping those areas to look a certain way. And let me just find what this is. You know, on page 39 of your master plan, what did you hear? Many people mentioned Route 102 as a place in Londonderry that they didn't find appealing. They wanted to make sure it had a certain look to it. They talked about the suburban retrofit of keeping a certain design look to that area. There was talk about form-based components to deal with, you know, the character and community design of that area. There was never any discussion of just letting that area fall back to the underlying zoning districts for the reasons that I just spoke to you about. When they talked about the South Village Suburban Corridor retrofit, your master plan says, "The Route 102 corridor links Londonderry and serves as the catch-all destination for many needs. Physically changing the appearance and functionality of Route 102 by rebuilding the street line as a tree-lined boulevard and locating buildings close to the road will signal to drivers that they have entered an important place, naturally slowing traffic." So it's not coming right out, because master plan, they're just guiding. It's not coming right out and saying, this is what needs to be done, but it's putting forth a vision for Route 102. Removing the Performance Overlay District and reverting back to numerous disjointed and disordered underlying zoning districts is not sound planning for the town and not what the master plan calls for. But most importantly, what are you doing to the residents? What are you doing to economic development for those people that own that property? And right now, the Performance Overlay District, as the board is aware, it's an innovative land use control. So it's one-stop shopping for folks. So if I own a property that's zoned with a Commercial Performance Overlay District, the intent of that is to allow me to come to the planning board. I don't have to go to the zoning board. It's a one-stop shop that I, if it's administered properly, one-stop shop, I can come to the planning board. I can get waivers from the planning board, from the zoning ordinance. Now, I don't have to go to the zoning board. I can get everything done here. So it's, the intent is for it to be business-friendly. It's to promote economic development. That's what the Performance Overlay Districts were developed under, was the Innovative Land Use Control statute that makes business easier and development easier for folks in Londonderry. You take it away, now that's gone. So that innovative land use, nice little thing that the town was trying to do for businesses and economic development, is now tossed aside. And what that does to my client is, he has a commercial use, right? And that's allowed by the Overlay District. You take that Overlay District off from him, he has now legally existing non-conforming use. So if he wants to expand his country store under the Performance Overlay, he could do a site plan, go and say, I want to put an extra little building on there. I'm going to be fine. You take that Overlay District away from him? He can't do that anymore. He now, he's subject to, what I have in my little memo for you, is 8.2 existing non-conforming use that he now has to go to the zoning board. So he has to go to the zoning. So he has to go to the zoning board, he has to seek a variance, and then he has to come back to the planning board for a site plan review. So now you've just added another layer of bureaucracy. And I know the town in the past year has been talking about getting rid of that type of dialogue, that you want to streamline the process for folks. You're not doing that here. My client now has to go to the ZBA to get a variance. And anybody else that's here that has, that now their use is going to be categorized as an existing non-conforming use, they now have to go to the ZBA to get a variance if they want to expand it. So if my client wants to expand it, if you take away that performance overlay, he now has to go to the ZBA, then he has to go back to the planning board. So if the town's focused on economic development, this isn't the way you want to do it. You don't want to make it difficult or more difficult for business owners in town to expand their property. You want to promote economic development. You want to be able for businesses to come to expand their businesses without having to go to the zoning board, then going back to the site plan. The Innovative Land Use Control that currently exists allows for that. But now you're putting my client in a precarious position where you're affecting the allowable uses on his property, you're taking away his right to use the property as he sees fit, you're on the verge of resulting in possibly an unconstitutional taking or inverse condemnation. You're making it difficult for future development. You're putting forth a planning method that's incohesive, that has missed a hodgepodge of incompatible land uses. You're affecting the aesthetics of a major corridor in town. And for all of those reasons, we're asking that this board make a recommendation to the town council not to ask the town council to promote this, because you're leaving it in an area of disarray. You are going to create a disarray on Route 102 where there's traffic concerns. The town is aware of the Route 102 corridor study that talked about traffic concerns as well. Taking it away with nothing in its place, in my opinion, is not a sound planning technique, which is going to result in many unhappy residents and business owners who own property in town, resulting in a loss of their use of the property and a possible unconstitutional taking. That's what I got.
Thank you.
And I don't know, Tom, if you wanted to add anything?
It would probably be better off I didn't.
Okay.
It's really not nice, so.
And I'd be happy to answer.
But I would guarantee if any one of you were in my position, you wouldn't like it, would you? Right, Tony?
Absolutely.
That's right.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions of the board.
Yeah, this is, we have public hearings, we learn stuff, so. We need that input.
Here's a question for you.
Sure.
So like, as much as the POD enhances your life or your property's value, it does other things to, like, on Route 28, there's a lot of smaller lots. And when the POD came into place, you could only, you had to have a three-acre lot, or you had to go get, you know, special exception and what have you. So I tend to agree with you that there needs to be something else, but this isn't necessarily, you know, the fallback. But, that being said, there is as many cases where the POD is hurting property owners as it is helping in your case. So, and then if you, if we take the position that the minute you change a zone, it could be deemed as a taking, then do you also take the position that you can never rewrite your zoning? Because anytime you rewrite a zone, there might be changes in the zone?
I got a question. Shouldn't you leave that up to the property owner?
For what?
He's talking, can I respond? So, so for your first question, yeah, there are smaller lots on Route 128. And I think one of your properties, the 21517 Rockingham Road, you were able to, or you should have been able to avail of yourself of some of the unique characteristics of that. Because instead of going to the ZBA for any type of relief, you should have been able to go to the planning board and get a waiver. And that's a big difference for folks, because if they're going to the ZBA, there's those five criteria that they need for a variance. And that's tricky. That, variance are not supposed to be given lightly. There's those five criteria that you have to meet. Instead, for those smaller lots on Route 128, on Route 28 corridor, you were able to, or you should have been able to come into the planning board and ask for a waiver for some of those dimensional relief requirements. And that's, that's a big plus for those smaller lots. So instead of going, because those lots are small, they're non-conforming no matter what, with the Route 102 overlay district on them-
They became non-conforming when the POD went in.
But, but I think some of those are smaller too. Well, regardless, but the nice thing about the Route 28 overlay district is you're now able to, if you need additional relief to develop your property, you were able to go just to the planning board, not have the strict criteria of the variance to seek relief to get things done. And you had that one-stop shopping.
Right, but before, you could have a one-acre lot and develop it. When the POD came in, the minimum lot criteria was three acres. And to answer your question, yes, I think everything should be up to the property owner. I think we have too many regulations, so, you know. I think if you own the property, you should be able to develop it the way you want to develop it.
Correct.
And to answer your second question about-
But that's not the way the world runs, unfortunately. We're dealing with-
No, and you have regulations. And that's, and that's the, to answer your second question, is the amount of regulations or what you're doing, you know, whether or not that constitutes a taking. So if you're just like doing one little thing, like changing maybe like a setback requirement, no, that's not going to be a taking. If you're taking away, in my little chart, you're taking away 15 use categories from an individual property owner? That's problematic. This isn't just like, you know, we're doing a setback requirement or, you know, saying you have to have a bigger landscaping thing going on. Those things, okay. And when you're looking at the analysis for a taking, it's-
I'm not saying it's okay.
But I know, but I may answer your question.
But I'm just saying, as much as it may help in this situation, it hurts in other situations too. And I don't necessarily know that I have the answer for you, but I'm just saying that-
No, I mean, I'm not here to, like, you know, I'm, you know, I'm not a planner for the town anymore. So the thing is, you have these use categories that you're taking away. And that's a regular, that could be construed as a regulatory taking that you need to be careful about.
Tony?
Yes, thank you. So this is a classic example of unintended consequences, okay? In municipalities throughout the United States, this happens all the time. This is why you have public hearings. The ironic thing is, for the past 30 years, I've been schooling boards like this, and school boards, and land use boards, and town council meetings. Steve will tell you, I've been to a few school board meetings. He's back there writing notes. And the ironic thing is, you all are schooling me, and I thank you for coming forward. There's a workaround for everything, right? So, so case by case, sometimes it needs to be done, sometimes it doesn't need to be done, whatever. But without citizens coming forward to explain their individual issues, you can't, you can't make progress, you know? And so I thank you for coming forward and explaining from one, one landowner's point of view, what the result would be. That's the unintended consequence. And I've been doing it for years. And now I got schooled, so thank you.
And if I can just add, back in 2019, when we talked about this, again, this is when I was employed by the town, you know, back at the March 13th, you know, Colleen Mayu, and I believe everybody knows Colleen. No, she stated, "There would still be unintended consequences from removing the standards." So it was noted back then, and again, this particular fact pattern that we're dealing with now is more concerning back than what we were trying to do in 2019, because you're not replacing it with anything. You're literally just stripping something away. When we tried this back in 2019, we were trying to be mindful of the uses and all those other things to not take it all away. This is just taking everything away with nothing in its place, and that's concerning for us.
So Kelly, Ben, just a question for you. I assume that all the property owners affected were notified of this proposed change. Did we get feedback from 100% of the property owners? And what was the result?
I met with several residents in office and via phone, and they were supportive of the change, both in the 28 and 102 overlay. I met with a woman who owns multiple property on the 28 overlay district, and she was happy to know that she would not have to think about the dimensional requirements of the 28 overlay district for her properties that are currently undeveloped, because she viewed it as a deterrent to develop, be able to develop her property.
So-
Were those commercial or residential?
Commercial.
Yeah, and I think for sure, there's going to be some people that benefit from it, but we also need to be mindful of, of the, there are some people that are going to be hindered by it, and we've got to figure out a way to help them.
No, I agree 100%. So were there any other people who were against it that you received?
I did not directly hear from anybody against it.
And just refresh my memory, what was the impetus for doing this? Undertaking this task, remove the two PODs?
The board and the council asked staff to look into the removal of the 28 and 102 overlay districts, and so we proceeded with an analysis of every parcel in that those two overlays produced the data and concluded that a majority would, were being underutilized and that were undeveloped.
Why did we undertake it? I'm just curious. Why did we, just to reduce the regulations?
The town council asked us to.
Okay.
Because I think it's on one of, maybe two years ago, it was one of their, their goals was to, you know, remove the POD.
Well, we looked at the original intent, and the original intent was talking about, you know, expansion of I-93 and big box stores coming in and trying to prevent that from happening, because we didn't want 102 to look like South Willow Street.
Mm-hmm.
That's why the POD was just to slow down, because people had come to, well, both the council and the planning board at that time, saying, "We need a moratorium. We need to, you know, we need growth management." The thing is, the statute does not deal with commercial or industrial. It just deals with residential. And any growth management ordinance in the state of New Hampshire, what we have is a temporary measure to allow the, you know, the community to catch up on the infrastructure. Once they've got all, you know, the infrastructure is in place to handle the population, then, you know, you have no reason for a growth management ordinance. So you had to demonstrate your deficiencies, and then, really, the period of time has not been specified. No one's gone to court yet to really test that at all. On, you know, basically, you know, we said, "Well, how happens, you know, if we needed schools, schools are overpopulated, and it goes to town meeting three times, and it gets rejected every single time." You know, that's the way the townspeople feel. But yet, growth management says you're supposed to be addressing the shortfall. You should be building schools. So it's kind of a very conflicting thing. It's more, we've had growth management before, but it's more of a can of worms, because there's a lot to, you know, keep up with, you know, because we had a very complex formula, or at least it was simple looking at, you know, our own population growth, growth of the six, you know, the six communities around us. And then looking at the school population, look at the indebtedness you have, and then there were some other things too. So it all go into a formula. But we don't have to have that. It expired, and that was, you know, one of the town council's desires was, you know, let growth management lapse.
Just another note, there are six AR1 lots in the 102 overlay district. Two are undeveloped, and there are no AR1 lots in the 28 overlay.
So I, it feels to me like there was two different intentions, one for 102. I mean, 102 and 28 are two different areas. They have two different sets of problems, right? And it sounds like the property owners on 28 were all in favor of removing the POD?
Well, you have a property owner on Route 28 over here.
I was going to say, I think we got a here for it.
I don't know what her opinion of it is.
Well-
I, I've just been waiting and moving. We're still on-
Yeah, why don't you come to the microphone here?
I want to hear your story, so why don't you come on up?
Just real quick, before, before she starts to-
Like, sit, you can sit.
No, no, I've been sitting all night.
I just, I just need your name and address.
Sure thing. I'm Leanne St. Laurent.
Real quick, before you start, did anybody else have any questions for Mr. Estes Lawrence?
I just wanted to say one thing. I completely empathize with you and understand what you're saying, but couldn't it be said that the performance overlay district is doing the same thing to other peoples by preventing them from being able to fully utilize their land?
Right.
You know, like, so you absolutely have-
That is the unintended consequence.
Exactly. So one way or another, somebody's land is not being able to be used.
But it's in place.
And so the question is, what's the workaround? Because there's always a workaround. Always there.
Yes, there's got to be a way, but I think this lady would like to talk.
Quick question, I got a quick question.
This lady for, you know, then we can do the question.
All right, and then I'll come back to them.
Ready?
How are you?
Hi, tired.
Name your address, please.
Maybe I'll have two questions.
I actually have three, maybe. I'm Leanne St. Laurent. I live at 73 Chase Road, but via inheritance of my mom's property, I'm now an owner of 225 Rockingham Road, which is just right down the road from Giovanni. We were neighbors when I was a kid, and-
The White House?
Is it the what?
Is it that White House to the left of Giovanni's?
Hmm, no, it's like right at the top of Smith Lane. It's set way back. It's right next to the freezer warehouse, right next to the freezer warehouse. Yep, you're welcome. I'm not really sure if I have an opinion or not, and my, well, the first question is, is this move to remove the 102 and 28 overlay districts a package deal? Or can they be handled separately? Route 28 separately, Route 102 separately? Because I know a lot of times when things come to vote before the town, you have to vote for the package, and you can't parcel things out. And sometimes there's like parts of that package that you like and parts of that package that you don't like, but you're forced to vote on the whole package.
I don't look at this as a whole package.
Okay, so it's like the two things can be, because I understand the AR1 with the commercial overlay allows much more uses, but along Route 28, most of those properties are already C1 or C2. And then you've got the performance overlay over it. So my question is, does the removal of the overlay in that area that is already commercial, that now has the overlay over it, does that make it more desirable for development or less desirable for development? And I, I don't know. And I know that our parcel is six acres. It's not a huge parcel, like the one on 102, but it is a parcel that would be developed nicely for commercial use. My mom had been living there for, you know, 70 some odd years, and it was residential. But, you know, commercial has been coming in. There's a storage facility next door, there's a freezer warehouse next door. Giovanni's parcel finally is being developed. For the longest time, Route 28 has been stagnant. And, you know, you drive, and you talk about coming in off of exit 5, and here we are in Londonderry. And then you just drive up Route 28 and head north, and it's just like junkyard after junkyard after junkyard. And it feels like now, there is finally some reasonable development coming along. And I've heard people this evening talk about beavers and bobcats and things like that, and it breaks my heart. I cry to think of my mom's parcel, all the, you know, being, it's gorgeous woods, it's six acres, it's like that was my playground when I grew up. But I understand the reality of everything else around us, commercial coming in. We're right between exit 5 and the airport. So that segment from exit 5 north really does need to have some kind of development coming in. And I feel like over the years, it's just been, nobody's been wanting to do anything there. So what does this, what would the removal of the performance overlay do for property owners on Route 28? Who would like to have a developer come in and say, "Hey, that's a great parcel. There are six acres." And our lot is really a nice, it's not real big, but it's flat. There's hardly any wetlands. It's gorgeous land. And we'd love to have somebody come in and have a nice project to go in there. Because I know it's not going to be, you know, if I were, it's, it's not- Uh, because I know it's not gonna be, you know, if I were, it's, it's not gonna go residential, for sure. Um, nobody's gonna wanna build a house there. Um, it is commercial. But I don't know, what's, what's the result of this on, on, on our property? Completely different situation than an AR with an overlay of commercial. Than a commercial with an overlay of commercial, which may have made it more restrictive. I don't know. You tell me, cause I don't know.
I think the restriction is with the dimensional requirements of the, uh, the POD. Even, even though the underlying zoning is, is, is commercial, it's principally cur- commercial along the.
And what about the permitted uses? Is there any taking of permitted uses?
That's something.
And, and I don't, I don't know of that, like.
Apparently it is.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think it involves that.
AR one, but would there be any permitted uses that go away if your parcel's zone C two?
The warehouse and storage up to two hundred and fifty thousand.
We can still do that in C, in C two.
Oh, and you can see, yep, our parcel's right up there, one twenty-six in with the green outline.
Private schools. Uh, group childcare.
And those are things that we, so you would not be able to do, that you would not, you would lose them if the performance overlay district is removed.
So there, can I comment? So there's not many use, if you're already zoned a commercial property, there's not many uses that you're going to lose compared to an AR one. But I believe in every use category or every underlying zoning, there's a loss of use. So it may not be as great as my client, but I believe every.
Well, I can answer your question. So your C two property, the uses that are being removed from that when we remove the overlay are significantly less than if your property was AR one.
Okay, so it's less than if it were in AR one, but there are, there would be losses of use.
The private school.
Okay.
And the group childcare.
Is that all, or are there other uses that are, that are lost? And what's gained?
You remain, so what's gained is that the removal of the dimensional requirements that the overlay imposes, such as a twenty-foot landscape buffer, or a restricted building height that dictates additional buffer requirements.
Okay.
Depending on what you wanna do.
The buffers make your lot, your buildable lot smaller.
So, yeah, less.
I think that's why a lot of us, you know, we, we've heard, uh, we've never thought of something like you. But we've heard plenty of times with Route twenty-eight where nobody can do anything with their lot because of how tight it is. So here we are thinking.
Yeah, and I think that's why so many properties just remained unsold for the longest time.
We can, you know, give you less setbacks to have to, you know, less dimensional requirements to be able to build them. Um, what did you say would be, that she wouldn't be allowed to do?
Private schools, group childcare.
She would also use residential?
I've got it, thanks. Mixed-use residential.
But that should be left up to the property owner. I'm just saying, that, that should be left up to me to make that call.
And, and the thing is, like, when you're, to kinda just pay back, like, your question is, are you going, like, your, I think your question was, what's more desirable or less desirable?
Yeah, let's, let's keep the conversation with the, uh, with the board.
So if it's more or less desirable, um, it's going to be your allowable uses. If I'm looking to buy a property, the first thing I'm going to look at is what can I do on that property? What other allowable uses on that property? That's usually the first thing that I find, wearing now a, a development hat, is that's, that's what I'm gonna look at. What can I, uses can I do with my property? Removal of the performance overlay district, I think under, at every category is removing uses that are allowed for these, um, particular properties. What's less desirable, I think Jake is what you were saying, some of those performance standards make it difficult to develop the property. But to kinda offset that, it's an innovative land use control, so you don't have to go to the ZBA. You can come to the planning board and seek a waiver for those dimensional requirements. Instead of going to the ZBA and trying to get ZBA relief. And the waiver standards for the planning board is much easier to attain than a ZBA criteria.
Mr. Chair, due respect, um, how many, with regards to public, this public hearing, how many people can be?
Once.
I have the podium at the same time, because right now, this is just getting way too confusing.
Yes, it's, it's a little, little confusing.
It's all great information, I'm just trying to absorb it, but it's getting way too.
Gotta be some other.
Yeah, and.
Yes, because it's, it's, it's interesting to hear it. I mean, it's information, it's helpful to us.
Can I ask, is there, is there a way for, like, in Mr. Estes' case, is there any way or ability to, this is further down the road, but grandfather his overlay, if it, I, I mean, it's evident it's beneficial to him.
He could, he could rezone it.
Yeah, I, I don't think out of that, on your lot, on the thirty-nine acres, what's, um, what, how much of that is, not that, I guess matters, but how much of that is actually buildable? Cause you do have an easement on there through the town, right?
Yeah, it's almost seven acres.
Seven acres.
So basically, where all my buildings are, that's all buildable. So if I wanted to take an excavator and plow everything down and put something up, I should be able to, whether it's a commercial building, whatever.
Yeah, so I guess that is what I'm asking, is that would there be a way to?
So if someone came in to me and said, well, hey, we'll give you for that, uh, six point three, almost seven acres, we'll give you two and a, two and a half million dollars or whatever the dollar amount may be. And then you take away my overlay.
Yeah.
And now, what's my land worth?
Yeah.
Crack. That's what it's worth.
That's why I'm asking if there's a way to.
I don't think you guys are gonna refund me my money.
That's why I'm asking if there's a way to grandfather.
Yeah, cause I think we gotta take a look at the uses, the real change in the uses and the effect upon the, uh, the value of the property.
Who doesn't want?
Yeah, let's one talk at a time here, please, so we can, uh,
Yeah, but I.
Really get a grasp of this. I think it's, it's a little more, uh, it's, it's definitely very, very complex. Because people, uh, for the last twenty years have, are doing uses that the underlying zone does not allow. So we gotta take, take a look at keeping those uses there. How do we do that? That's something we're gonna have to figure out. But also, the dimensional requirements, some are probably needed and some probably are not. And, I mean, at this point, we're just trying to get some input from the, uh, the people that own property there and how they feel about it. Because of this, this, uh.
So basically, I got one other question. So let's just say, let's just say, I, I want to get rid of my store and I want to put it in a steakhouse, but my overlay was gone. Now I can't do it, right?
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I'm not saying I put it in a steakhouse, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, but I mean, the, uh, the uses are on, uh, one oh two are, uh, different from what is up on, on twenty-eight. There's, there's, there's some big differences. And the, and the, the part toward exit five of, uh, of Route twenty-eight is actually mixed-use commercial. So you, you can combine different uses together. Maybe that's something we should look at, is, is a mixed-use type for, uh, certain, uh, you know, certain areas. I mean, we can't do spot zoning, but at least, and what we tend to look for is the continuity in uses. Cause the, uh, the whole premise of, of zoning is, you don't wanna put different uses together because then you get complaints. And that goes back to old New England. Old New England was designed with no zoning whatsoever. And of course, there are a lot of complaints and everything. Uh, but I want, go to Bruce, I think, yeah.
Uh, question for Kelly. Do we have the ability to make a modification? Instead of removing, can we modify the performance overlay district to become?
Sure.
More inclusive of certain, so speaking to the north and the twenty-eight, removing the restrictions of the, the setbacks, making it more conducive to land use without removing the, the, um, overlay district.
We can look at that, for sure. We can look at anything. We can look at handling the twenty-eight and one oh two separately. It's really.
More just asking, just out of curiosity, like.
Yes.
Right now, we're talking about rolling back, but instead of rolling back, could we amend to become more, more conducive to land use? Which I think was the original intent of the direction of the town council and the planning board was to make it more advantageous for building and use.
You're saying, keep the overlay, but get rid of the dimensional requirements?
Or, or.
Setbacks.
Just as an example, making it more conducive.
Be to modify it to.
To, you know, using a parcel of land, um, uh, as brought forth here, you know, where they could put a nice apartment building in there because they're more, they've got better use of their, of their lot. Cause they've lost some of the dimensional requirements of setbacks. And in Mr. Estes' case, to retain those abilities to put in a steakhouse, which would be really nice. Um, but also to use his land however he so chooses, either a country store or a steakhouse or whatever else, um, you know, I'm of the opinion personally that you should be able to use your land as you so choose. And the less bureaucracy, the better. But there still needs to be regulation, right? In my opinion, regulation and bureaucracy can go hand, you know, not hand in hand. They, they should be separate.
You gotta, you gotta keep them, yeah.
You should protect public interests, but you should also protect the interest of the property owners as well.
Yeah, cause there's a lot of fine, fine tuning really with, uh, with zoning, cause it, it's a very sensitive subject. It's the, uh, you know, reason for the most litigation that occurs, uh, in the country, so, is, uh, uh, is uses. But, uh, I, I wanna let this lady talk first and then, uh.
I, I came in here tonight thinking that I was going to present, be presented with just an either or, uh, decision. Either we keep it, or we get rid of it. But because we've come forward, um, we've heard, like, the separation, consider one oh two separately, consider Route twenty-eight separately. And even when you consider one oh two, your suggestion, grandfather it in. Or your suggestion, keep the overlay, but remove the restrictive parts of it. And now we have a lot more options that weren't on the table. And also, I know a little bit more now, myself.
I think, Kelly, you could correct me if I'm wrong. Obviously, tonight, we're here to make a recommendation for the council one way or the other. So, um, you know, from there, whatever the recommendation may be, we have the ability, or the town council has the ability to, to, to make some necessary changes as they.
Yeah, the town council, uh, actually will have, uh, two readings. When we make a recommendation to the town council, they are the governing body. So their first reading is, it's introduced, a second reading is a public hearing where they take public input also. They can basically do what, what they want. I mean, you can go directly to the town council, you, you have that ability also. Uh, but the council usually put it back and look for a recommendation from, from the planning board. Uh, but, but, uh, yeah, I know Giovanni wanted to talk.
I would, can I just, can I just ask real quick if they have any more questions or we have any more questions for these three? Cause there are more people in the public here than the three of them.
Hmm.
Yeah.
That's all, I've been trying to get at, like, twenty minutes now.
Yeah, Johnny?
Well, I was just gonna say, could you, I mean, this is a question for Kelly, um, could you make it an optional overlay? Where you could, if you didn't want, if you wanted to take advantage of Mr. Estes' u- uses, you could opt to, to perform, you know, have the setback requirements, et cetera. And if you didn't want to, you didn't need to do that, you could develop your parcel underneath the, the underlying zone, which is C two, C one, C three, I one, whatever.
I don't know exactly what that would look like, but I'm a little hesitant on the optional piece. But I can certainly, something we can look at if that's what the board would like us.
I think it would come down to making a recommendation not in the favor of it and then going from there.
Oh, yeah, not tonight. Yeah, yeah, I mean, it'd be, it's, it's definitely. So do, do you have any more for us?
I just had, well, I, it, it may or may not be related, and you may or may not be able to answer it tonight. But I know there was a lot of talk about traffic, um, on the Vista Ridge projects. But I'm just wondering, north of Vista Ridge, are there any updates about road improvements in general on Route twenty-eight? Widening, additional lanes, turning lanes, uh, the regulated intersections, anything? Or is it, cause it's, it's just kinda like a free-for-all out there.
There's, there's nothing in the state ten-year highway plan for it, so at least the next ten years, it won't be anything happening.
Because that's really, that's really, that's what makes development real tough.
Stonehenge and twenty-eight.
On twenty-eight.
But that's just, just that, right, right there.
She was asking north of.
Yeah, north of, north of exit five. So between exit five and say, the intersection of twenty-eight and one twenty-eight.
Yeah, I don't think there's, there's anything on there.
What about the Mammoth Road and, uh, Rockingham Road intersection?
Yeah.
Mammoth and Rockingham.
Something that was gonna be done at that intersection.
Yeah, I keep hearing that Smith Lane is gonna get, like.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What's, what's up with that?
Feels with the intersection, it's not, not the whole roadway. And I know there's problems with the whole roadway, but it's a state highway. It's up to the state to, to do. We can push the state and so forth. Uh, I think we did, uh, for the, uh, Stonehenge and twenty-eight, we, uh, pushed to our legislative delegation and other, other connections.
Let's hear from some other people, please. They've been.
Yeah, I'll sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think, I think I see some stirring back there, so, oh, Steve.
I was looking at him.
No, you're, you're up there first.
Um, thank you, Steve Young, um, twelve McGregor Court and fifteen Carmenter Road, if you wanna bring that up. Um, and also a corner lot at Pillsbury Cemetery. Um, and thank you Chairman Rugg for staying so late. Um, this really reminds me of Northgate, um, meetings. So for those of you who haven't been on the planning board very long, these meetings used to go till two, three in the morning, like, every time. So.
Every Wednesday night.
I'll, I'll be quick, but I do have some history to give, which I think will be helpful. And I think I actually have a solution or something that could be blended into a solution. So, uh, first of all, there was a question on the board earlier asked. Um, I never got noticed for this. Uh, the property owner of record is Kathy Wagner. Um, Kathy and I have a contract and we're also married. Um, I'm at the property quite often, um, renovating it, uh, lifted the barn, um, rebuilding it, rebuilding the house, um, but we never got the registered letter at all. Um, so I don't know what happened there. And I thought it was odd, because I heard about it from another one of the speakers tonight. Um, since in nineteen ninety, I'm sorry, three, about three years ago, Kathy and I volunteered and we came in, and all the faces have changed, um, in the town hall. But we met with them on the last hearing that we had on this and gave our opinions on it. And there were opinions in there, particularly associated with historic properties that you might have and different things you might be able to do. Um, so I was surprised that we, we didn't get noticed. Um, I'm gonna go back even further, though, than other people went tonight. So first of all, uh, fifteen Carmenter is, uh, right now in the POD. Um, it is four and a half acres, though it hasn't been surveyed in, I don't think it may have ever been surveyed. Um, there's one marker, uh, from one oh two. Uh, it is a, uh, historic connected farmhouse. Um, the one-third house was built in the, um, early seventeen hundreds over on Nashville Road. And it was relocated with Oxon onto the property when two brothers had an argument. Um, they then built the big house, and then they built a little house, and then they built a back house, and then they built a barn. Um, and that's the architecture of the property. They also built a second barn. There was a grand barn that went out, unfortunately, it was right on Route one oh two. So, uh, when one oh two came through, they tore that barn down. And there's a big hill there, uh, on the south side of our, of our bank barn. And that big hill is actually the barn buried underneath there, along with the stones from the barn. So when one oh two was built, we didn't have zoning in town. So eventually zoning came to town. Now, what happened is, um, the, and by the way, the way, reason I know all of this history is, it, it, I went to, I was, actually, no, he's still here. So somebody came into my office and they said, we have a barn and house on one oh two, and we know it's what you want. I said, okay. I actually thought it was his.
Me?
Yeah, with the silo. So. Yeah, with the silo. So, but I found out it wasn't. It was 15 Parmenter Road. So Bill Longmade um made me tour the property with him for months um and before I was allowed to buy it from him. And I had to promise all the different things I would do and wouldn't do to the property. He actually grew organic cucumbers in the 1970s. I'm still putting the organic cucumber boxes in the recycle bins. There used to be greenhouses in the back in the middle of the field. So when zoning came around, somebody came out to the homes or through some government process. They said, what do you want us to do? What do you want us to do with this property? Do you want a commercial or do you want a residential? And Bill said, residential. The guy to the northeast of us said, commercial. The person that owned his property said, commercial. So people had a choice and what they got to pick. Now, we didn't have a choice with this POD. The POD came in and frankly, in my opinion, it was a few members of a town council that just wanted to stop big box stores, period. And there were things like Trader Joe's and Cabela's. Trader Joe's was up on, up in your, your area. Cabela's, um, all it was is let's just stop these people from building any buildings like this. I think that one of the solutions might be just asking. Now, we don't have commercial zoning, but we bought the property because we did have commercial zoning. We bought the property because we had a commercial district. I had, I had, um, not, not Andrea, I had Yanos come to the property before I bought it and had him look at it to say, what could we do with this property with the overlay district? And he explained the different things we could do and the site distances and where I could relocate the driveways to, because I've got two driveway, I got three driveways now, all grandfathered. He's like, you know, you really would be better to have one driveway and put it here. So I already went through that whole process. And the real challenge with this performance overlay district is not the size of the buildings that everybody's been talking about. It's the distance from the lot line. So at one point I drew it up and if we were to add a building to our property, it would be in the back behind the farmhouse, which by the way, intrudes onto the right of way about 50 feet. Because I didn't build a road there, but that it's in, it's in the road right of way issue because it's so close to the road um as far as the setbacks, even as a residential. So I can't, I can put something in there, but it's got to be really small in the back. Um, and it goes, it has to have, I think it's, and you might know, at 40 feet, 45 feet? 50, no, it's not 10 feet. Pardon me?
Which side, from the rear or the front?
Uh, performance overlay district buffer.
Forty.
Forty feet. So 40 feet of my four acres, and I'm lucky it's square. And yours isn't square. So you, you're gonna have to build a bowling alley, one lane. So this zoning that came in where they asked everybody what they wanted to be, commercial or residential, it left this patchwork quilt. And I know our area, I mean, the area that I'm in, um, some people picked the commercial and some people picked the residential. And so for, for us to just say, well, let's just get rid of the POD, I did plan on using the POD possibly someday. I planned on using it commercially. At the time I bought the property 20 years ago, there were 15,000 cars that went by it. Uh, today, I think there's a whole lot more. I do know it's a more dangerous intersection than 28 and, uh, and Pillsbury, um, the way people come around the corner. So my recommendation is ask the people that are in the districts, what do you want? I, I, my choice is, somebody came up with a hybrid tonight. My choice is make it commercial. The only burden on the town, if you make me commercial, is you have to come in once a year to inspect the house to make sure it's still residential. Otherwise, my taxes change. I'm okay with that. Bill Longmade moved to the village and he moved into a house that's across from the old factory and it's commercial. And they have to come into his house every year and inspect it. You know, that's okay. Um, and I can still do things like special exceptions, which I will do, uh, for, have a business in the house under those rules. Um, but I sure would like to be able to use it for what I bought it for. Sit for me. Anybody else want to know anything else about history? Thank you.
Thank you.
It'll repeat itself.
It does. Oh, I'm sorry about that phone call. It was, okay, I'll say it. That was Kathy. She goes, please, no more traffic.
Yes, sir. Name an address, please.
Yeah, uh, my name is Dan Joswak. Uh, our residential address is 31 Windsor Boulevard and the property address is 254 Nashville Road, so just right next to, right next to Steve's place. He's our neighbor. So, uh, first, I, I, Laura articulated very well everything, you know, that I was thinking as I was going through and reading through this. Um, so thank you Laura for, for that. Like, for us, uh, we already have kind of several strikes against us and from a property perspective, the size of the lot, the shape of the lot, different aspects of that, the parking lot, the inability to, you know, to move, uh, to expand, to do really anything there where we are.
The little office building.
It is, yeah.
Nice front lawn.
Brick front, yeah, it looks like a house, really.
Thank you.
Yeah, yep. Um, uh, and, and, you know, for, this is in a C, we're in a C3. Uh, and so we, we're, we're losing several, you know, advantages to, to the property. So again, the things that Laura mentioned, you know, apply to us here. Um, I know the question came up, you know, what was the, what was the impetus? What was the motivation um for this? I'm not sure I heard a clear answer other than the town council wanted. And then subsequent to that discussion that you guys had in terms of, of, uh, the, uh, Route 28 area and, you know, size restrictions and things like that associated with that. Those, those things, you know, certainly understandable, but it would be nice to understand why the town council is asking you guys, what, what's the underlying motivation? Because I don't see any of that in the paperwork that we've, we have reviewed, so. But given, given, uh, you know, what we're seeing here, the fact that we'd be losing some significant amount of usability for us, um, we'd request that, that you deny the, uh, that or recommend against going this path. So I don't want to take up any more time for that unless you have some questions.
No, I think we're, we're in the hearing mode right now, so, but thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Name an address, please, Ted?
Sorry, I was gonna have just a suggestion of potentially looking at making amendments before you send this to the town council.
Let's, let's hear. I, I, yeah, let's hear from the, the audience.
How we doing? Blaine Dorman, own property 506 Mammoth Road. Uh, kind of was up in the air, didn't really know what was gonna go on tonight or kind of confused. Everything's kind of, I agree with the 102 and the 28 split, how it's different. I'm one of those, I got an acre, so I think it's actually gonna behoove me and be beneficial that I'll get more setback off the lines and all that. So, but I feel for Estes, it's completely out of line and to me it's stealing. And a lot of, a lot of the north end in Lundary, it's, there's not so much people that wanna build it up or even, my, my father owned that property 40, 45 years. I bought it off him, started a business on it, could do whatever. We parked our stuff there. We had everything going for us. It was great. All of a sudden more residential came in and before you know it, we can't even do anything there. So it's, it's one of those, it's tough and I want to get it back to where it was before, not run a business out of it, but at least be able to park there. So the only reason I'm here tonight is to make sure I'm not gonna lose more than I've already been taken away my whole life. So I don't know if you can answer that for the 28, taken away, I think it's a good thing, but at the same time, you were saying some things about maybe daycare was off that list?
It's the mixed-use residential, the daycare and the private school.
Okay, so that puts me at like five things I can do.
Is that for resident, is that for C2?
That's for C2.
Two.
Yeah, which is the.
So there are, so that's the uses that are in addition to your already permitted C2 uses with the overlay district. So your already permitted C2 uses are nursing homes, live work units, community center, public facilities, public utilities, rec facilities, religious facilities, business center development, drive-through with, um, as an accessory use, drive-in establishments, drive-in theaters, financial institution, hotels, manufacturing, motor vehicle, station limited service, commercial recreation, retail up to 75,000 square feet.
It's actually getting better.
Uh, professional office, repair services, restaurant.
Kelly, what, Kelly, with the performance overlay, what is the front and side setbacks?
The.
In his lot?
It's dependent on the building footprint.
Yep. Without it, what is it?
Uh, C2?
Yeah.
That's good. I'm not gonna remember right now.
All right, well.
I'll pull it up.
See what I'm.
Is that something on there that's, uh, something for storage as well?
Uh, self-storage is permitted in C2.
So me saying, hey, I'm parking my truck here for the night, that's not considered storage? How in front of your guys' eyes, like, store, like, you know, I'm not trying to get all my equipment back. I'm not trying to make log piles. I'm not trying to go crazy. I'm literally just trying to park equipment, so I'm not paying 15, too grand on a lot, which my dad was grandfathered into it. And then because we had people moving next to us that didn't all of a sudden like it, we lost everything. Literally, fine you $500 a day to park here, just crazy, crazy stuff, which forced my father out of the town and I'm not going anywhere. So I just want to know what I can do in the next step so I can get the property good use for what I, what I'm, what I'm trying to use it for, not just live in it, because I'm living there with my family now as well, so.
I guess it just depends what you're trying to do.
Okay.
But I'd be happy to look at it and talk about.
Okay, no, that's perfect. And I'm green to all this. I'm just a hard-working American, so. Thank you.
Kelly, I guess all I was asking is, is his, is his setbacks, are his setbacks worse with the performance overlay on?
Potentially.
Yeah, that was all I was trying to figure out.
So, so I've known Mr. Dorman and his father for, for years.
Tom, Tom, hold on, please. She's answering.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yes, Kelly's got the floor.
I think I answered you, no?
It depends, it sounds like it depends on the, the size of the building and whatnot, yeah. So it's kind of an open.
But I have up the setbacks for the commercial districts.
Yes.
60, 30, 30.
Yeah. All right. All right. Yeah.
A little on the points of thought.
Yeah. Okay, anyone else?
Anyone? I just want to say one quick thing. I want to say one quick thing. I've known him and his father for years. And when I hear stories like this, when they've been there for almost 50 years and he parked his trucks there, and now we have these out-of-staters that come in here and they bitch and complain that they don't want to see trucks, well, you know what? That's too bad. That's their living. My living is wood as well and mulch. And some people don't like to see the mulch piles on 102. You don't like it? Too bad. Go back where you came from. It, it's, it's not right that he, now he's not allowed to park his trucks there. I, I just, I don't think it's right.
There's always ways around it. We have other north enders that help me out, but I shouldn't have to pay on commercial C2 property. I'm parked at all. I'm able to park your truck. Just leave it to your truck.
Park the truck there.
That's another problem another time and I get delayed.
Yeah, we'll have to see what the, the building inspector says and how they.
Yeah.
So we, we don't do any regulation. We.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, thank you for the input, I think, uh, we've, uh.
Can I get a point of clarification for, from Kelly?
Yes.
So, um, just so everybody knows too, like the multifamily concept would probably, would go away with the, with the POD going away, right?
Depends what zone you're in.
Say C2, C1.
It's allowed by conditional use permit in C2.
Without the zone? Without the overlay, I mean?
Yes.
So without the overlay, that's an example, I think, of what I was trying to get at. Without the overlay, it's allowed and you've got less requirements, yeah.
Yeah.
Steve?
We should have a second workshop.
Yeah, you elaborate on that.
No, we should.
You're going a little bit, I, what, what's the concept?
Oh, yeah, we, we, we gotta go back to ground zero and everything. But I think the, the thing we, we need to do is, well, listen to Steve.
Yep.
That is true.
That you need to listen.
The multifamily goes away. On the residential. Right now, I'm in the overlay district.
For the residential, it does. For the commercial, it doesn't.
For residential, the multifamily workforce is permitted by conditional use. For the C, the commercial districts.
One of the things we considered, um, was, uh, veteran, tiny houses, complexes for veterans. And that option would be gone. That was what we thought about 20 years ago. That's thanks to Bob Kleig, by the way, so, which is, go on, go with us.
Okay. Well, thanks. We, we thank everyone for the, the input. I think since we have this before us, we'll recommend to the town council that we, you know, we'll recommend to deny it. And I think we need to go back to the drawing board and take a, take a look with the input that we have received tonight. This kind of reminds me when we went to, in 2019 with a proposal that was probably the first step, but needed quite a few other, you know, modifications to it to get there. So we're gonna have to look at, at some point to keep, keep the uses that are there in place because when you give someone something, you don't take it away without a fight or an argument, so.
So, Mr. Chair.
Do we, if we're, if they're looking for a recommendation, we need to take a vote, correct?
Yes, yeah.
So if we're, if we are recommending to deny, we would be voting in the affirmative?
To deny.
To, to, voting in the affirmative to deny, just so we all understand.
The motion's made that way.
We separate the two areas? Because it seems like a lot of the concerns are from 102.
Well, I think we gotta take, I think we gotta, we gotta take a closer look.
I think we just need to deny it right now.
Yeah.
You know?
Want to separate them tonight, you can.
You want to separate them both?
Is identified as a separate section of the ordinance.
So my vote would be the same.
Yeah, but my vote would be the same, but should we just separate them to separate them?
Well, I think.
We're changing.
I think we should. We tend separating, I think the answer for both of them are gonna be, is gonna be the same.
I'm just answering your question. You can, if you want.
Yeah.
But Bruce, you.
But, so, this has been a good exercise because what I hear from the public, which is what I wanted to hear, is they want less restriction, more development. That's what I'm hearing, right? Because by.
More choice.
More choice. Yeah, more choice to develop as you see fit, right? That's a good message. I like that message.
That's about, that's from the owners, but then what about the neighbors to these?
Well, that, that comes up when it gets.
Because we're talking about.
When we have a, another public hearing.
Yeah.
Right, but, but. Right, but, but what I'm saying is, is the public hearing process works because we're hearing what the public wants, right? Now, it's a subsection of the overall public, but, you know.
Because we want to hear from the, the owners of the property, but also eventually the abutters to those properties.
Because we, people who you talked to, who may have been in favor of that, didn't show up, because they've already talked to you. And they're thinking, yeah, it, it generally tends, it's like reviews online, you know, I mean, five hundred people have a great experience, nobody says a word. One person has a bad experience, and they post it on fifteen different sites. And I'm not saying that you guys don't have absolutely, but I, I, I don't think we're getting a complete cross-section of the landowners.
Because it affects the folks on one oh two differently than it affects the folks on-
No, I, I think, I think you need to separate it, but I also think we need to kind of re-engineer it. And take what's there, and maybe make it a little bit more refined, right? Based upon the feedback that we've gotten from the public.
But I know how this goes, if we, if we, if we vote it down, we'll never address it again.
I think that's wrong, I think we vote it down and we start to address it.
You know, we, we talked about it in November of two thousand twenty-two, or twenty-three, whatever year it is. And, and the public didn't want, want to do it. And I don't, I think, I, I hear all their concerns, and they're Route one oh two, they're in A R one zones. And you're not hearing from the folks that are in C two zones and Route twenty-eight, so.
But it depends on how we close it out. We can direct Kelly-
To pursue this more.
Pursue it more, further study, or whatever, and come back in two weeks, a month, a month and a half, or whatever. I mean, this is, this is classic, how this should work.
Yeah.
In, in my opinion. You start out with something that you think is, is gonna help people, landowners, and drive revenue. You hear from the direct users, right? In this case, it's the landowners, who say, well, take a look at this, take a look at this, take a look at this. This is classic. Then it goes back to study, then it comes back again, you rework it, reconfigure it, and you come up with something that's better, that works for almost everybody. It's never gonna work for a hundred percent of the people. But even for the ones that it doesn't work for, there's gotta be workaround. There has to be, there always is, it's a question of, of finding it.
I think it's being, being flexible, you know? So that people can kind of design and have some creativity. And that's what the innovative land use statute-
And in this case, I would want to separate it. I would want to deny, I would want to deny both. But I would also want to direct Kelly and, and her team-
To see what we can do to make it work.
To say, come, come back and show us, based on what, what we heard tonight, what will work for more people, or everybody, or for, for every piece of land, or most of ninety-nine point nine-nine percent of the land. And for the ones it's not gonna work on, we're gonna do this instead. Because there's, there's, there's always workarounds, there's always a way to do it.
Well, the perspective of, of more use, more landowner choice, and one-stop shop with the planning board, as opposed to going to multiple different venues, I think is a resounding message that I heard tonight.
Yeah.
Which is in line with what my expectations-
I agree with definitely all of that. I think just from a process standpoint, we're, we would be putting, I agree, separate them, putting two things on the table, to go to the council. And then I think what, isn't the council the one that directed us, or directed the staff to look into it? Or a recommendation?
They, they wanted us to-
If the council would have to say, yea or nay. And then say, you know, potentially at, you know, if it's a nay, direct the staff to rework it. Like, do we have the authority to even, like, ask Kelly to rework it?
Yes.
You can always ask.
Other options, that's the point of the public hearing process.
Okay.
That's why this is more of a all or nothing, so we can hear what the other parts are that you want staff to look into.
Yes, because I, because I think we gotta look at one oh two separately from twenty-eight.
I agree.
Yeah, I think twenty-eight is, I think, much easier to address than one oh two. One oh two is a quilt work of, you know, different uses and zoning. And I think the P O D at least put some continuity to the uses that could, could be done. I think there was a level of usefulness for it, but the dimensions were restrictive.
Mr. Chair, what's the best way to separate these? So-
Just twenty-eight and one oh two.
Right, but, so what we have before us is a public hearing on amendments, right? So we're gonna vote to either approve, to go to the town council, or deny going to the town council as a recommendation.
It's not denying, it's not denying to go to the town, town council.
Sorry, to not recommend to town council.
The sections cited in the hearing are separated by overlay.
Route twenty-eight overlay and one oh two overlay.
If that's how you want to form your recommendation.
So we would make a motion to recommend
Not to recommend.
The one oh two corridor performance overlay di- district as one motion. And then we could do another motion for the other one, which would give us a yea, nay.
You could recommend that the council move forward, approve, however you want to term it, in twenty-eight.
Can I make a motion?
Please, please.
Can I make a motion not to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this in two. Can I make a motion not to recommend to the town council the Route twenty-eight overlay, P O D overlay amendments?
To not recommend, I, I second that.
So now, just remember, we're gonna, I'm doing them both. I'm gonna not recommend both, but please remember, I'm saying not recommend. So if you do not want this to go forward, you need to vote in the affirmative.
You could phrase, you could phrase it as, as a positive motion, and then it gets denied.
All right, we'll do it that way.
Either way.
We'll do it that way, then, that's just the reverse of it. That's fine.
As long as we understand what we're voting for.
That's fine.
Yes, I'll be clear on that.
So motion not to recommend twenty-eight overlay to the-
No, it would be a motion to recommend.
I'm just, that's the motion you just made, so.
Yeah, I would like to make the motion not to recommend.
I second it.
No, I want to keep it that way.
I second that motion. I've got, I've got a motion to, to deny recommendation. And I have a second from, from Lynn. Is there any further discussion by the board on that motion?
Oh, I, I was gonna say, it's not what we came here to vote on. It was to vote on this package deal.
We came to give the town council a recommendation, and I have a motion on the floor to make a recommendation.
We, we, we can separate them out.
Make a motion not to recommend it.
Because they're only advertised together.
Correct.
So, but they're, they are-
While they're advertised together, they're two separate things. So, again, I'd like to make a motion not to recommend.
So if you vote in favor of this, you're saying that the planning board's not recommending?
Correct.
Not recommending relieving the P O D from Route twenty?
We're not recommending removing the twenty-eight overlay.
So it stays in place?
It stays in place, because it's become evident to us that there's way more to do than remove the twenty-eight overlay.
Yep.
Because what?
It has come seemingly obvious that there's more to do than just remove the overlay. There's more that needs to be done.
Yep.
Like what? Make sure that it works for everybody, there's three, two, three people that are-
It's two separate things.
Yeah, we, 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 we heard about taking away uses that, you know, they're currently doing. And we've heard about the dimensions being restricted. Yep, and we did hear that at least one property owner wasn't noticed, so there may be others as well. Yeah. We don't know.
So I do have a motion.
Just have to make an attempt to notice every single one.
Motion on the floor, we're gonna vote on it. All those in favor of Jake's motion, seconded by Lynn.
This is your motion to not-
This is my motion not to recommend it.
Not to recommend. So all those in favor of not recommending, recommending, say aye.
I gotta, I gotta understand this. Not to recommend taking it away?
Correct.
We just-
So it stays in place?
Correct.
It stays in place. Oh, that's right, Tony.
Gio, a yea vote means no change. A yea vote means nothing changes.
Yeah.
Correct.
The, what they're asking us, right?
A yes vote.
Yes vote.
A yes vote, nothing changes.
I guess I should have sent it my way. All right, so again-
This is one of the problems.
There's a motion on the floor, Mr. Chair, can we make a vote, please?
Okay.
Roger's got a question.
Before we do anything, it's, I'm reading it right from here. These, to take an action to-